Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 11th, 2020. We're going to go out of order for one case for Build It Back, item number six.
Case number 2020-15BZ, 787 Patterson Avenue, Staten Island.
Good morning. My name is David Koizman, P.E., representing Craig Nolan Engineering.
Good morning, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Stephen Levine, R.A. I'm the special technical advisor to the Department of Design and Construction and the Housing Recovery Office. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Did you listen to the review session yesterday?
No, I did not, but I'm aware of the question. So does somebody want to pose the question? But I have a general understanding of it.
I believe you made a responsive submission, right?
Yes.
Yesterday morning. Okay.
Do you want me to elaborate? I can certainly do that.
It's fine if you don't. And so we have all that material in the record.
Oh, just that I believe there was an explanation needed about the lift.
Okay.
I'll be happy to do that. Okay, basically what happened, the Craig Nolan team was the design engineer only. The lift contractor hired their own engineer that was responsible for the lifting operation and the temporary supports. Because our understanding during this operation, the house shifted slightly due to poor soil conditions. We were not made aware of this, that is, the design team and DDC, until we commissioned the first preliminary survey, and that was brought to our attention, the house shifted. The issue is twofold. This is one structure that has two houses side by side with a firewall down the middle. By shifting this, the firewall ended up partially on the adjacent property owner's tax and zoning lot. So we tried two solutions. First solution was relift the house, shift it back. As a practical matter, one, we'd have to vacate, and the homeowners have to go out again. Secondly, these houses were never designed to go up and down numerous times, and we might create more damage by doing that, particularly to tiles. The other solution, which is where we are today, was to get the two homeowners to have an agreement to change the meets and bounds. The homeowners engaged counsel, rightfully so, took a while to negotiate terms of agreement, which we finally did, and obviously, we could not go forth until we had an agreement from both homeowners that they're okay on changing the meets and bounds. Now, we've already filed tentatively with DOF for the new meets and bounds, the Department of Buildings as well, but until the outcome of this hearing, we cannot go forward, and that's kind of how we ended up where we are today.
Thank you. So should we put it to a vote noting that the board is also voting on a waiver of the rules of practice and procedure?
Yes. Okay, so you want the motion to... Commissioner?
Motion to grant.
Commissioner?
A motion to grant.
A motion to close.
Motion to close first.
A motion to close.
Chair... oh, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Osheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Osheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, motion is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so resuming regular calendar.
Item number one, appeals calendar. Item number one, appeals calendar, new cases, 2019, 199A, Stuart Good, Charles Weinstock, 1045 Madison Avenue in Manhattan.
Please keep your statement brief and to the point for whether the board should dismiss this.
Just state your name for the record.
Yes, Chuck Weinstock, representing the applicant. Good morning. I listened to the executive session yesterday, and I want to respond to one thing, which is that there isn't yet a subdivision of the zoning lot. A subdivision, as you know, requires the waiver of all parties in interest. Certainly, fee owners of any parcel in the property are parties in interest, and one of them here has not reported, and to my knowledge, not signed, a waiver. We've hoped to address this issue of former lot line theory, and that was the subject of our original appeal. We're concerned that we won't have the opportunity to address this, and to the extent that there isn't yet a proper subdivision of the zoning lot, we think it's appropriate to address it now.
Well, the Department of Buildings has not issued a final determination, as I understand it, on that issue, and so to the extent that you would like to have that vetted with the Department of Buildings, you would then have an opportunity to file a new appeal here.
Without a final determination, though, wouldn't it be appropriate to address this?
No.
No, it would mean that your application is incomplete, and it's premature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to take it up?
Would you like to speak?
Michael Solten, on behalf of Department of Buildings, just to answer that one point. So the PAA was filed and approved, and that included the subdivision. So it's a new determination by the department. The department views the subdivision as, and the zoning lot subdivision as approved. However, it has not been challenged by the department, so therefore, ZRD1 would be, or a public challenge would be the appropriate avenue. It's my understanding that that has actually already been filed, and then after department review, should the department still find that the subdivision was appropriate, then ONTO BSA would be the appropriate step.
Okay, so that avenue would still be available?
Correct.
Okay. Would the owner like to speak, or the owner's representative?
I have nothing to add.
Just state your name.
Case Segal, representing the owner of the property. I have nothing to add. Just point out to the commissioners that the appellant is a neighbor who lives a couple blocks away, and the allegation here that Mr. Weinstock made was that a co-op should have signed or waived the subdivision. He doesn't represent the co-op. So whatever, unless he is representing the co-op, it should be the co-op that complains, if indeed there's anything to complain about, which we don't think there is.
All right. Are there any members of the public here or elected official?
I have a question for the owner.
No, no, we're not having a...
First of all, he didn't, yes, he didn't mention that he represents the co-op. He didn't say that. But what he said, he said the subdivision needs the approval of the co-op to be done. Was the subdivision done already? Is it done deal?
Yes, it's done.
It's done. Thank you.
It's always wise to not say much when you're in a...
Okay, so are there elected officials or members of the public that would like to speak on this narrow issue? Okay, a motion to close.
Chair, sorry, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Osheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to dismiss.
A motion to grant, and then no, right?
To dismiss.
Dismiss of lack of jurisdiction. There is no more determination.
Commander's move.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Osheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application is dismissed. Okay, go ahead, call the next one.
Special Order Calendar, number two, continued hearings, item 75178BZ, 200-15 Northern Boulevard in Queens.
Swear a G.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
I affirm. Oh, the next one? Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. State your name on the record.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. So from review session, I know there were a few questions that were raised. First, I know this was discussed at the last hearing, but I just want to address the issue of the tire storage again. The original issue that was raised at the last application and approval for this was that the Genesis Tire had been storing tires overnight on these large racks. I think I passed this out last time, but I just want to pass it out again, just as an example. This is from the previous application. Those are photos. You can see, they used to have three large permanently mounted tire racks that were up to our time, and that was the real source of the complaint. The tires that are out there now are tires that are only brought out during business hours. At the end of the business, they will bring the tires back in, either into the building, the bays where they're not working, or into the storage container. It's a combination. And also, when they bring them out during the day, they purposely try and stack them so they're not higher than the wall. And I know that we had discussed it briefly at the previous hearing on this application. Just wanted to mention that again. And as I recall, there was members from the community who testified that the tire situation had improved. With respect to the enclosure, it is true that they did, this property owner and tenant have tried to be very responsive, and they went and created that enclosure based on a series of locations that were discussed last time as different options. That area right there, that triangle area by the storage container, was the one viable option. Creating an enclosure elsewhere in the lot either blocked the cars or blocked bays. I had discussion about why it was cut where it was as opposed to extending the fence. And the thought was, if the board recalls, at the prior hearing, there was complaints that because of the bus stop that's right there, pedestrians or members, you know, people will just throw trash behind the storage container in that area. And the thought was that if they extended that fence all the way, it just makes it that much more difficult to get back there and clean up. So the arrangement right now of where the enclosure is keeps that back area open and allows them to regularly maintain that area right there. As far as safety issues, I would say that this is right on Northern Boulevard, which has to be the busiest street in Queens, and there's a bus stop right there, and there's a light right there. We don't believe that that enclosure where it's placed creates any additional safety concerns. There's also the brick wall that's right there, so it's a really wide open space. So I don't know what else to say to the safety conditions other than we don't believe it creates any issues because of the lighting and the bus stop that's right there. I don't think there were any other issues that were raised. I don't know if there's any other questions about either the enclosure or the storage that I can answer.
We received a submission from Henry Euler, the Orbandale Improvement Association. I don't know if the commissioners have seen it?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
I saw it.
Okay.
But the photos came with that testimony wasn't that great, actually. So I read the testimony, but I couldn't look at the photos.
Okay.
Oh, I would just, sorry, I was just going to say quickly, I would also note that there was discussion about the hours, and we did submit that we voluntarily agreed to reduce the hours to what was suggested by the community board to.
Okay, since Mr., do you mind if I read it into the record, since Mr. Dale has not had the opportunity to see it? Okay. My name is Henry Euler. I'm the vice president of Orbandale Civic Association. This site lies, application lies within the boundaries of my civic organization. I'm also third vice chair of Queens Community Board 11. However, I'm only representing my civic association with this testimony, and I will just tend. The above referenced case regards a request for a variance renewal by Auto Repair, Genesis Auto Town. The expiring variance has been under term of five years. It was a short-term grant due to past problems with this business. On February 10th, I faxed in eight recent pictures of the site of this application. My computer was acting up and unable to attach the photos. My civic association has concerns about several issues. During business hours, new and used tires are piled up by the interior eastern wall along 201st Street. The tires are usually piled up so high that they extend above the height of the wall. This results in an unsightly view for the surrounding community. Photos one through four show the situation on four different dates, and then he states the four different dates. A solution must be found for this problem. If the tires do not surpass the height of the wall, then there would be no issue. One of the owners just take out the tires they need as business proceeds. The tires are stored in a storage shed a few feet away. Used tires could be placed back in the storage shed while waiting a proper disposal. Photo five shows a broken traffic cone and some other materials on the sidewalk. This cone has been lying there for some time. He questions why. The other photos show garbage that continues to lie in the narrowest space between the storage shed and the west wall. At the last hearing in December, it was promised that the garbage would be removed regularly. If you look at the three photos that he provided, the same garbage in each picture. These were taken in February, yesterday, January 16th, and December. This is an easy fix. The owner just needs to take a long poll and pull the mess out. There is an unplated vehicle storage on the site. It has a snowplow attached to it. We understand it belongs to the business. However, we don't understand why the vehicle's not plated. I heard the comments the chair made about the potential for garbage to accumulate and the possibility of people lurking at night because the way the shed and the newer closed garbage areas configured on the site. Whatever the remediation the commissioners suggest for this and other problems mentioned will be very appreciated by my civic. My civic is pleased to hear that the board will probably agree to the hours of operation from eight to eight weekdays and eight to six on Saturdays, close Sundays. I am sure the nearby residents will be very happy as well. As stated in our previous letter regarding this case, the civic requests that if an application for variance renewal is granted, that all conditions from the expiring variance be also included in the renewed grant. Landscaping should be installed on the eastern northern part of the property. No vehicles parked on the grassy strip. Only vehicles awaiting service should be parked overnight on the site. No storage, no clothing bins. Lighting should be directed away from the residences. The dumpster should be enclosed. Business hours, eight to eight weekdays, eight to six on Saturdays, close Sundays. The term for 10 years, as recommended by the community board, and we hope the business complies with all these conditions. I'll forward that to you, Todd.
That's fine. But in response to that, I would say we agree to all those conditions that were already discussed. With respect to the tires going over the walls, all I can say is that personally, our office is near that site, and I drive by regularly. The last time that I drove by, which I believe was last Friday, the tires at noon were not over the wall. We would agree to any condition, including the resolution, that any tires that are outside during business hours, that tires are only allowed outside during business hours, and that said tires are not to exceed any stacking higher than the wall. So we would agree to that. I can't speak, I don't think there were any photos, but I can't speak to any particular photo. All I know is that when I've personally gone by the site, I haven't seen them exceed the wall. With respect to the trash, the last photos that we submitted showing the enclosure, I took those photos. At that time, there was no trash behind there because I purposely went to look behind the storage container. I've been assured by the tenant that they regularly check that once per day to make sure that there's no trash back there. I will agree to any condition regarding the maintenance, and they'll continue to do that. I can't speak to any particular instance that Mr. Euler might have seen about the trash. I just know that the last time that I was at the site, there was no trash that was there.
Mr. Euler wrote that letter in between the time of the last hearing and this one, and stated the same conditions that were concerns from the civic and community that still haven't been ameliorated. So I really think there's got to be a more substantial way to address that rather than saying, we're going to assure you it's not going to continue because during this time, that was the assurance that you gave us at the last time, and Mr. Euler received a bunch of things. And further, and I'm just echoing what the chair said yesterday, it's my understanding that the board was against the tires being outside at any time, not just about facing over a certain height over the wall. And I think that's also echoing what the civic association just stated. I think that needs to be meaningfully addressed.
With respect to that, I would say I was actually at the last hearing, and the issue was tire racks and the fact there were so many. It wasn't about the tires being outside. And actually, if you reference Mr. Euler's letter, he says, I think in this last letter specifically, that they have no issues as long as they don't exceed the height, that it's fine if they're stored outside during business hours, and that this compromise was a good balance between not having any permanent outside storage, not any rack. So, you know, also, I haven't seen any photos. I don't believe he, I don't know if he attached any photos. I haven't seen any photos.
Yeah, fortunately, he wasn't able to attach the photos, but he described what was in the photos.
And he provided dates for these two photos.
The ninth, the 10th, right, the ninth, the 10th, January 23rd, and January 16th to show the situation, and also other photos, so.
The photos that he attached in support of the tire storage were dated yesterday. One of them actually was dated yesterday, February 10th, and the other one was two days before that. So it's like a habit for them. They just used to do it, and...
And also on January 23rd and January 16th. I haven't seen the photos, but when I was there Friday, there weren't any, there wasn't anything blocking the sidewalk, and there wasn't any trash behind it. So I can't reconcile the difference between, you know, his photos and my own personal experiences. I said, this is not me having someone telling me, this is me actually being there on the Friday and not seeing any trash behind me. All I would say is that, you know, I believe that this property owner and tenant have committed, you know, demonstrated commitment to addressing these things, putting the enclosure in, the fact that they removed the clothing bin, the fact that they're agreeing to the hours, and they'll continue trying to work towards all these issues. You know, as respect to the tire storage during business hours, as I said, we'd agree to a condition that it's not to exceed the walls, and as I said, when I've gone by, it hasn't exceeded the walls. I don't know what else we can do about behind the storage container. Perhaps we can look at putting in like a permanent blockade there, or some, you know, permanent, I don't know, like wood construction or something like that, so there is no gap. I don't know. Maybe that's something that we can explore so there's absolutely no physical way to put trash behind there.
I think that would be best.
Okay, so I can go back to them, and I think that that's something we can definitely do.
But if you can also address the unplated vehicle?
Well, I'll ask about it. I don't know about the unplated, I didn't see an unplated vehicle. So I'll ask about the unplated vehicle, and I'll see if we can get a permanent block or something back there so that there's no gap between the angled fence and the storage container, and I think that that should address the issue.
The racks for the tires outside, are they there all the time? They just grab the tires and put them inside, or?
To confirm, there's no racks outside any longer. There's only the tires. What they described to me is that during business hours, there's, they will take the tires. There's a combination. Some tires are stored in the storage container along with other auto repair racks. Some tires are stored inside the bays where they work. During the business hours, when they need the bays, they will bring the tires out. I think the most recent photos that you may have seen, that there's no rack out there, but they stack them, you know...
On top of each other.
On top of each other, like dongs. Yeah, so that's it. There used to be racks. I think the photos that I just went up there, there used to be permanent racks. I think there were three or four racks. Those are 100% gone.
Are they inside right now?
I think the permanent racks are just gone. I think what they did is two things. One, they really tried to limit the inventory they have on the site so they can either do the storage container or the bays, and they have an off-site agreement. I'm not sure exactly what it is. Essentially, they just reduced the inventory so they're not storing as many tires on site. So that's the goal. That really was the main concern last time because admittedly, five, six years ago, those tire racks were terrible. They were large, they were something like that, and they really tried to work towards that.
Are the clothes bins still outside, the clothes bins?
Clothing bins have been removed. Those clothing bins are removed. I think there was also discussion last time. There's a temporary Christmas tree seller who was there, who had a park. The trees are gone, and the car of that vendor who was blocking the sidewalk, was told not to block the sidewalk, and obviously, he's not there anymore. And I don't believe there's been any reports about any sidewalk blockage. So I mean...
With respect to tires, could you provide photographs of what exactly you're proposing during business hours, since these racks have apparently been removed?
I think if you look back through past submissions, that we probably have photos. Not here.
You do have a photo.
Photos that give a better...
They still have the clothing bins outside, and the tires were higher than the fence. Not much, but by some degree.
So I will reemphasize to them, I mean, they really do try and match the wall height. We'll look at the block behind the storage container. I've got a wall, tire. I'll also look at the cone issue that you talked about. Again, I didn't see a cone, but if there's a cone, we'll address it.
And also landscaping?
That's not our property. The lot line ends where the brick wall is, so that's actually the street. And also, as discussed last time, there's significant number of large trees all around the perimeter that provide a buffer between the commercial use, which is to the east, and then there's a commercial use and a residential building north, but there's, I think, five to seven really large trees.
I think the reason landscaping was proposed last time was because that would prevent cars from parking illegally on the site.
I'm not sure how landscaping would do that, because there's brick walls on the back. In the front, we couldn't do any landscaping because that's Northern Boulevard. The one car, the only complaints ever about the car is that car was the Christmas tree vendor, which was at the point of the triangle, and it's not really an ongoing issue. It was just a one-time, or one-month situation, I would say.
Okay, so how long will it take you to look into the triangular issue?
A week, I would think. I don't think it would take very long. Again, we can be flexible with the board's calendar. You know, if I reach out to them today, I think that based on how quickly they put up the dumpster enclosure, that they'll quickly try and address that gap. So whatever works with the board's schedule.
In that case, do the commissioners have anything else that they would like to discuss?
Okay. Can I just say, just to confirm, it was looking at the triangle point, that gap area, and also reconfirming the tires and the wall height, correct?
Yes. Are there any speakers? Okay, so submission, February 26th, with a continued hearing, March 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, calendar number 33279BC43-20, Little Net Parkway, Queens.
There's a request for an adjournment?
Yes, and I can also...
Do we want to swear a G because to speak about the adjournments?
Sure.
Are we reopening?
It's not closed. It's on a continued hearing. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Is your property owner here?
Affirm the property owner is here and available to answer any questions that the commissioners might have. Yeah, if they ask you questions, you can go sign up.
So I think a main topic of discussion is that a dismissal warning letter was sent on October 30th, so why shouldn't this application be dismissed?
Understood. Todd Dale for the applicant. The property owner is here to answer any questions, but just to give some brief explanation to the board and some background information. As the board aware is that this lot 44, the original variance was granted to provide additional accessory commercial parking to two permitted uses that are on Lot 64 and Lot 65, in front of Northern Boulevard, that aren't actually part of this application. In short, the issues that came up where there was a significant site warp that was requested by the board, that the property owner committed to moving forward on, included but not limited to fence repair, landscaping, the paving, the striping, just essentially improving the condition of the lot. Issues ran up because the estimated cost for that ended up being much higher than expected, that the property owner can speak to, because it also involved drywall repair, in combination with the fact that Lot 64 and Lot 65, which really are where the income comes in for this lot, were vacant for a long period of time. Lot 64, which is the most northeastern portion of the lot, recently had a certificate of occupancy that was just granted, copies here, was just obtained January 2020, just so the board knows. The tenant there was going to be deviated as a medical use, and they weren't allowed to occupy until they got their Department of Health permits, and the CO was required to get that. Lot 65 was a youth group CO, but is recently occupied last summer by a restaurant, so a new one came in. So as part of it was due to the occupancy, but also the fact that due to the significant cost associated with repairs, it was not possible to get any financing from a lender because the lenders wanted to confirm that there was occupancy, but also valid COs. So really, this was a domino effect where Lot 64 and 65, because of the lack of occupancy and the fact that they needed to get the COs updated, prevented them getting the financing that's required. But now that the certificate of occupancy has been attained for 64, and that we can have occupancy of both lots, and financing will be available, the full expectation is now we'll be able to get the funds for the request of repairs. So this is, in short, this is an unusual situation because Lot 44 in and of itself really isn't an income-producing lot because there is no use on it. The use that's there is accessory parking to the separate lots. As I said, the property owner's here. If you want to ask her any questions about the financing issues that occurred, or the estimates or anything along those lines, or if you want to speak to it.
It would have been good in the submission. It would have been good in the submission, as Director Waugh, you're asking for an adjournment.
I, I understand the, with the circumstances, but with respect to the CO that was just recently obtained, it delayed the decision, so I understand exactly what you're saying.
State your name for the record, please.
Sorry?
State your name for the record.
Risa Chain. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. We recently obtained all the estimates that we need, or most of them, I'm still missing landscaping. But to kind of rebuild the lot, not just repair it, it's going to cost us about $350,000. With no income, it's pretty impossible to come up with any part of that money short of financing, so I have applications pending with a couple of banks, hopefully, we will be able to get the financing. We, we were at the point of getting it before, when they found out that we didn't have a CO on the building, and then they withdrew the offer to finance. So now that we have it, I'm expecting that we'll be able to get the financing in place and do all the work. And it's not repairing, it's completely repaving, installing electric, putting up 11 light poles, completely new fence along Northern Boulevard, renovating all of the existing drywells, and installing a new drywall, which that might take a little bit of time, because we need a building department permit for that. And replacing the sidewalk along Little Net Parkway, that will cost at a minimum of $50,000.
I have a question. Does your tax lot provide the zoning resolution required parking for those other two lots, or is it just accessory parking?
I can speak to that. I will give 100% confirmation with the architect, but as I recall, it is not required parking, it's just supplemental accessory parking. Both of those lots, both of those uses, I think, are waived out because of the required parking for the district. I think also they might be pre-61 buildings as well, so this is just voluntary accessory parking.
Do our commissioners feel comfortable that they've made a showing about the efforts that they've been making?
Do you have any copies of the proposal you got, proposals you got for...
Yes, I don't have copies, I only have mine, but you're welcome to look at them.
I think they were all emailed, so I don't really need to keep them.
I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I want to say, as the commissioners review those, we, you know, we understand the dismissal warning letter, and we appreciate the patience the board has exhibited for this case, but because of the unusual circumstances of this lot, and its arrangement with these other lots, and the unexpected circumstances, it's just created, it's created more of an expense and more of a time required in order to, you know, fully address and repair conditions on this lot. If the board were willing to grant another adjournment, you know, we'd be appreciative, and we're agreeable either to a longer adjournment, so that everything can be complete, or if the board wants to do a shorter adjournment, just to check on progress, we'd be agreeable to that too, should the board be agreeable.
At what point are you expected to commence the alteration and repairs to the lot?
Obviously, since it's winter time, we can't do the asphalt, so we do have to wait for the spring to do the asphalt. This lot is in constant use, so since we finally have an open tenant, so we have to be careful with the trenching. You can see on the paving estimate, they're planning it for two days. If it takes more than two days, they're going to charge me more. So expecting the financing, I'm hoping that we can maybe start beginning of May with doing the trenching we need to do, repairing, breaking up the areas that need to, where the drywells are that need to be repaved, and of course, and trenching for the lighting, and then the last part would be that bringing the asphalt company to, what do they say on there, churn up everything and re-pave the whole lot. I, I think the fencing will come after that, landscaping will probably come after that, and the last thing we'll do is the sidewalk.
When do you think it'd be completed?
If we get the full funding that we need for it, we should be completed, I would think by July, start in May, but, you know, at the latest.
It's, it's like we're starting today. The case is here since December 2018, so...
It seems that they're doing, it, it seems like they have a bona fide attempt here, so...
We have the plans, it's just that we don't have the money. Again, we had abided by the request to remove any kind of truck parking that we're getting a little income from, so we got rid of all the trucks, no income coming in at all. And it's just impossible to go forward. It's a small family, we don't own anything else, and we've had a couple of vacancies, and now we do have the properties rented finally. But before generating any income for any other purpose, we had to pay the real estate commissions, and the lovely people who brought us those tenants. We had to replace a roof on Lot 64 for $120,000. Those have all been paid for. We have no debt on the property.
I'm, I'm okay with granting an adjournment.
Would the commissioners like to grant a longer one, in order to allow them to proceed with the work?
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay. Are there any speakers present?
I think all of us.
Okay. Submission date, you said July, so let's put this on for... Submission July 22nd, for a continued hearing August 4th, with the reminder that this will definitely, I expect that this would be the last adjournment available, especially given the dismissal warning letter.
No, we fully understand, and we appreciate the board's patience with this, and if there's any intermediate progress that we can submit, we'll submit, you know, to the record ahead of July 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want those papers back, or we want to hold on?
Do you need those papers back? We have them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Benjroley, what? 27.
Item number four, calendar 6414 B.C., 1320 East 23rd Street in Brooklyn.
No.
Good morning, Lyra Altman from Law Office, Lyra Altman, requesting an adjournment until April 7th, please.
All right. Submission March 18th, with a continued hearing April 7th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New cases, item number five, calendar 1636 BZ 1885 Westchester Avenue, AKA 1301 White Plains Road in the Bronx. Go ahead, you can sign. Swear. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Good morning, Kyron Rothbuck for Vassalati Associates. So we attended yesterday's executive session. And I'd like to, I made lots of copies, but maybe this, this will suffice for the board. One of the questions came up to show that the gas station has been in continuous use since 2017, so what you have there is a bill from Island Transportation showing the delivery, and then you also have a chart of deliveries made during the year 2017, over the course of various months. Additionally, there was a question about the asphalt on the site being paved, those are pictures taken from May 2019, showing that the asphalt was, was redone. So this project is for the BP station located at 1885 Westchester Avenue. The station's been there for 60 years, it's a self-serve, 24/7 self-serve station with a convenience store. The board mentioned that we hadn't heard from the community board, that's correct. Under the rules of procedure, we sent them a copy of our application. They, they did receive a copy of the application, we didn't hear from them, we followed up with a phone call, and then we followed up with a, I wrote a personal letter to the chair of the community board outlining the application, the hearing date, and that we hadn't heard from them, and we'd be happy to attend a meeting of the land use committee. We didn't hear from them at all, but Ms. Eubanks yesterday sent an email to the district manager, and I believe she was successful in getting a response from the district manager, and I, whatever the community board's going to do, I don't know at this particular point. But they have not invited us to a hearing.
When was this application filed?
The board mentioned yesterday that the CO doesn't have a calendar number on it. We, we didn't process this application the last time it was extended at the board, but of course, this application includes getting a new CO, which will include the calendar number, and all of, all of the compliances that the board, all of the conditions that the board put on it. We do acknowledge that there is some graffiti on the site, and that the, the trash enclosure should be fixed, and we, we, obviously, we plan on doing that.
I have a question about your continuous use evidence. You only have one month's worth, and I believe you have to have continuous use right up to the filing of this application, so you need to, I believe it ends at December 2017, what you gave us, December 1st, 2017.
Well, you know, Commissioner, yesterday, I mean, yes, from yesterday to today, it didn't leave us a lot of time, so...
No, absolutely, understood, I'm just letting you know.
All right, that's fine. Well, I mean, we'll provide some more electric bills and, and other things to show that the board's been in continuous operation. The sign calculation, I mean, we've provided a sign calculation sheet and along the plans that shows it's in compliance with the signs. I don't know if there was a lighting compliance drawing ever submitted for this application, or ever requested for this application, other than yesterday, I guess we can provide that, other than to say that this site is unique, it doesn't have any residential or anything around it. There's a parking lot in back of the station, and obviously, it fronts on Westchester Avenue with the overhead elevated subway line, so we'll provide a lighting chart, but there, there's no sensitive uses surrounding us that would pose any issues.
It's, I'm sorry, is the members of the board, is it being requested that they provide the lighting diagram?
Yes.
I believe the vice chair had requested that.
Okay.
Also, you know, I'm not sure, there was a request for an elevation plan, we'll, we'll, we'll provide one.
For, for the lighting, since you don't have residential, like next to you, if, if the lighting, usually when we have residential next to that commercial property, we ask for zero at the lot line, zero lumens. But in your case, if, if you have something like point five or so, that would be fine, since we don't have, we don't have adjacent...
Right, it's all, it's all, it's all accessory parking.
And commissioners, you expect to see the light diagram based on actual measurements since the site's in operation, right?
Yes.
That's fine.
Did you speak about the curb cut yet?
Well, the curb cut's not there. The curb cut's been taken away, and actually, if you go to Google Street View, you'll see that the curb cut is, is no longer there.
Mr. Rothbuck, can you just provide a photograph of that curb cut for the record?
It actually shows the first set of photographs that were submitted with the application. Photo number, photo number three, well, page number three of 15, shows that entire expanse of lot, and shows the curb cut restored, as well as page two of 15.
And obviously, when we go out there and, and, you know, take care of the fence and the painting, we're going to submit the photographs as well.
And you will need to update the statement of facts, add a compliance chart.
Will we ask about the elevation plan?
No, we'll provide an elevation plan. So I, I guess we'd like to go out there and do the work and everything, about 45 days. Hopefully, it'll be sooner, but we have to account for possible weather conditions.
Are there any speakers? Submission April 8th, with a continued hearing April 28th.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, calendar number four dash zero zero BZ 243 West 30th Street in Manhattan. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
Elise Villader from Eric Palatnik P.C. I guess I didn't need all of these copies today. But I made a submission this morning, and I'm just going to go through with you what the changes were.
Thank you. Just make sure the chair has one, she's got it.
So, there's a cover letter, but if you go to the plans, they've been changed in a few ways for clarity. So on P2, there is now, there was a floor area schedule, but there's an updated floor area schedule with existing BSA-approved and the proposed. So what happened was the existing, he included, because they had previously included things like air shafts, and things that don't really count for floor area for the PCE. The BSA-approved plans were measured incorrectly, he remeasured everything to make sure it was absolutely correct, and the proposed PCE is what he actually measured to be the correct PCE square footage now. So those are the three differences.
When you say square footage, are you talking about zoning floor area, or are you talking...
I asked him if it was zoning or gross or whatever, but he says it's net, because he's not counting the air shafts and things like that.
Okay.
He told me that net was the correct. But then I, but then he did put on a zoning analysis form that the 500, 5,274 square feet is essentially gross, it just doesn't have the, those spaces. He wanted to only measure the PCE space. If there's a way he can clarify that for you further, I don't know. But on the zoning analysis form, it says gross square footage at the bottom, and a note 502, 5,274 square feet.
I think it means that includes the cellar space.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's why it's broken down to be like really clear. Sorry if it makes it more confusing.
The square footage under the prior approval was 4,264 on the first floor, and 1,884 on the cellar.
So, okay.
Which would exceed that figure.
Yes, because I, I believe he said it was, it was wrong, because it was including spots that no longer should be included.
Yeah, he didn't, he remeasured the whole thing, and he's like, this doesn't make any sense. And if you look at the previously, previously approved plans, you can see the hatching is in all these different areas that... these different areas that like corridors and mechanical spaces and things that don't count for floor area.
So they counted mechanical spaces before...
Before, yeah.
As floor area and you add them to the PCE.
As part of the PCE.
Okay. But these mechanical spaces are used as mechanical spaces instead?
Yes.
Okay.
So what he did to make it even clearer is if you go through the next set of pages, you can see he outlined what is included in the PCE on each floor. And then, what else did he do? Included on each floor. I guess that's all he did. Yeah. And we just hope that that really clarifies how big the PCE is. But the PCE actually hasn't changed at all since its prior.
Okay. So just to restate, in the cellar, it's floor space and then on the upper floors, it's zoning floor area.
Yes.
Okay. And there's also a question about hatching, right?
About what?
Hatching.
Oh, yes. The hatching was removed because it was confusing, so he just removed it completely from all of the drawings. It was just to show corridors.
Your last page does have hatching of what's included in the calculation of floor space.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But she's...the chairwoman said yesterday that she didn't want it just on that page because she thought it might be lost. So he tried to include it on every page like clarity. And then the last comment was licenses. One of the employees doesn't work there anymore, but the other one who does, I've included a 2021 expiration date of the license. Oh, and then I also deleted from the statement of facts any language about expanding the PCE. So that is gone. It was just a little confusing because of what people had included in the past versus what people include now. All right, so on the fly, it's just yesterday.
Are there any members of the public here to speak about this? I would note that notice of hearing was posted in the building lobby.
And the community board waived their recommendation.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
And the fire department gave a letter of no objection.
Okay. So with that in mind, motion to close.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta.
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Too fast for me, lady. Here you go. Item seven, calendar number 185-13BZ, 97 Franklin Avenue, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions? Elise Folodaire from Eric Palatnik PC. I don't believe there were any substantial comments about this application. I guess what we just would like to request is four years because we haven't begun building due to the building next door.
Four years from the date of grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but also, if possible, four years from the date of issuance of resolution, but I don't know about your...
How do our Commissioners feel about that request?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So are there any speakers present on this application, 185-13BZ? No. All right. Motion to close.
You want to call?
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta.
Aye.
And motion to grant for four years from the date of the issuance of the resolution.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight, calendar number 62-15BZ, 139 Bay Street, Staten Island. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do. Good morning, Commissioners, BSA staff. My name is Glenn Catrona, AIA, Catrona Architecture, BLC, representing 139 Bay Street. I was at yesterday's executive session, heard the comments, and just would like to respond accordingly. Four years ago, we obtained a variance for 139 Bay Street. At the time, we were told this is a quintessential project that should be shown at the board. It is a...an existing building, 130 years old, that was bifurcated in the early 1900s, based on the construction of Bay Street on Staten Island. Bay Street was raised 25 feet. The building currently is 11 foot and change from the Staten Island Rapid Transit. Very, very complex project. We obtained that variance and shortly thereafter, I was retained to commence construction documents, refine the design. And a little bit after that there, I was told by the owners of this project to discontinue any work as the partners actually began to dissolve and changed their partnership. Very complex in terms of the amount of properties that they owned collectively. And so, a lot of time passed. They're restructuring at this particular point. Couple of comments that were brought up, you know, elevator violations. The building's been vacant. Nothing has been done to the building in terms of construction. As most of you know, the north shore of Staten Island is aggressively seeking to develop with all of the new zoning. Changes that were made promoting this type of construction and development in the area. I don't know that I could tell the story as to how this will pan out because some of the partners may restructure and be involved with this here. The property may be sold, though I understand that the variance is granted to the building. So I think in short order, we will see a restructuring and something positive to move this project forward. We were widely supported by our local leaders as this here is the first privately-owned property adjacent to the Staten Island Ferry. And I guess...I guess we would need to see shortly that this project will be back on track. I can't say for sure that the private developers in part or that this project will be sold, but we're requesting four-year extension, a term of variance from the time of the resolution to hopefully see this project come to attrition.
Well, an extension of time to complete construction, right?
Correct.
Not the term.
Yes. Did I say? I'm sorry. Sorry.
Okay. How long would it take you to put together this information in terms of next steps?
I mean, if I had the information to work with right now, as I said, you know, there were seven partners involved here and they went through a very complex period here dissolving as they currently...as they previously existed when we came to this project. So I don't know that I can give those answers at this particular point. The project may be sold. If I knew, I would state it, but I don't. I'd like to continue with the project and I'm sure that the borough of Staten Island would love to see this project constructed, though I don't have those answers.
You stated it'd be in short order that you'd get some information. You're expecting it. So I...but I think the question just is, how long of an adjournment do you need to give us and some...when you would have more knowledge to the event? Frankly, I think...I think that we're trying to give you as much time as possible so you can bring an argument that's something that we can grant.
So you need that argument in place. I mean, because the project may be sold, the project may...they may restructure. Certain partners may be involved with the project. I mean, what I'm really requesting is just an extension of time to complete construction here. Because we don't have those answers, they're actively going through it. They're very complex. They own many, many properties. They were in the years in restructuring here. So I think the fact is, I'd like to walk out of here with, you know, being able to have an extension of time to complete construction. And with that time, hopefully, we'll realize this project.
That was my understanding yesterday. They walking in with nothing to give us and they are asking for extension. I'm okay with that. But we need to get some...we need to get some hope that you're going to start this project. I understand and I appreciate that you mentioned that the variance is granted to the project, not to the structuring...the firm that's structuring. This is a variance for the project. That's what you said. Right now, you...it's like you're coming to us and you're saying that, "You know what? I'm not sure when we're going to start. We're not sure even if we're going to start and we need an extension." It's kind of tough. I'm not saying it's not possible, but it's kind of tough to proceed with a request like that. So if you can put together some sort of a statement, provide some education to us what's going on and when you anticipate to start, that would be helpful.
Commissioner, I come to this board and state fact, I don't know that I have that information as the architect working, you know, on the prior variance. I don't know what's going to happen to be upfront with everyone here. I know that they're restructuring. Certain partners will stay in the game potentially. They may sell it. They may sell it. They're exercising all options. So...
I'm sorry for being late, but I just want to jump into this.
Please.
Is your client here?
No, the client is not here.
So the next time, come with your client because you can't speak to facts that you don't know, right?
It's fine.
Next time, come with your client and you can advise the client in advance or maybe you can give us a submission. We really need to know more about what kind of movement is being done and to...I don't know if this was already discussed, but to put it in perspective, when we see that nothing happens on a case on a site for repeated renewals, that risks the view that the application or the variance has been abandoned. And you can't...there was no movement, for instance, to get the drawings done or to file a building permit, whereas on, for instance, another application here, they had a perfectly... a very reasonable reason for not being able to start due to damage caused by another adjacent building, right? But and on other cases, we see that they file for a permit. So here, there's no motion to do anything, right? So you need to go back to your clients and find out what they've done in the interim because, you mean, they get a variance and then they do nothing? That's not typical. Normally, there's a little celebration after the variance and then everybody mobilizes and they start to do something. So what did they do here? And then what kind of undermined the doing? Did the lenders back out? Were there never any lenders? Was this all done on spec? I mean, we need more.
Madam Chair, before you walked in, I explained, we walked out of here very excited. In fact, this board had said that this was a quintessential project to bring to the board. Very complex. You mentioned it yesterday at executive session. What happened was that after we left here, I was retained. We began construction documents. Shortly thereafter, was told to discontinue as the partnership was in the process of dissolving.
Okay.
Seven partners, very complex, many properties that they owned, years of going through the process of disbanning. It's a good chance that some of the partners will remain in a restructuring on this project, though the project may be sold.
Right.
At this particular point, it's the best information I could bring to the board, though if the board, you know, wants me to go back and have whatever ownership is in place and come and represent where they feel they're going to go.
There's someone with the authority to make decisions on this site and who arguably knows the history of the site. For example, if expenditures were made in the course of developing construction documents, that's relevant, right? If there has been investment in the project since the grant, that's not abandoning it, right?
But there was and then I was told...
Right. But so they...that means they presumably paid the engineer. Like there's some...there's some proof that there was work done the day after.
They paid my firm to commence construction documents on the project.
Okay.
But then shortly thereafter, I was told we're discontinuing it.
But that wasn't mentioned even in the submission.
Yeah, we have no...and it sounds really, when you read the submission, we get a variance, we go party, and then we go to Europe.
I don't have the answers, but I'm comfortable with if the board wants me to go back to the ownership and get some plans as to how they'll move forward in the future.
Mm-hmm.
They may tell me, "Listen, we're selling the building."
That's fine.
Yeah, well, that part's fine, but again, you don't...you risk the...if in four years nothing is done, then having had not one stitch of work done in eight years, you risk an abandonment conclusion, right?
I got it.
And so they need to understand that's what really ownership should be here. They should understand the seriousness of the issue. Okay? So for the next line?
Fine.
Okay.
I really appreciate your candor.
Give me a day and a time.
Say?
I really appreciate the candor.
Commissioner, there's not much I can say when I don't have much to work with and I'm not going to say something at this board that I can't say.
No, you're a fact witness and you can't be if you don't have the facts, but the owner has the facts.
Thank you.
That's just how it works. Okay. So I don't think you need too much time to do that.
No.
You just to go and have a conversation, write up the results of your conversation and then make sure you can have your client attend the next hearing, okay?
If I may, I would recommend him asking for as much time as possible so he could...if there's something that's happening now, there's some restructuring, perhaps it'd be completed by that time.
Okay.
And at that point, you know, I think you might be in a better place. That's my suggestion.
Yeah. And for instance, if it's actively being marketed, I mean, I saw real estate agents drive around and they see an abandoned building and so they list it, you know? They don't necessarily have the permission to list it. So if it's actively being marketed and listed...
That's one of their options.
Yeah. But if they...if they're doing it as opposed to an option, right? If they actually have a listing agent they contracted with, that's relevant because now we see there's activity on the site. It's not that they just walked away from it and hope for the best in some future time.
That's not the case. It was very complex here, but I will do what's needed.
Okay. That's what we need.
Okay. Great.
Did you want us?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. Yeah, that's why I want the submission.
Submission April 1st for a continuation of April 21st.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
And apologies to everybody for my...
Item number nine, calendar number 2017-207BZ, 2030 Broadway in Manhattan. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes. Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners. We were at the executive session yesterday and I'd like to respond to the issues that were raised, but before I do that, there was an initial question about what happened on the December 10th hearing.
Yeah.
There was an issue with the notice of hearing, so our office was on a wait of a date. We never showed up. We received a new notice of hearing on January 9th for this hearing, so here we are.
Sorry.
Well...
There's no notice of hearing for an extension of time to obtain a CO. They got notice of hearings and that's what confused them apparently.
Yeah.
Is that what hap...okay, apologies. Let's make sure everyone knows, no notice of hearing requirements for extensions of time. Whenever you see a notice of hearing issue, we have it clearly in the rules what the list of notice requirements are. So apologies to you, Mr. Mittler.
That's right. So going through the issues that were mentioned at the exec session, we will clarify our statement of facts to refer to this as legalization, but we will also include verification as to ownership hours of operation, the operation of the facility, the sprinklers and occupancy and that they are the same when the grant was first issued. You mentioned something about notifying neighbors. Now, as I understand it, the rules of procedure did not require any notification of the hearing to anybody.
So it goes like this. This is something we've been learning over time with some of the...yours isn't necessarily it because it's a yoga studio unless, as I always... it because it's a yoga studio unless, as I always say, they're flinging their legs up against the wall. But the, what we've been doing is where we have PCs that are existing, in particular in residential buildings, we get a lot of complaints from the residential tenants after the facts, like after it's granted, we'll get a complaint and then they'll ask to come back for a compliance hearing. So to forestall that, hopefully to reach out, we have the hearing posted in the lobby so that if anybody is interested in it, they can submit comments or attend the hearing. And that's to find out if there is actually something about the PCE that is particularly problematic, like we have one today where there's obviously a sound issue in an existing situation.
And these instructions are set forth in an administrative notice that has a form of notice that can be posted in the lobby.
Okay. So, but just to clarify, the, the, in this case, the, the PC itself is isolated from the residential occupancy. If you look at the drawings, particularly A102.
Sorry, one second. Sorry, just a second. There's a reason. Does everybody, does anybody have access to the drawing? Oh, no.
Do you have a copy of the drawings?
Oh, you happen to have one right there.
Well, I have my copy, I'll show you.
Okay, maybe you could just show quickly 'cause I have technical issues. Not used to this laptop yet.
Okay.
Entrance to PC.
So you're saying it's isolated vertically though?
Well, if you look at the drawing, the entrance to the PC is on Broadway. The entrance to the residential occupancy is on West 70th Street, far removed.
Right.
You take the stair from Broadway and go up to the second floor and there you are at the PCE, totally unrelated to the residential. There's no residential on that floor, it's just the PC on the second floor.
Oh, no, usually it has to do with the floors above and below. That's where we get the complaints, not so much from adjacencies. I mean, I could ask the commissioners, it's a yoga studio. For those of you who know what happens in a yoga studio, it can be, the noise is actually generated by chanting, which can be loud, and people flinging their feet up against the wall and they stand on their hands. So that, that can be noisy actually, depending. So I don't know whether this is an issue here. My, you know, my tendency with yoga studios is it's less of a problem. And I'm, I'm okay with commissioners. I, I don't know if we had anything outstanding. Yeah, yeah, please. Sorry.
I mean, the point is that there's a separate lobby.
Yeah.
For the PCE and from the residences and I doubt if some of the residents even know it's there.
Okay, that's always a good thing. When you don't know it's there, that's the best answer. Okay, I'd be okay with waiving the notice requirement because it's a yoga studio, but I don't know how others feel about it.
I'm okay with it. It's, it's very close to the, like the street, so it's like a perimeter portion of the building and sound usually travels to like the weakest pass. So it's not, I mean, if, it's not gonna penetrate through walls and travel. And since they don't have like vibration issue here.
Right, there isn't any treadmill or anything like that.
And you haven't known of any complaints?
No, no complaints at all.
No, okay.
All right, so the next issue was, I think Commissioner Ottley-Brown asked about the PW1. The PW1 was submitted on October 16th of 2019 and that was the PW1 that would convert the review of this from a self-certification to a standard review. There is also reference to the existing violations in the building. So I understand that the building has 15 violations. Most of them are just payment of fines. There is one violation that relates to one application that is open with respect to other portions of the building unrelated to the PCE. PC has no violations and none of the violations relate to the operation of the PCE. We believe that once we're done with the paperwork and review and apply for TCO, that the building department will issue a TCO for the second floor.
Do you have experience with getting TCOs for just one floor?
I have, but I've also spoken to my estradiate who says that at the point in time when it's needed, they can get some type of approval from the DOB. There's either a TCO for the second floor or something akin to that. You mentioned in the first executive session about LNO, a letter of no objection. Or something of that nature. I think we can get that and if needed, we can supply that to the board in satisfaction of that condition.
I think that would be much better. So this is second floor specific, whatever it is that DOB can give to indicate that they're okay with, you know, how it was constructed and the means of egress. I mean, that's really what we're talking about, right? And obviously, understanding that, that you have this PCE, special permit. Okay.
I think those are all the issues that.
Okay. I'm so curious to find out what it is that you could get, so kind of independent of this, if you could let council's office know, I mean, 'cause we're not gonna be watching you do this. If you could, when you have a chance, let Tony or council's office know what it is you got, so at least you can refer to the right thing.
Let me, let me clarify. I will tell you that, since you asked the question whether I've ever gotten it, yes, but that was in the past. I think the building department may have changed their, may have changed their procedures, but they still can issue something akin to a partial CO or temporary CO or a CO that applies to a floor alone, not the portions of floors, the portions of building. But I'll, I'll let the board know what we can obtain.
We had a loan discussion, as you remember, about a partial CO, right? But that was a very unusual situation. This is more like a routine thing that you would expect to be happening on all the floors of the building that aren't the subject of the violations, right? Or the open alt ones. So this is, this is quite different, so I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, are there any speakers on this? All right, so I don't think there's anything open here, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Pomata?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that some form of DOB sign off for the second floor is obtained within, what's the usual time period? One, one year, is that?
For legalization, it's one year. For standard ones, four years.
We get one year from the date of the resolution?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
One year from today. Everything's finished in the place, so.
Yeah, the construction is complete, yes.
Okay. Chair Pomata?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, calendar number 2017-247BZ. This is 1367 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Did we verify proof of notice and proof of service?
We had some letters already.
You have the initial. No, you just want this one.
Are they speaking?
Are they gonna speak at all? Okay. Raise your right hand.
Do you affirm and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Just in, just in case. Just in case they come across you.
Good morning, Lyra Altman, from the Law Office of Lyra Altman. We did, if somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. First question I know that just came up before you came up was, did we notify? What I did, for some reason, we had a problem getting the green cards back on this one. I'm not sure why. So what I did was I reached out.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
Excuse me.
Please, if you're gonna speak, please go outside.
Because we already had a community board recommendation, I didn't reach out to them for confirmation that they received the application because their recommendation clearly confirms that. I reached out to the Borough President's Office, to City Planning, to Borough, all of this. Emails back from everybody confirming.
Oh, so this is emails confirming receipt of the initial.
Confirming receipt of the original application, right here. Would you like me to hand these to you or to Mr. Matias?
Mr. Matias, please. And we do have notice of hearing, right?
Correct.
That's a separate thing from what you're talking about, right?
Yes, it is. Notice of hearing that I get from the post office, the green cards, they have to come back. And unfortunately, the green cards don't make it back.
No, but the notice of hearing, it's filling out that form with the checks.
Yes.
You submitted that?
Well, that form I have in my hand, that I submitted to you guys already.
Yeah, they have. You have it. I, I didn't see it in the folder, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, it was already submitted.
Okay.
Okay. Next, there was a comment on the statement of facts that we said there was no bulk change. What was actually stated in the statement wasn't that there was no bulk change, and I'll read right from the statement. These modifications do not increase the bulk of the building and actually slightly decrease the previously approved FAR and open space ratio waivers.
No, but so you say they don't increase the bulk, but then how do you get a change of eight square feet?
Well, we reduced, we didn't increase the bulk, we reduced it slightly because we reduced it, actually, it's now nine square feet. It's modified. I have a revised statement of facts and findings. Are you ready to go into your board? We recalculated everything last night, or actually, I should say, Mr. Vincenti's office did. And he's done the FAR breakdowns, just like your board requested. With respect to the existing building plans, those were submitted to your board in January, January 21st. And I double-checked, I do have confirmation that it was received by your agency on January 21st. In addition, the proposed plans were revised so that everything did match. I heard the comment yesterday that some of the things didn't match. That was all fixed in the January submission. So I'm hoping that that made it into SharePoint. If not, I do have confirmation that your agency received it, though.
You have the previously approved plans and the proposed plans. Why don't I hand up the submitted? And neither of those include the existing drawings.
It was January 21st submission.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. No, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 11-7. I don't have anything subsequent to that.
I'm not sure why it wasn't in SharePoint. As I said, I have checked my folder last night. I do have confirmation received by the agency.
Can somebody check SharePoint? I don't, I didn't get a January 21 submission.
That's a copy of that. We also have a newly revised set reflecting what you've asked for. We have two copies. And I can hand it out there for another set just so that a few people can look at it at the same time.
I'm looking at the commissioners folder and don't see a submission.
Okay, so. Yeah. I don't know exactly, thank you. Is that the same? That's what it says.
No, this is from this morning, based on yesterday's comments. So we can see that that was made, the truth is like we have a new provision now.
All right. So.
The set that we just handed up.
Gee, I'm wondering whether there's anything that can be done to ensure if a submission is made, you know, do you call the project manager to ensure?
I know the hard copy was made and I know that I have confirmation it was received by submit, but I.
You gotta submit, thank you very much.
Yeah, but I can't guarantee it makes into SharePoint, of course.
No, I know, but this happens sometimes and I don't know how to.
Nonetheless, we have a more updated set of plans based on yesterday's comments, so let's just keep going. But the existing set you now have in your hand, I can resubmit if you'd like with pleasure.
Yeah, do resubmit.
It's my pleasure.
I don't think it's there, okay?
Not a problem to resubmit.
Okay.
So in any event, the existing plans, you have the first floor diagrams, they do match on that new set that went in in January. You were correct prior to the January submission. Now it has been fixed.
What, sorry, what's been fixed?
The existing, the floor, first floor diagrams, you said they didn't match when you started looking through, they all do match now.
Okay.
And I did confirm that again last night, although I had submitted in January with the intention of correcting that. With respect to the current set, the set that now the commissioners have on the iPad and you also have a set that was handed up by Mr. Vincenti, the demolition plans have additional dimensions added. The reason those were added was to show where those, what you called floating walls, are existing, so you'll know exactly where they're remaining.
Sorry, sorry. No problem. What, what are we talking about?
Look at the set this, Mr. Vincenti handed up.
What about them?
I'll show you.
Sorry, maybe he's, can we have him speak about his drawings? You did make a submission in Dropbox. You did make a submission in Dropbox. I don't know.
Here, you want to use it?
Wait.
I was gonna say, I have my notes, I didn't use mine.
It went into the wrong volume of what?
It didn't make it into the commissioners' SharePoint.
Oh, it made it into a different SharePoint?
Yes.
Okay, so confirming it was received, but it went to the wrong place, so we didn't see it, okay? No, 'cause we're looking at something new now. The thing they have now is a new submission. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I was going through the changes on plans from yesterday.
Okay. All right, so, good morning, Madam Chair.
State your name, please.
Salvatore Vincenti, the architect for the job. So basically, let me just go back on what we did here. Obviously, as you know, this was already approved and we just wanted to modify some of the design aspects, so we, that's why, the reason why we're back here. We modified a little bit of the bulk, mostly where that happens is at the attic level. There's a change in the bulk and, and, but the floor area really is very similar to what was approved. I think also what we did, I just wanna take you back a little bit, is in the attic, originally it was a gable roof that was approved. What we did, we did a hip with a dormer, which I think is more pleasing to the eye, to the backyard. So I thought we did a more favorable design for that aspect and it also meets my client's needs. So I just wanted to, just that as a backdrop. So we did some of the changes as per yesterday. We tried to rush to get this all done and there is one more thing at the yard. I think your yard was a major concern. So we had an Oriole at the second floor that protruded one foot seven inches and we've set that back actually in the new submission.
It was the side yard, not?
On the side yard, correct.
Like bay window, you calling it a nor?
That little bay thing, yes. So what we did was we, we reduced it to the seven inches, so now we will have a five foot on one side and an eight foot on the other, for a total of 13.
Can you show me where you are in the plan? I don't know where you are. Oh, oh, you don't have the plan?
Yeah, hold on, hold on, I'll tell you where I am.
Show it here?
Hold on. Bear with me here. Well, first of all, you could take a look at P1.
Okay.
Let's try with the plopper. On the north side, there's that little Oriole. We actually put down reduced Oriole at second floor. It was originally, that extended one foot seven, it is now seven inches. We pushed it back.
Okay.
So that we have that five foot at that one location. Most of the side yard is actually five foot seven.
Okay, but that's the existing Oriole.
Yeah, but we actually made it smaller.
Yeah, but in other words, you're not increasing the degree of non-compliance in the side yard, that's the question.
Well, we're not increasing at all now because now we comply, actually.
Right.
Before, it was an existing non-compliance which you, you seemed to have commented on it, so what we did was we reduced it. Originally, it was one foot seven. I'll show you a survey.
Okay, so what I wanted to know is, that, that little bay window was an existing condition, arguably legal existing condition, we don't know. We don't know? Okay.
See, that was Oriole, that's all it was.
Right, okay.
And it was one foot seven.
One foot seven deep and seven foot nine inches wide.
So we kept the seven foot nine inches, but what we did was we reduced it by one foot and now we have a complying side yard. foot, and now we have a complying side yard.
It's the little thing that's...
Seven inches, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
That's all. All right, so now our side yards do comply. As far as, let's see here, let's go down the list here, there's a couple of things. So that was the bulk, the side zoning, P1. Oh, we added the zoning information on P1, from the approved plans. We actually did P1A.
Okay, so...
So we added some of the notes that was on the previous approval.
Okay, and then you have a red mark correction, which you're going to correct, right?
Yes, yes, because what happened was, we're trying to rush it last night, and even though we changed the side yard, the proposed total, we left at 12. But we'll change it, actually, that's probably, it's coming right now to you.
No, 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 we're not going to be able, we need to review the drawings.
No, no, I understand, but I just want you to know that's already addressed.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? It was, we overlooked that. Also, what we did change there was the height of the front wall, where originally, it actually was...
What page?
Perimeter wall. But in an R2, there is no perimeter wall. It's the height of the street wall at the front.
Oh.
So that's all, we just changed the language.
Okay.
To meet, to match the zoning section.
Okay.
That's pretty much it, okay? Let's move on. As far as the existing building plans, we did submit it. I guess that's also...
Okay, that's to be clarified when we... But so, now that I have you, is just, and you have more time, right? Because you did this over in the middle of the night, kind of thing.
We usually don't, yeah.
Yeah. So when you go back, scour the existing drawings, scour your demo drawings.
Yeah.
Make sure your demo drawings match the existing drawings, right? In the sense of, all the dimensions are identical, all the, everything is identical, and then your proposed, make sure you scour that the walls to be retained are the same walls as the walls shown on the demo drawing, and they all add up, right? Like string dimensions that add up.
With all due respect, Madam Chair, that's always the goal.
Yeah, no, it may be the goal, but like it didn't happen on the last set.
Sometimes we miss a few things, yes.
Right, so that's a thing, so...
We're all humans, but yeah, it has been done.
So scour.
It has been done, yes.
Okay, and so since you have more time, scour again, okay?
You got it.
Because our goal is for Chase not to find a mistake on the next submission, right? That's always our goal, right? And he's, he's very meticulous in his review, so understand you have a meticulous reviewer, okay?
Not a problem.
Okay.
All right, so that covers probably most of your objections here. Proposed demolition of existing floor plan, they do reach now. I'll check them again, but yes. The ones you're playing are more understandable, I think we do. Similar comments to the bay window on the second floor, I guess that's, we're back to that again, and...
So that bay window that's got a foot longer somehow, is that no longer a foot longer? Had that bay, what happened with that bay window?
Which bay window you referred to?
So there's a bay window shown on the second, I call that a bay window, I don't know what you call it, or maybe...
On the first floor?
On the second floor, the existing wall, so that's the existing drawing.
So that's the, that's the one we were referring to, I guess.
Oh. Okay. No, you were talking about the Oriole on the first floor. I'm talking about the one on the second floor.
No, it's on the second floor, the Oriole is on the second floor.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
Oh, in your site plan, you're talking about the second floor.
No.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. So however, we had, so on the existing drawing, I'm just talking about existing drawings, the prior architect had 13 foot 10, 7 foot 10, and 17 foot 10 as the dimensions, okay?
Well, let me see the existing drawings.
So I need to...
Where she is?
This is existing wall.
No, she's talking about the previous architect.
I know, she has a...
No, I'm comparing their numbers to your numbers.
Heidi has this option, we're not...
Oh, a half inch?
This one at the center, she had it at 710, we have it at 79 and a half. That's right off of the survey.
Existing, yeah, it was...
I just got you all the survey. 79 and a half, yeah.
No, it's not about 710 and 79 and a half, rounding errors. 14 foot 8 versus 13 10, where's the dimensions? Now I don't even know where I was. Oh, maybe it's down here.
14 8.
14 8 and 7 10. Oh, here we go. It's the dimensions of the side wall in the existing building, yeah. 14 8, 7 10, good enough. 17 10 is what you have, and I have a little cut of the, of the prior architect's dimensions, and his were...
17...
She said 14.
His were 13...
Your numbers are different.
See if I have that. His were 13 10, so there's a foot difference in that total length of the building. So can, so you're getting that total length off the survey, the 14 10?
I believe so, I believe so, but I'll double-check it.
Okay, please, please. Yeah, so the survey doesn't really give you that kind of data, that's part of the problem.
Can we, do we actually measure that? Like, when we measure the actual house, the length of the house, and we subtract the way it was, I don't know.
Can you just check that again?
I will double-check it.
Because it's a foot difference that's pretty significant.
I will double-check, I promise.
Plus, I don't know if it adds up, because you know, there's no string dimension, I mean, there are strings, but no total, right? So, because normally they should add it up to the same, to the right number.
Okay, I will double-check it.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Oh, wait, here. Yeah, it's, if you look at the, now I found it. If you look at the original prior architect's submission of existing to remain on their second floor plan, it says 13 10, 7 10, and 17 10. I'm not saying the dimensions there is right, I don't have any way of knowing, but they're different.
13 9 and 7 8 she has.
Yeah, you see?
Right, so I guess that's pretty consistent with what she proposed. But that's not what we have, but okay, I'll, I'll go out there and measure the Oriole again.
Right, it's not, it's not the Oriole, I don't think. That's just the straight wall before the bump.
Straight wall to the right and left of the Oriole.
Yeah, exactly. What you're showing now in your staircase, to the left of that...
Yeah, I just want to show on the same page here.
Yeah, we're talking about this dimension.
So it's the location of this Oriole on the second floor.
Yeah, right.
That's all it is. So I'm not sure if I hit this up and hit that up, if it gives me the 30, whatever the dimension is.
That number, okay.
I can't...
But it's like the building got longer somehow, that's the, this is the existing drawing, the existing situation, right? And it's adding up, arguably, these three numbers are adding up to that. So how could yours be longer?
I'm going to double-check it.
Okay, that's, that's the question. Okay, good.
One of us is wrong.
Exactly.
Okay. I'll double-check it and confirm who is.
Okay.
Okay, and the attic level, the elevator is being counted as floor area, we'll show you that. And we did provide the floor area computations.
Okay, great, thanks.
To make it real clear.
So in here, you have a floor area diagram, something?
Yes.
Okay. In the back?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, great. All right, all right, and I think that was it. Good, okay. So lots of progress on making those little corrections, and one more time for, you know, is a charm.
Take it home. Okay.
Okay. So what do we have?
Clearly, we don't need much time.
I know.
You know that, you know that.
Submission March 4th for continued hearing March 24th.
Okay.
Thank you. But what I always like to say is, you're given this much time now, here we are, February 11th, and the submission is March 4th. Don't wait until March 3rd to do the work.
Can you just look at the submission, have it in?
Yeah, yeah, you can take this, too. All right.
And I'll leave you with the proof of survey, of course.
Welcome, thank you. And thank you to the owners for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appeals calendar, continued hearings, item number 11, calendar number 2018-198A, 85 Trenton Court, Staten Island. This is a German?
Yeah.
Todd, we're just hoping to get a German to fully address, there was the builder phase in plans, and it'll take a little longer than expected. We can be very flexible with the board's calendar. I'd like to ensure that we're set for the next one, so even eight weeks to submit, just to make sure.
Oh, okay.
Submission April 8th for a continued hearing April 28th.
That good? Enough time?
I was told by the architect that six weeks, so I'm asking, great.
Okay.
Do we have fire department?
Do we have what?
Do we get the fire department?
I don't know, but that's for fire depart, I don't know, because I didn't look at my notes on this, but we can just make sure fire department is aware, okay? Okay. You didn't see it in the folder, 2018? I'm just looking now.
We've talked.
You've talked to fire department, okay. Yeah, I don't see a particular folder from them, but that doesn't mean... Yeah, I think we need them. Okay. Okay.
Item number 12, 2019-172A, 10 Maguire Court, Staten Island.
No, no, A case. You don't need to be sworn in.
Just feel like... But they have the sign in, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik PC, I have with me, just in case, the architect and the owner. I think the owner would like to say just one statement at the end. We understand that you can only issue on condition that it was with the prior R32 zoning. Sorry, it was a quick turnaround, and it wasn't exactly what you were looking for.
Yeah, I was quite, oops, I was quite confused by the submission, because it, like, the drawings were bizarre, frankly. I mean, I was looking for a regular zoning calculate, zoning chart, you know? You cite all the sections in the zoning resolution, you say, section XXX requires this kind of a yard, or this kind of height, or this kind of whatever, and then, and then if you need a diagram to show that you're within the envelope, you include that on the zoning drawings. Instead, there was this free, pre-standing ACO or ISO, I don't remember which one, and, and I'm not even sure that it's proving anything, because we don't know what the rules are, and we don't, you know, it was just, it didn't have any dimensions on it, et cetera. So to not hold this up anymore, I was hoping that we would get this, and that way we wouldn't have to have a conditional approval, but to not hold it up anymore, we'll just have to condition where DOB has to audit the project and make sure that it complies with the prior zoning as of right before the zoning change in 2002, okay? Okay. Are there speakers on this?
She wants to.
Okay, you want to speak? You're welcome to.
Do you want to?
You're welcome, you don't have to if you don't feel like it.
Do you have to approve it, or is it approved?
No, you have to speak before it's closed, if you want to.
Yeah, you have to speak before.
Just state your name.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is my first time at this process.
Welcome.
But thank you and good morning to all of you. I would just like to thank...
I'm sorry, just state your name.
Oh, my name is Lillian DeLuca, and I would like to first thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing us, hopefully, to go through, so that we can go back and get the C of O, and also, if it's granted, if at all possible, because this has been a very long process and a hardship, if at all possible, if the resolutions can come sooner than later.
Oh.
Hopefully, I'm just, I just, I'm...
She just wants it to be done.
Just want it to be...
I get it.
Just want it to be done. Thank you.
Yes, we understand. Okay.
That was it, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. All right, then, any other issues from the board? No, so are there any other speakers on this? I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, as I've said before, that Department of Buildings audit the project and verify that the project complies with all relevant zoning regulations that were current as, just prior to the rezoning to an R3X, the, I think the zoning district was...
R32.
R32 in the, wasn't it a special district?
If it wasn't.
Yeah.
Oh, South Richmond.
South Richmond, right. South Richmond and lower density growth management.
The lower density, I believe, was written after the home was, we had discussed last time when that was written, and why the home looked the way it did, because it was written opposed.
Okay, but so, I don't want to tell DOB how to do it, but they just have to look at what the zoning regulations were at the time, with instructions from the architect, you know, the architect submits for, to follow up, and then says, these were the regulations current, okay? Then current, I mean, okay. Motion to grant on condition. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibetta?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good luck.
Zoning calendar, continued hearings, item number 13, calendar number 2017-34BZ, 311 Adams Avenue, Staten Island. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
Good morning, Todd Dale, for the applicant. We did have the opportunity to review comments made at executive session, and we also referenced it out to the property owner architects, who have a clear understanding of the questions that still remain with the application. A number of the responses are better served in a written response, but I'll speak to them briefly, and maybe at any initial clarification. We did speak to the architect last night. You know, as the board is aware, this, this is actually the third architect on this project, but we're confident we're finally moving forward. So I'll just speak to some of those points, and we can make sure we cover all of them.
Strange, the third architect draws up the same drawing as the first architect?
There was the first architect, and then there was the second architect, who actually didn't complete plans, because they didn't want to move forward with the flood review portion. So then the third architect became involved, so we work with this third architect, we're very confident there could be no more architect changes moving forward.
Okay.
That said, in response to questions, and we can jump around as needed. The current building's objection is actually in the process of being updated. Per the architect, there are two additional items that need to be added to the objection. Need to add, I think it's section 25-632, which is with respect to the size of the curb cut proposed, and 64-61, which is related to design requirements. They'll make sure that there's nothing else...
Mitigation requirement.
Yes, yeah. So, those are the two sections that, per the architect, need to be added, but they're going to confirm. But it's in the process of being updated and we'll submit it to the board and revise materials accordingly with respect to those items. So, that is, that is true. There were quick comments, just quickly, there were comments about whether any city planning review would be needed and also the special, I believe, the special coastal district. We confirmed with the architect, no city planning approvals are needed for this particular project. I also reviewed the special coastal district. This is not in the special coastal district. It's actually adjacent to it. It's maps three and four, I think. It's close, but it's not, it's not actually in the districts. It's to the northwest of them. So, no city planning approvals.
Can you provide a map just to show us where it is relative to the coastal zone? Because when I went onto ZOLA, it was indicating it was in the coastal zone. I know ZOLA is not the deal and all.
No, no, that's fair.
Often you just then need to go to the maps, right? So, please provide us with a map.
We use it too. So, I will make a note that we will provide the special coastal, the specific map, I think it might be map four, and we'll mark it on there just to confirm that it's on There's questions about the parking. You know, we can include an additional narrative, but per the project architect, it's just not feasible to provide parking at what would be the rear of the building. There's two alternatives there that could exist. You could provide, you could park perpendicularly from the street. The issue there is that maximum width behind the building is 16 feet. Per the architect, you would need 18 feet for a parking spot, so you couldn't even put them in perpendicular to the street. If you ran them parallel to the street, the issue would result is you could probably fit one parking spot, but you couldn't fit two. So, the question is, is if you did locate the parking spots there, you would be deficient one parking spot. So, the thought is, is that the current design is a better design because you're not asking for variance, you know, to provide less parking. You can still provide two parking spots in the locations that are proposed. I can, you know, with respect to that, we can expand on that narrative in, in the submission.
Yeah, so, I was looking, so the site plan says there's a 20-foot side yard, not 16 feet.
Well, it's, it's 16 feet if you measure from the road where you would access. So, from the side of the building, hang on, let me get my roads straight. I'm always forgetting which one's Adams and which one's-
Adams is the long side.
Okay. If you approach from Adams, okay, the distance from Adams to the rear lot line is 16 feet.
Adams to the rear lot line, oh, I-
Adams to the rear, yes. So, the 20-foot side yard is actually because it's the corner lot. It's 20 feet, I think, from what would be the rear of the building to the building that's to the south on Adams. And essential, if you come in perpendicularly from Adams, the depth right there is 16 feet as shown on the site plan. So, parking spots would, there wouldn't be enough depth for the parking spots to come in perpendicularly.
Because there is not 18 feet.
Correct. And if you did it parallel to Adams, they believe that they could create a curb cut where you could maneuver in and then turn your car to the right as you pulled into the lot or turn your car to the left, depending which way it is. But the problem is that you wouldn't be able to get two spots because of maneuverability issues. You could only get one spot. So, the current design allows for the extra parking spot and parking is always, you know-
But, so the entire, let me see, now I need to look at this section just a sec. This building is being lifted, right? So, it's being lifted, grade is it nine feet or something? Because this doesn't match the survey, actually. Grade might be a little lower than nine. Or something's written in another datum than NAVD 88. But you're lifting the building up eight, almost eight feet to the underside of the structure of the first floor. Next time, please bring the architect so we don't have to have you be the designer on this. Why can't you use, which we see in so many of these flood district projects, why can't you drive directly into a little parking space right underneath the building?
I mean, as opposed to, they are driving into one that's partially beneath right now.
Yeah, but from Adams, you still don't, because it's, this issue is, because the site gets a little wider as you go forward towards Haven.
Correct.
So, the site, I don't know what it is, there's no dimension. The site gets to be 18 feet at its widest point?
Correct.
So, question is, would you be able to do a little parking pad underneath the building? I mean, you already have a parking pad underneath that front part of the building. What if you drove in, and again, I know about the curb cuts may not be in ideal locations, but they're not in ideal locations now. They're well within 50 feet of the corner, right? So, and the reason I'm bringing this up is that you're parking fully in the front yard and the, my understanding without proving is that the typical neighborhood doesn't have a car with its tail right up against the property line. That's not the standard in the neighborhood, right? And so, plus, there's therefore no green space according to the, and no mitigation. So, it's like, it's undoing all the things that you're supposed to be doing here. And it seems to me, you're already driving underneath the house. Why don't you just drive underneath the house from the other side?
I will pass on it.
Without a garage, like none of these have, your current version doesn't have a garage door either, right?
I, I, we have this tape.
Yeah.
My notes. We will speak to them about it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think we could agree that perpendicular from Adams won't work, but if we did a loop in from Adams to the back and then underneath the building to explore the possibility that, I will, I will speak to that, you know?
Okay.
Question, so noted. Go back to some of the other issues that came up. Parking, we talked about the objection, the city planning, and special district. We'll expand on the lot study. I realize that, I mean, we did include the study. There was a brief description in there. We'll expand on that. We'll also include it in the statement. But just briefly, the fact is, is that of the other vacant corner lots, we would be able to distinguish this lot because those other lots are either city-owned property and are currently paved and improved for use as part of the street, or the buildable area is entirely within the bed of the street and would require the general city law 35 relief and would also likely create like a jog in existing paved street, or there's one lot that's actually in common ownership with the adjacent lot, and they actually recently completed a lot merger in order to create a 26-foot lot so they could build. So, that option is in there. But the information's there. We will definitely expand on that and make it clear.
I mean, it's not like we don't see what's unique about the site, but your papers don't argue it.
Understood, understood. Lots of expanded, we will definitely do that. And then, you know, one of the big questions that came up is with respect to the height of the building. You know, just to confirm, the current total height of the building that we're proposing, I know there was some questions about the elevation. Let me speak briefly to that. Again, we'll include this in the statement. The architect says that the measurement comes from the FRCE, which is the flood-resistant construction elevation, and that is two feet above the base flood elevation?
No, 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 no. Look at section 23-631, which says that you measure perimeter wall height from base flood, not from freeboard, which is the two feet over.
And to that point, the architect says that that's not the applicable section. The applicable section is 64-131 because of the flood compliance. I, I, we'll, we'll cover that, okay?
Okay.
We'll, we'll note that accordingly in the plans and make it clear that it's 6431 for, you know, what it's based on.
6431 applies instead.
Okay.
That's confusing. How could they be in opposition to each other? It specifically is talking about buildings in flood zones in 23631. Don't you love that? One of, okay.
There are many sections of the zoning resolution I wish I could draft.
Yes.
Just say that, okay? In the end, okay, as it stands right now, okay, with the current architect reviewing, they said, and I believe this has echoed in the papers, if the perimeter wall height is 20 feet 8 inches, that's proposed, whereas 21 feet is permitted, and that the total height of the building is 30 feet 9 inches, whereas 35 feet is permitted.
Measured from wherever that base plane is, right?
Exactly. So, currently, the 30 feet 9 inches actually represents a two-foot, three-foot reduction from the previous design, and it's also four feet 3 inches less than the maximum that's allowed. So, there really was an effort made to try and reduce this building. We understand what the board's questions are with respect to the height of this building.
That's good.
The issue that we're running into here, okay, and we are committed to reexamining this, the issue that we run into here is that, you know, we already are over four feet below what is permitted and no relief was sought with respect to the height. That noted, we understand trying to max in, matching the character of the existing buildings. The problem is, is that some of these buildings aren't designed with the current flood requirements. So, they're shorter than they might actually be. So, in order to specifically match some of those buildings, we end up, you know, sacrificing or almost losing a floor. So, it's really a balance of trying to be respectful of the neighbors, but also understanding the current constraints that this building is under. So, I just wanted to say, we understand the concerns. We already did one reduction. We will try and review it again, but we're not sure if it's going to be possible to reach a building height that is exactly matching the adjacent buildings.
No, 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 it's, it actually, you know, we do make accommodations for the fact that now you're in a flood plain and all your neighbors aren't, right?
Right.
And then trying just not to have something that's so outrageous, standing tower and above all the others. The difference here is that the waivers requested don't include floor area, or not, if they do, no, they don't include floor area.
No, shouldn't, ground under the floor area.
And, and so, the roof is very high. It's eight feet to the rafters, so that would count as floor area because there's a four-foot 11 collar stay that's placed. And we always say, no, you don't get to do the structural headroom under the collar stays, right? So, there's no real justification for that additional height because it's not occupiable and the application is not for a floor area waiver, not that I'm encouraging it because I'm not sure that you have the findings for a floor area waiver.
We actually wouldn't be anywhere near the floor area, as I understand, because our lot area actually includes that significant portion that's in the street.
Okay.
So, our lot area is 3,000 square feet, and what we're proposing, I believe, is 1138. So, we're like .35.
Well, so maybe a way to make this more, you know, what I'm always concerned of are these super-high attics.
Sure.
And then, in the middle of the night, we actually see sometimes they have to come back here for some reason, right? And we see that the attic was illegally converted to occupiable space. So, trying not to facilitate that. So, maybe the best way to do it is if you have floor area left over, you know, call the rose the rose, show an eight-foot height where you can stand as floor area, and then you'll have a project where they can use, you know, with a drop ladder if they don't want to add the staircase going all the way up or something like that, right? That, I mean, for me, that's the main reason that I think it's too high. It's like this French chateau on the top, which is actually nice, but it's still-
I understand what you're saying. And in a sense, you're saying it's, it's this strange middle ground between a periodic unusable floor area.
Correct.
And this seems to be in that.
Right. And, you know, and I don't want to encourage any kind of improper conversion, especially if you don't have to.
Understood. I will go back and I'll bring it.
Okay.
I just, you know, to note, they did make an effort to reduce it, you know, two feet and, you know, change the angle of the roof.
But in that French chateau level, you could actually have, because it's like that, you could actually have varied roof lines.
Okay.
You know, and then you would accomplish, some you stand in and some you can't.
I think that's very reasonable.
It's actually a very nice project.
We will, we will explore that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? So, we talked about the roof. We talked about all the architect changes, parking, the objection, special district, the lot study. I know those were the key questions. I don't know if I'm missing any.
The only one really had to do with how they are, I think it's mostly the as-of-right FAR that was confusing me. I can't, I couldn't tell whether they were trying to take advantage of it for this application. So, it's saying that the FAR is allowed to exceed .5, but that only works underneath the sloping roof. So, there you go again. That would be using the attic, then you get that bump up. But the problem is, this is a very steep roof, so you don't get the advantage of that bonus from a steep roof because this roof is 12 to 14 and the allowable is 7 to 12 if you want to get that. And it doesn't say at least, as far as I remember, it doesn't say at least 7 and 12. It says 7 to 12.
I understand exactly what you're talking about and-
And there's also, now, the idea that you're putting, so, you're not putting, sorry, that you're not putting the parking in a side lot ribbon, so you don't get that 300-square-foot allowance unless it's in the side lot ribbon. That would have been one advantage to have, for instance, one parking space in the side lot ribbon and another one in the, no, it can't be a space, has to be a garage. Doesn't help you. Okay.
Okay, I understand. I also agree, like, the floor plans, I understand why the architects include all the gross area for calculating DOB fees, but it can be a little confusing, all the floor area.
They could just add one more.
We'll try and narrow down a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, just add zoning to their chart. That's fine.
Okay. Understood.
Okay.
I think those are all-
Yes, I think that's it.
-clear directives, and, you know, we can respond to all of them.
Okay. Okay, I think, you know, so that the next time might be the last time, please, please bring the architect so that we can have a conversation.
I will.
Try.
I will always ask. How's that?
Okay, okay. All right. So, are there any speakers on this? Okay.
You know, as far as timing, as far as the things our office has to do, that's very quick. I think the only thing that might take a little bit of time is really to reexamine this roof issue.
Yes.
I'd like to provide enough time to the architects. I'd say we could be flexible with timing. I think, you know, at least four weeks to submit, but we could be a little bit more flexible depending on.
Okay. Options are being submitted, like, seven, that's only maybe eighteen, but then full up, yeah, until the 20th. Wait, so March 18th is new month, and is five weeks enough?
I think it should be. I mean, really, I mean, the most substantive issue raised was this roof issue, and that's really, I would hope they could get that in five weeks. I think the peripheral items, you know, I would be worried about the objection if it wasn't already in process, but I think that'll be done.
Oh, right, I forgot.
That'll be done for sure. Yeah, that, so, so we're good on that. So, I think five weeks should be fine, but again-
And the objection could be provided at the hearing.
Yeah, that's, then you'd have another. All right. So, you know, you could actually make a note that this one, maybe the submission date could be one week later if it's a problem, you know, so, I, because I don't want to, I don't want to have to adjourn it just because you're on.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm going to say 99% I think that the plans will be an issue, and if there's any issues with the objections, we'll just note it in the cover letter and say it's forthcoming.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Submission, March 18th for continued hearing, April 7th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Take a ten-minute break? It's 12:05, ten-minute break. Okay. Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing, February 11th, 2020. We continue the zoning calendar, continued hearing items.
Item 14, 2018-56BZ, 83 Coal Ridge Street in Brooklyn. This was withdrawn?
Right. There's no one who's this. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Item number 15, 2019-22BZ, 24-4795th Street in Queens. I guess we're, right? Yeah. Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
My name's Frank Noriega. I'm here from Sheldon Love Bell on behalf of the applicant. We listened to the board's comments yesterday and we have a few responses to them. There was a comment that, at least some clarification, that there was a 10-foot yard requirement, and it was correct that it is a 10-foot front yard requirement. The word "front" has been added to the statement of facts. We can submit that shortly. Similarly, there was a truncation of the square footage listed as 1225 in certain places. The text has been uniformly corrected to say 1225.72 to match the BSA zoning sheet as well as the, the plans.
Okay, so you check everywhere where there's a mention of the proposed, and it's the same number every time?
Correct.
Okay. calculation sheet, drawings, statement of facts?
Correct.
Any miscellaneous places where it might say that?
Correct. There was a question about the drainage. There was a small blurb added to the statement of facts. It wasn't pointed out in the letter, but there is adequate drainage. If you look at the, both the site plan and the first floor plan, all of the downspouts for the, the gutters for the roof are redirected towards the drywell at the back. And similarly, there is a paved side yard, which, the way it slopes, slopes the front of the lot, which everything is caught by a trench drain, which also is funneled back to the lot, the drywell in the back of the lot. So, there's more than adequate drainage on this site, and the statement of facts have been amended to state that as well.
So, yeah, there's a drywell in the rear yard.
And the dash lines show that.
There's grass, as is required, in the front yard and a trench drain that is for the roof, I guess.
So, the, the side yard, I believe, is paved and sloped towards the front of the lot. So, my understanding is it catches the, everything on the side yard and sends it back to the drywell.
Just curious, why, unfortunately, you don't have the architect here. I wish the architects would come. They're the ones who design these projects, right? But I mean, if drainage is a problem, those should be permeable pavers. Why is it just a concrete walkway? You don't drive on it. There's no parking in here, right?
Correct. I, I think they, they put the bare minimum as far as, or at least the required amount for planting that's allowed.
No, they put the minimum amount of planting in the front yard, but they always look at it as the minimum amount, right? But the sidewalk, the side should have permeable pavers. I don't see why not. Why not? Meg, please direct them to put permeable, permeable pavers. Why not? Especially where drainage has been stated as a problem and you have a drywell. No?
I, I could certainly ask, I mean, it certainly is, it's the meaning between a grant or not. Certainly, that's something we can look at.
No, it's, so this is why I don't like the lawyers representing the architects. The architects, it's just a simple thing to do, right? And it's the way things should be designed these days. This is, we're supposed to be into sustainability, but nobody's designing anything sustainably unless they're told to. That's not really right, so. And since we know that drainage is a, is a particular issue here, which was mentioned, And since we know that drainage is a, is a particular issue here, which was mentioned, why not really address the drainage?
And, and again, I, I think I mentioned this at the last hearing, and I know it says in the prior grant, actually, the, yes, in the prior grant, that drainage was an issue, but I, I want to restate my understanding that the drainage issue had to do with the grading of the site as it is currently, and that there was opposition letters that were sent in specifically to this, and that the fact that the building is being built is going to address that, but also, we are providing the, the roof drains sent to the drywell as well as the trench drain, which will send to the drywell. But we did not look at the permeable pavers as also a factor for mitigating the runoff.
We.
We, we, this is something that we, we did not look at.
When you say "we," it's the architect who designs a project, right? So not "we," architect, right?
Correct.
Please have the architect look at adding permeable pavers.
And then there was a comment about the uniqueness of the floor area. Now, the floor area isn't the unique condition of the site, it is a small, narrow site, and we listed various properties of the area with the similar condition. All of these properties, which are roughly the same size, have FARs in excess of, the smallest lot has a .7 FAR. We're not even asking for a .7 FAR, we're asking for a .66. And these are buildings, as far as square footage, that exceed 1,296 is the smallest building. We're going.
What's the hardship that presents the need for a floor area?
So, in the statement of facts, we mentioned that if we were to comply with the, the base floor area, I believe it equates to floor plates of, like, I forget the exact figure. So the floor area, we're talking about a building that's 923 feet total in floor area. So we're talking 460-foot, square foot floor place in order to make these, this two-story house on a similar lot coverage, or excuse me, with equal lot, equal floor place to minimize the lot coverage. So we're looking at it not a practical building. Not to mention, again, this is, this, this building, or a similar building, which has actually been reduced in size, there was a previous grant for a .6 FAR building on this exact same site. The only reason that it wasn't built is the zoning change between the time that grant happened and today, or before you, now, and they did not vest their rights in that application. And the board, at that time, found that the, the uniqueness of this site did warrant a .68 FAR building, and to address some of the issues having to do with the slope of the roof, and some of the questions about the side yards, it actually got slightly smaller than what was originally granted.
Okay, you're looking at what was granted.
Correct.
You, you need to make a better argument for, like, you didn't submit anything to show why a complying house wouldn't be viable.
Well, we did submit as of right plans.
No, no, no. For the lesser variance issue, right? You didn't show why a .5 FAR, and if you're entitled to any bonuses, I don't know. Yeah, if you're entitled to any bonuses, you didn't explain why a house that meets the floor area requirements not viable in a drawing.
In a drawing, I'm sorry?
Yes, in a drawing.
So we showed this, the map, the area map, showing the, the small lots, and similarly, as proposed, this would be the smallest building in the area. We're not asking for anything beyond what's actually in scale and within the character of the neighborhood. This is, this is a very small building. The, the increase of .16 FAR is really only to just create a livable space.
Increase of .16. Right, but that's the thing, I don't, I don't find the backup for this statement in your materials. That's what I'm, I'm trying to, let's see, where? Where's the map? 400-foot study map. This map wasn't about floor area, right? This map that you submitted was?
Correct, and there's a table in the actual statement of facts that corresponds with that map?
Okay, but, wait, so, the map that you just submitted on January 23rd has lots that are less than 20 feet wide, and other lots that are attached in semi-detached buildings, right? But then, and so where's the discussion about the floor area? I mean, a lot of these lots, they're 20 feet, 18 feet, 19 feet, et cetera, right?
And if you look at page nine of the statement of facts, it lists all of these lots, but yes, you're right, between, I believe the smallest is 18, and then some are just under 20 feet and 19.2.
Sorry, where is the chart that you're referring?
Page nine of the statement of facts.
Okay, so page nine of the statement of facts.
Correct.
It has, if it has, I mean.
Correct, and all of these buildings have a FAR of at least .7. We're not even asking for an FAR of .7, we're asking for an FAR of .66. And the smallest building in the area, the next largest building would be 1,296 square feet.
Where, where do you have, oh, 1,296 square feet, oh, I see, those two that are.
So, we, we listed both because, I mean, if the, the size of the lot changes, obviously, if it's smaller, the FAR seems a little bit inflated, whereas if it's a bigger lot, but all of these are relatively small lots, and we're talking about, again, an increase of 300 square feet or so to create a livable space.
And your proposal is how many square, 1,200 something?
1,225.7.
1,225, right.
Much smaller than anything around us.
Okay.
So, and then, the only.
So, you know what I think is the problem is, because this is, it's, again, it's not to say that we don't recognize that the site's narrower, narrower, narrow. It's that you don't tie it together in your statement. You need to be more affirmative about your writing. You need to be able to say, look, there are this many lots, and out of those, this is a vacant lot, right?
Correct, it's the only vacant lot in that area.
So, but there's nothing in your statement that says, out of all those 20-foot vacant lots, this is, out of all those 20-foot wide lots and under, this is the only vacant one. So, they're in a different situation, right? That makes you unique relative to those lots, right?
Correct, yes.
So, but you never say that in your materials. You never say, you know, there are this many 20-foot wide lots, so actually quite a lot of lots, and, but those are better situated than we are because, because they have a building on them already. And those buildings are ranging in size between 1,200 and whatever the other number of square feet, right? And here we are, look at what we can build as of right, nothing. Or even with a lesser variance, with that floor area, for example, look at what we could build with a lesser variance, something that's 2/3 the size or whatever of all of those other guys, right? And, and so we can't build anything absent of variance. You need to, you need to hear what I'm saying, and your statement of facts need to reflect those things, as opposed to coming up here and trying to make the argument after the fact, right? Your statement of fact needs to understand what it is you're trying to prove, and then, and make that statement, okay? Understood?
Understood, but I, I just respectfully disagree that I believe that this does indeed show that all of these lots are, because they are built, we cannot demonstrate because it's been vacant for so long that we can create some sort of building that complies with the exceptions to build a building that allow, on these small zoning lots. But when we show what the, the as-of-right drawings are, it just, it doesn't allow for a livable building, and we've laid out what, as far as the floor areas and what is common for the neighborhood, that this is, what would be permitted as of right is much too small for a livable space.
Okay.
I think what, I think what the chair's just saying is that while you do, I think we all agree that there is an argument here, it's just that it's not clearly listed as to uniqueness in the papers. And if you can please tie that together, so, because we believe that you do have sufficient, that your studies do show, they don't, you don't really state it out.
Yeah.
Or at least clearly enough that, that, that it was gleaned in your statement of facts.
So this is what I'm getting at. I'm not saying you can't stand up there and make the argument up there.
Absolutely.
I'm saying you don't write it in your papers, and it's not the first case where I've seen you not write it in the papers, so I'm trying to get you to think, I'm writing it in the paper, what's the argument I want to be giving that makes this a unique physical condition unlike all of the other lots that are 20 feet? The argument that you write is, there's all of these lots that are 20 feet, and I'm like those lots, and I don't, and I couldn't build a building that's as wide. No, the issue is you're vacant, because otherwise you're making an argument for an occupied lot, which is a different thing, and it's not occupied, right? It's not a built lot.
Well, I think that it changes what the argument is, but the, the fact that it's vacant isn't the uniqueness.
Yes, it is.
Well.
That's the point, is you're missing.
Maybe perhaps.
That's the point that you're missing, and that I need you to understand. If there were 20 vacant lots here, no question, you would not be unique if there were 20, 20-foot wide vacant lots, or whatever your lot is, right? You would not be unique, and I doubt that you would have a variance argument, what about all those other guys, right?
And now, your hardship argument would be that you can't, what you build is not livable space.
Right. So, no, 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 if it was a 20-foot lot, you would be saying, I'm a unique physical condition, and then we'd say, well, really? There's 20 other vacant lots, what's so unique about you? There's 20 other ones, right? In this situation, you're the only vacant lot out of a pile of 20-foot and under built lots. So what about you and the built lots is similar? Nothing except for the dimensions of your lot.
I wouldn't argue against that at this point.
Yeah, no, don't argue against it, but I'm trying to get you to listen to what the argument should have been in your papers, okay? Because you didn't make the argument in the papers, because you don't seem to be convinced that being the only unbuilt lot in your study area makes you unique, which is standard? It's a standard argument for a variance.
I will definitely amend the statement of facts to add, address that issue.
Okay.
Very certainly.
And also provide the lesser variance scenario, right?
Yes, and so the lesser variance is, and it doesn't have to be a very elaborate drawing, just a little sketch that shows, it could be a sketch. That's why I want the architect here, the architect knows the difference between a sketch and a real drawing, right? A sketch is a little hand thing on, on a piece of paper that just says, here's the size of my building if we're complying amount of floor area, and like, where do I put the bathroom, right?
We can do that.
Okay.
And I will definitely try to get the architect to be here the next time. There's one other thing I just want to address.
Ownership.
Was the chain link fence.
Yes.
There was, there was a comment that the chain link fence is outside the property, which we agree it is outside the property. Whether or not it's existing has to do with building code issues, whether or not there's an encroachment of the public right of way. We would like to leave it in the plans and let DOB address it, if we need it.
It's not, it's not allowed. So if you want to go to DOB and request something, it can't be on our drawings because DOB looks at it and says, oh, BSA granted some bizarre revocable consent, we don't have the authority to do that. You can't have clearly illegal construction on projects that we approve.
Well, I would say it's not clearly illegal.
Well, then show us that it's a grandfathered condition that dates back and the DOB signed off on it a long time ago. I, I don't know really why it needs to be on our drawings. If it's legal, your architect can go and convince DOB that it should stay there, but we can unless, short of a revocable consent, or some kind of, I'm not sure what the city did back in the day. You know, there were stoops that went onto the sidewalk, all of that stuff, but you could prove that it existed in 1880, you know?
Yeah, yeah, there are certain times where you can show it's existing, but I just want a clarification. Are you okay with us not showing it just altogether, but not saying that it's being removed, but just now show it, and you're not granting it?
We're not granting it, so take it off the drawings.
We can do that. We will happily take it off the drawings. And we can, we can fight with DOB whether or not it's actually appropriate or not later.
Right.
But we can, we, so we, I guess we'll need some time to address the uniqueness argument that was brought up, but I believe we can do that rather quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So, the sooner the better.
Also, you need to show on the proposed where the required yard regulations are. You have to actually show what's being waived on the proposed.
Sorry, on that, I didn't touch on this, you're talking about the side yard requirements, is that correct?
All, all the requirements, like, for, to the extent that, I need to look at the drawing.
So, there is an additional waiver for 23461 having to do with side yards. Because this is also a use waiver, we are asking for a semi-detached home. There actually aren't any side yard requirements for a semi-detached home in an R3X district, so there really isn't a requirement that you can actually point to and say, this is what your yards do.
Wait a minute, no.
That apply. 23461 does apply to detached homes, which in theory would be the only type of residential building that would be permitted as of right. And we do mention that, that generally would have to provide two yards that are 10 feet wide in total. And in, in our response, we basically said, well, we're doing a semi-detached home, which is, we're requesting a waiver for, for a use waiver, and we were providing essentially half of that, because we're going to abut the building next to us, we're saying one five-foot yard. But that's not actually in the zoning text. We note, even on the BSA, the zoning analysis form in the notes sections, that the 23461 doesn't actually apply to semi-detached homes in a R3X district.
But you have an objection.
Correct.
So you're going to sit there at the Department of Buildings and say, we didn't get that waiver because it doesn't apply?
Well, so, it, it, we're asking for a use waiver, and in the case of a use waiver?
I, I heard you about the use waiver. I'm saying, you have an objection to, from the Department of Buildings that says, proposed building does not comply with side yard requirements, 23461. You're telling me that you're going to go to the Department of Buildings having not received a waiver from us for the side yard, and you're going to argue with them that it's not, that that objection that they gave you is incorrect, and you shouldn't, they shouldn't have given it, and you actually want to spend the brain cells to do that?
So, I wouldn't say that we're going to argue with them over that, if, if you be, like I said, there's no actual requirement that would apply to this use. We have mentioned in the statement of facts, this is, we are applying, as, just as an example, the only side yard requirements that would apply in this, in this district, which applies to any sort of detached home, whether it be a one-family or two-family detached home, which is the 23461A section, which is why we got the waiver, or we requested the, the objection to it.
I think, I think you should, like, just have cost benefit analysis.
Yeah.
As to whether or not it might make more sense for you to get the waiver, rather than try to prove yourself right.
We're not, yeah, we, we don't want to fight with the DOB, and we certainly don't want to fight with the, the board, and we can certainly, including, we have to make those changes anyway.
So show on the drawings what 23461 requires. You know, the board is making a decision about whether or not, you know, the size of your proposed project, based on what the standard is for side yards in the district, right? So it's not done in a vacuum, right? So part of it is, if we know that the side yard requirements, for example, are five feet, then the four-foot-six side yard seems reasonable to us, right? So if nothing else, it's like a guide for what standard in the district, okay? But in addition to which, you have an objection, I wouldn't mess with satisfying the objection.
Fair enough. We can address that in the statements of facts as well.
Okay. And, and on the drawings.
Well, I believe the drawings and the, the.
No.
The zoning analysis both do reference the 23461.
The, the drawings itself don't, that's why I asked. The drawings of the proposed project do not reference any of the regulations. It says proposed front yard, it doesn't, it doesn't say what the regulations are, so it doesn't say that it, yeah, it doesn't, there's nothing on here that says.
The, it is listed, it's on A100.
Oh.
They reproduced the zoning analysis for the, the board zoning analysis, and they referenced 23461A. And again, I don't know, the, the note cut, is cut off from the, the BSA analysis, the full form, but it does note that the semi-detached homes are not actually permitted as of right in an R3X. And I notice it says two five-foot yards, and we're providing zero and five.
Okay, oh, okay. Okay.
So, I can certainly just make sure that we are addressing it, to get, address the objection directly and head on and say that, yes, we're requesting a waiver to that. I'm not going to argue and say that we don't, just to make it easier.
Okay. Okay. Chairman, have my note about proof of ownership, was there? Yeah.
I think we, I think they said there was no common ownership.
Correct, and we, we did title search and submitted that as well.
Okay. Proof of ownership.
There was a question.
They, they provided the proof of ownership, that's what I said, it was provided. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, yeah, I think really this is just to clean things up so that your argument is clear and direct.
I'm going to ask him to, is the concrete pad, can we have a view of it?
Yeah, they don't have, they don't have a, there's no parking pad here, there's no parking on the site, so.
Oh, that is correct. There is no parking, so that is one of the waivers.
So is it one of the waivers?
I believe it's just the walkway to the entrance, and then a walkway to the side yard.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Everything else is grass.
No.
More permeable pavers.
For that?
More permeable.
Well, actually, I believe we committed to the board that we were going to leave it as much planting as possible.
Much plant, but I would like to see permeable pavers on the concrete sidewalk way, unless the architect has a very good reason why.
I think we have, we have part in the side yard that's, the hatch sounds like it's a permeable pattern.
Don't know. It's just paved area.
I can verify.
This is regular pavement.
I, I can't tell you, but I can, I can definitely clarify that the, the paved area in the backyard, if it's. is that what you're referring to, that it is permeable pavers? I can, I will confirm with the architect.
Okay, so just find out why not. I mean, the direction is permeable pavers in the side yard unless there's a technical reason why not.
Well, is, my understanding is the side yard will be all drained through the trench drain, although the water will be captured.
The direction is permeable pavers in the side yard unless there's a technical reason why not. That's why I like the architect here.
Yeah, unless, unless they have concerns regarding like attracting water to pond right behind the basement wall.
Yes.
That would be like a good reason for them to not to go with permeable pavers.
Okay, but let's, let's see if that's actually it or it's just because they don't have the, because otherwise you wouldn't put a permeable pavers near the building either. So that's not permeable pavers in that case, right?
Usually, like around the building, usually people either put like grass to make sure that the water infiltrates.
Right.
And they put like a drainage material right behind the retaining wall and put a drain at the bottom, at the footing level, so any water can like be, get into that pipe and get drained to disposal. But permeable pavers, I, I'm not sure.
Okay, let's leave that to the architect, that's really their, is their domain, okay?
Just to clarify, there's the paved area in the back, the side yard, are we also talking about the front yard? Or is the concrete side for the walkways?
The side, the front yard is.
It's very limited.
Is very limited, that part I kind of get.
Okay. I will clarify the other two areas.
Okay, all right, so it could be for soon if we have a little spot for soon.
Are there, do we use speakers?
Oh, are there any speakers on this? Okay.
Okay.
We're going to do this tight so you can respond quickly.
Appreciate that.
Submission date, March 4th for a continued hearing, March 17th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 16, calendar number 201939, 2311 East Fourth Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Good afternoon, Lyra Albin, Rule Office of Lyra Albin. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments with respect to the zoning analysis on the drawings. You are correct, it is in the special Ocean Parkway district, we'll be happy to add it. You are also correct that it does not impact the zoning of the site at all because we are not along Ocean Parkway and we are not a community facility and we are not in the sub-district. But we'll be happy to add that note. With respect to the shoring drawings, I heard you request that we add those into the regular set. My question for you is those drawings were actually provided by an engineer, not by the architect. So how would you like us to do that? Dermond Engineering created those shoring plans.
Signed and sealed.
But together in the same set, even though some are from the architect, some are from the engineer, you're okay with that?
I don't care, there's like different specialties.
As long as that's okay with you, that's okay with us, we just wanted to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We've done it before. As long as it's fine with the board, it's fine with us. Not a problem. With respect to the lot coverage, we've been speaking last night, we will reduce it further. Last time we were told to bring it closer to 48, we thought we had brought it close enough. We can certainly bring down a little bit more unless your board can understand.
I guess I shouldn't ever say the word closer because that gets interpreted as not close. So 50% isn't really close to, it's not 49, it's like 49.5, which you round to 50, didn't they teach, you know?
Well, if we rounded.
So.
That is a clean number, 49.5.
So 48, so from now on, my instruction will just be make it 48 or make it 25 or whatever. So we don't get that creep, right?
Understood, we will be lowering it to your request. But we thought we had done what was asked and we will certainly make that change. And by the way, with respect to the stairs, that will be amended as well, of course. Thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, in terms of falling up the stairs when you come in the front door, yeah.
That will be shifted just slightly.
The concept of falling up the stairs is like a running joke among architects. Oh, it was such a nice house, you fell right up the stairs.
You know, we're, the, they do not want to move the door, they're happy with where it is, but they will modify it just slightly to make that work, of course. Tripping hazard is not the plan.
Right, okay. Anything else?
I believe, I believe I hit everything. I didn't, please tell me.
Attic plan?
The attic plan.
Attic plan, what did I say about attic? Carrot lot coverage?
Does not match the floor area diagram.
Yeah, right, attic floor plan doesn't match the floor area diagram.
We'll double check that again.
Okay. All right.
Reducing the fight.
So I just, given today that we have the architect present, I just want to reiterate, this was a very good set of drawings. From now on, going forward, nothing that isn't as good as this set of drawings ever comes here, okay? So this was an extremely good set, it needs to be your minimum standard, okay? And I say it because it's the minimum standard of a lot, most of the other architects, so now it needs to be yours, okay? Thank you. All right, I think that was it, so. It's all right, so there's just a small, this is small changes, these are small changes.
Okay.
Oh, are there speakers on this?
No.
Okay, and that big red thing is what? It's okay, yeah.
Okay.
What, what date are we working on?
Submission, March 4th for a continued hearing, March 17th.
I cannot do March 17th unfortunately, as much as I would like to, I am out of town.
March 24th.
I can make that work.
So submission, March 4th, continued hearing, March 24th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Item number 17, calendar number 201948BZ, this is 3145 41st Street, Queens.
Can you show my hands?
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Good afternoon, Frank Noriega from Sheldon Bell on behalf of the applicant. And I actually have the applicant here with me as well as the architect on this project. And the applicant is actually asked to just.
Sure, sure, please.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure, sure. My name is Michael Wong and I'm the owner of the property. Good afternoon, Chair Perlmutter and Commissioners. My wife and I own the property in Astoria. And, you know, the, the house is the result of a really long journey. We live in the same co-op now in Astoria that we moved in 11 years ago after we got married. We're raising our two daughters, two young daughters, as well as my 15-year-old cousin who I'm the guardian of. And my young daughter got into a dual-language school in Elmhurst. Even as of today, that's the only dual-language Chinese program just known in Astoria. And every day we take a lift, we take on a train, 15-minute ride on the train and we walk to get to the school. So as a result of trying to simplify our commute and a growing family, we started to look for a house. I, I promise, this is short. We, so we bid on and we lost on a couple of properties and we finally found this one. We saw that even though it's got 21 feet of yardage, I mean, a frontage, it's narrower than a lot of the 24, 25-foot wide properties in Astoria. But we said, you know, there's a current property there, it's totally in the back, a backyard, which is non-conforming. We can move it up, we can build a great place here, it could be really good. You know, as we read it, the zoning resolution never affirmatively even requires a side yard for an attached house, which is what this would be. And when a DOB interpreted 2349 to require one, I had an existential crisis. I thought my life was going to end for a few weeks. We racked our brain, we tried to think, can we do an L-shaped addition? Can we do this, can we do that? And nothing in our view yielded a viable house. So our only way forward, we felt, was to come before you and ask for a variance for our very unique burden. We saw the house has 21 feet frontage. The current house, the old one that's standing there now, as well as 13 houses to our north, 14 buildings to our south are attached buildings. 27 buildings across the street on our block are attached with two pairs of semi-detached houses. And in a thousand-foot radius, which I think Frank and our architect George is going to talk about, no other houses under 24 feet with our circumstances have side yards. Under the current zoning resolution, we're required to provide two parking spots, which we're able to do now with our current plan, using some indoor, valuable indoor space. So to sum up, we've worked really hard to try to find a solution. And we sincerely believe that using the full width of our property is, is like the only way forward. We're totally doing this out of pocket, it's just our family, we borrowed as much as we can to try to make it work. And every week that we're not able to proceed, it strains our finances. So we sincerely think and hope that we're able to answer all your questions. And if we're fortunate enough to address all your concerns, we really have, hope that you'll give us an approval today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon again. So we listened to the board's comments and I first going to apologize and start by saying that I agree that I think a lot of these questions that the, the board had would have been better addressed if I'd pointed out exactly where these were in the statement of facts in the cover letter. Because I believe most of these things were taken care of. And actually, George, you might come up here really quick, I just have, I want to knock out some of the, the simpler concerns. The 100-square-foot exemption, we believe, I'm just going to have George talk about it just for a moment. We believe that this really is, let me see, I do have, right there. But this is applicable to this and I'll just let him touch on that.
Please state your name for the record.
George Fontan, architect. I'm just pulling the code citation, pardon me. Up to 100 square feet required space in individual garages in attached buildings. So we, this deduction.
You have an individual garage in an attached building?
Yes, we have parking space for one, for one car in an attached building, in a townhouse.
Okay, I don't think we had any.
Because this, somebody questioned whether or not that was applicable, but that's not part of the variance anyway, but that's.
No.
As of right.
I don't think that we raised that in yesterday's review session.
I think it was mentioned.
It, it was mentioned and I think the, the clarification.
No, I think it was mentioned that you responded to the question, that's all, not that it was still an open question.
All right, if that's the case, then we will not continue to address it. So another big question that the, that was raised a couple of times was the context. And I did mention this in the statement of facts, but I used the photographic streetscape as an example and saying that we're between a 39-foot building versus a 31-foot building. However, the architect was.
No, wait a minute, you're jumping ahead of yourself. Let's stay at the A finding. The A finding is you need to be unique, right? And the uniqueness was about, we asked you to produce maps, which you did, that establish that, of all of the 21-foot and under lots in the area, none of them have side yards. And you say you established that, but you didn't because unless, something wrong with the maps that we got? You, you gave us building width maps, for example, and there's one that has the buildings in blue. So it says, the, the legend says, buildings with frontages less than 21 feet with side yards within the thousand-foot study area, tons of blue. And then there's another one, another map, that says, buildings with frontages less than 20-foot, 21 feet wide with no side yards, some blue, or you know, maybe an equal amount of blue, so like 50/50. And then there's another map.
So, yeah, understood and I, this should be clarified slightly. I don't actually, I mean, the maps are confusing, but they do show two completely separate things. There was a set that talks about the lot width and there, there's two maps, both a 400-foot radius and a thousand-foot radius. And in those maps, it is true that there, within the thousand-foot radius, there are no buildings that provide side yards on lots that are 24 feet or narrow.
21 feet is, is what the map is.
Yeah, so there's two sets of maps, there's, there's two sets of maps. One has to do with lot size and one has to do with building size.
Okay.
So, so yeah, there's one, there's one set of maps and that was the original one that was, we discussed at the last hearing, which has to do with the, the lot size. And for lots that are similarly narrow as ours, we actually went a little higher, saying 24 feet, none of these lots with buildings on it provide a side, a side yard, but with the exception of two. There's two and one, one building is actually a corner lot. And even though Pluto data lists this as a 17-foot-wide lot, which is true, on one frontage, it also has 60 feet of frontage on another lot, so it's not really comparable. And similarly, there's another lot cited that has a two-foot-wide side yard, but it also has a recorded driveway easement, which actually makes it different in respect of the, it gets to the point, which I'm going to address in a second, which is the real issue of why we can't do a smaller building. As Michael pointed out, this is a two-family home and we have to provide two parking spaces as a requirement. We are doing one in front, in the front yard and one in the garage. If you look at the first floor plan, actually specifically the zoning calculations for the first floor, the garage is only about 10 and a half feet wide. And my understanding, that is a very, very modest garage. I understand the, the standard is generally about 12 feet. But in order to allow for a garage.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you because I'm still trying to follow along and get to this unique condition. So I, I think this requires like scouring the maps better, like what do the maps actually show you? Instead of what you're saying the maps show you, right? Let, let me just finish. So if we have, we have this building with, with frontages less than 21 feet with side yards, the maps are inconsistent with each other. And the, one of the reasons that I'm saying that is because it even shows, it shows buildings that don't occupy their full lot coverages and they have side yards. And it even counts buildings that have like alleyways. So maybe the frontage is the full width, but it has an alleyway. So there, which is different than the, than your lot width study, which shows buildings that have alleyway, you know, kind of like tenement buildings that have alleyways. Those are not, those are counted as having no side yards. So they're not treated equally in the same study. In different studies.
I'd like to set the building width aside because they, they do show different things. And I'll just touch on it briefly. When we're saying a 21-foot-wide building, it could be on a lot of any size. It could be a lot that's 100 feet wide versus a lot that's, well, 21 feet or smaller. And there, there are some discrepancies and I try to walk through that in the statement of facts. But I don't think we need to get there and that's what I want to try to address with the, the uniqueness, with the, the small lots and specifically these garages. The only way to provide two parking spaces again is, is to have a parking spot in the front and a garage. And the garage width again is very, very modest, at 10 and a half feet wide. We're only providing a, in addition to that garage, basically a three-and-a-half-foot-wide hallway and a three-foot stair to go up to the, the second unit.
But so, all of that aside, there are many lots here that are 17-foot wide.
Correct.
Right, so there's viable 17-foot-wide houses and by the way, we've granted variance. And by the way, we've granted variances for 17-foot wide houses, so we know they can work, or 18-foot wide houses. We, we know they can work because people ask for them, right? And they say, they say like, uh, you know, we'd only be able to build 14, and that's not viable. Just give us that little extra, and now we have viables. So that cuts against what our own experience is. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, please, I was interrupting.
Um, the, that cuts against our own experience where we see houses that are in the 17, 18-foot wide being happily accepted because they're on 17 or 18-foot wide lots. And this neighbor has, has lots of them. So to make this argument about the driveways and all that sort of stuff doesn't, isn't consistent with all, the so many lots that are narrow here, right? Much narrower than yours.
Correct, and all of these narrow lots, none of them with those, except, with those two exceptions, provide side yards. And that's, that's what we're trying to-
No, 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 you're mixing it up, right? So a 17-foot wide or an 18-foot wide lot doesn't have a side yard separate, okay? But it's an 18-foot wide building. It has an 18-foot width of frontage, or 17, and one of them is 16.67, not one of them, a bunch of them, 16.67 widths of frontage, one of which provides a little bit of a side yard according to this map, but not a big side yard, right? So don't, don't mix it up. What is about the, what you're doing is you're saying, no side yards, therefore I need a big house, a 20-foot, 1-foot wide house. That, that's not the correlation. The question is, are there side yards? And if there are side yards, then what, this, the second question that we try to parse through it is, what are the typical widths of the houses in the area? And we find a lot that are not 21 feet wide.
Correct, and sorry, what I'm trying to get at with the garage is if we provide a garage, we cannot provide a side yard, there's just not enough space. Uh, most of these buildings that are 17 feet wide, um, they, they have parking in the front of the building. Uh, and we, we can show pictures of these, just within the 400-foot radius, we looked at these. Um, but they're either entirely paved, which we're, we're not allowed to do. We have that planting requirement where we have to have a certain amount of planting. Or, uh, they only provide one spot, which, again, we can't do because of the requiring for two, for a two-family home requires two parking spaces, so-
But then that's again a choice, right? You have your 18-foot front yard, which allows a parking pad, right? It also, so actually, I think, I don't know if tandem parking is allowed in this district. But anyway, you have one parking space inside the house, so that's with, well within the 18-foot width or whatever. And then you could have a parking pad in front of it if tandem is allowed. So 18-foot front yard is what's required when you have parking in front of the building, right? Um, so not seeing that, that parking carries the day here because I, I don't see why you can't function, make this work with an 18-foot width, 18-foot width of house.
So maybe, and so I believe we did some drawings, which, is it 18 feet? Or is it, it's, I think it's a 17-foot-
We did, we did an alternate-
If I may speak, you have to state your name.
Oh, sorry, uh, George Fontaine, the architect. We have an, we have an alternate sketch for a four-foot side yard.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
It's in here.
Mm-hmm. And then the reason for the two parking spaces is because it's a two-family.
Correct.
But there's nobody saying it needs to be a two-family. You're getting, asking for a variance, right? No one says it needs to have two-family. I know that two-family is preferable. Do you have any more of these? Do you have more of these?
Oh, yeah.
One for each commissioner, if you have enough.
I would, I would just say, I think the map is confusing. The map with the blue, that I think seems to indicate a lot of buildings with 21 feet with no side yards, because it's the building. So those lots with the building that's less than 21 actually have a much wider lot. Those are 25, 26, in some cases even wider.
Okay, but what do you do about the fact that you've got all those 16-foot wide houses? Just saying, or 17-foot wide houses.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the crucial point that we're trying to establish that with the 16-foot wide house, we wouldn't be able to have those parking spaces.
Right. To, just-
And I also think it's, um, so, look, I'm the least knowledgeable person about housing in the room. But in my mind, I think it's a critical fact that any house that is narrower than 20 feet in the lot isn't required to have a side yard in our whole neighborhood. So it would be highly unusual to have a lot that's 21 feet wide and required to have a side yard. It would be the only lot in our whole area that would be that case.
So I, I think you're trying to-
Comment on the drawing? So, uh, in the drawing, we put the garage, the stairs, and then show that with the width that we have, only a foot is left over for the corridor in the house, so the function-
But this is because it's a two-family. If I just think about all the townhouses in New York City, I don't even need to go outside of Manhattan. If I think about all the townhouses in Manhattan, with the exception of those really old ones that are 25 feet wide, and those are the ones that are like the first of the townhouses, they're all on lots that are 20 feet and under, 17-foot wide and all of that kind of thing. And they all have, you know, it's, they're one family. You come into a foyer that is set back so that you're entering direct to the living room or the parlor, right? And then the staircase keeps going up. The reason for the claimed hardship is because it's a two-family, not because it's a one fam- not because it's not possible to do it.
Yeah. I'll just say one word that, if you observe to our house, about two houses to the north, there are a lot, a series of three houses that are about 17-foot wide. I happen to, I spoke to those neighbors, all those houses are currently in a two, sometimes even three-family situation. So I think they could do a three-family or a two-family because they were built before the code, which would have required parking. So I think to say that, oh, you could just make it a one-family house, because people do that sometimes, right? But I think even in our own neighborhood, narrower houses can and do often sustain more than-
They can, but this is a variance. This is where you're confronted with a lot that you can't, where you've got this funny little building on it that you can't enlarge, right? And the little building is too small for a reasonable occupancy, so you kind of treat it as a vacant lot, for lack of a better concept, right? And so you say, the vacant lot, I'm not allowed to build as of right because the regulations say I need to have this, I have to have this gigantic side yard, right? So, but it doesn't say that you must build a two-family or a three-family. It says, how do we make you, how do we make you whole? How do we return the right of owning a piece of property to you? But it doesn't, it doesn't say we have to return, like, more than everyone else's right.
I, that's, I totally, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, yeah, so that, that's kind of always the struggle. It's not to return more than everybody else's right. And I'm struggling with all these other people who live in these much narrower buildings. Isn't yours somehow getting you more of a benefit?
Right, I, I see where you're coming from. That's why I cite that. A lot of these, even the narrow houses, are more than one family. And I think, as you alluded to before, it's preferable to have more than one family. We thought about using more space. In fact, if we could use more space, sure, we would love for more space. Like I said, we have a growing family, but more housing is better. If we have, are able to bring in some rental income, that offsets the huge tax that might be occurring. So to us, it really is a-
They're more than one family, and they weren't subject, they're not subject to the parking regulations that you are.
Correct.
Oh, because they're pre-61.
They're pre-61, so that-
So to me, if you do this perhaps in two steps, that might help make your argument a little better. And I think that one of the steps should be to, to take this from a different approach, which is what I had said before, what is the average building width for lots that are 21 feet or smaller? Don't even tackle the parking issue or the number of units, just give us the average building width. So we could get an, an understanding of what building width would make you whole. Then separate and apart from that, you could make an argument that to limit us to only one family would be not making us equal with everybody around us. And the way you would do that would be showing us that the prevailing condition in the neighborhood is multifamily, or two families and above. And so that would be a separate study, that on lots that are 21 feet or less, I don't know, nine out of 10 homes have two families. Then you would be arguing that to allow us only to have one family would be putting us behind everybody else. Then you could tackle the parking issue. But I think that, that you have to address the question of what makes a viable building first, by addressing what's the average building frontage or building width on small lots like yourself. So if you take it in steps, rather than the whole thing, you have a better chance of proving your point.
Okay, understand, and I think we can-
But I also, I, I think that's helpful, thank you. Um, but I think also, if I just look at that floor plan and I look at the run of the stairs, it's also the choice of starting your run so early, right? If you start your run after the garage is finished, you, you've got a foyer into that apartment on the ground floor. And, you know, I know, I'm not saying it's not a better design and all of that stuff if you have a straight run of stairs like that, but that's a design decision, right? Once you get to the duplex, you could move the stair to the other side. Isn't one of these a duplex?
Yes, the first floor.
The first floor, so it's duplex. If you flipped it, if you had a simplex, so that's the other part of it. If you had a simplex on the first floor and the duplex on the other floor, once you arrive at the second floor, you're done. The stair could flip to the other side, right? So all of these are really design decisions, which isn't the same as getting a variance, right?
I thought, yeah, I thought about that, but then the seller would be inaccessible by the people who are on the upper floor. So I suppose we would then be living on the first floor and renting two floors out. I didn't think that was-
It doesn't have to, why is it inaccessible? You could have a staircase in the yard, and you go down into the yard. Through, lots of houses, think about-
So to live on the second-
Tons and tons of, if I go back again to the townhouses, many of them enter their sellers from the yard. Right, so, but, but you see what's going on here is I'm talking about design, which is not relevant to the variance. You can't have the design be what drives the variance. Unfortunately, variances aren't for design. If there were, there would be like a whole set of criteria. We'd get better buildings, arguably. We might get lots of worse buildings, unfortunately. So, so it, it can't be your desire that drives the variance. It has to be the hardship that drives the variance, right? And so, and, and that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, I have one thing to say about the average, um, building width that we would be preparing. Um, I think it's critical that anything narrower than 23 feet, the lots are using the full width. So even if an average building in the neighborhood ends up being, say, 20, right? Because they're, it's like, it's either really wide buildings or really narrow buildings. But anything under that, they all end up using the full width because at that narrow width, it just becomes so impractical to-
Right, but this becomes a question of what the minimum variance is. That's why we're asking for this. It's like, what will make you whole? And so it's not a question of the fact that people on smaller lots don't have side yards. The question is, if we're waiving the side yard, what degree of waiver do you get? You get the degree of waiver that produces a functioning viable building. And so one way of determining that is determining the livability of other buildings of smaller widths.
Maybe this is a good time to explain the difference between, uh, the lot coverage maps versus the building cover, or the building width map.
I mean, I think actually, if we go back to the last hearing, I think that the direction at the last hearing was what Commissioner Otley Brown is saying now. The direction wasn't to take a wide, look at wide lots. The direction is, was to keep your universe in the same universe. When you, when you leave the universe of what's relevant to you, you, you kind of change the, the calculus, and it makes it very difficult to make the argument. I mean, you could be talking about 45-foot wide lots, it's not relevant here, right?
Well, I, I would disagree that it isn't relevant. I mean, if we're looking at buildings, what the average building width is, I mean, I think we should look at the, everything in the area. If you're limiting to, uh, lots that are less than 24 feet, every building by definition has to be less than 24 feet because they just can't extend beyond the lot. So if we're looking at a, the, the narrow, what are the, the average widths of buildings on these small lots, they're going to be, uh, much smaller than what was actually shown in the, the rest of the area. We can certainly do that, and we can certainly show the difference. And that's, that's what the, the other maps were trying to show. That yes, on, uh, there are plenty of examples where there's buildings less than 21 feet. We can't argue that zoning actually sets the minimum for a zoning lot at 18 feet. So clearly, an 18-foot building in certain cases is viable. Um, and I, I like the commissioner's example that's saying that what we're really relying on is the garage, and that we will certainly look at, um, that, that the two-family home is the common theme, and that we really do need to show that the second parking spaces require, and then we can certainly build on that as why the, the, the side yard isn't feasible. But, um, regarding the 20, uh, the, the other map showing what the, the widths are, I know that there was a comment that, yes, there are a lot of buildings that are 21 feet, uh, or less in width. In fact, there's 316 in the area. We noted that, and it wasn't within 1,000 feet. And then the next map was simply to show that of those 316, almost two-thirds of them are lots where there's no side yard. Again, but this is slightly different than the, the lot covered, the, the lot width map because we're only talking about buildings that are 21 feet wide, whereas the, the lot width map also had some buildings that were between 21 and 24.
So, so the thing is, similar to what I said at the last, for the last case, you're supplying all of this stuff, but you're not, you're not articulating either here or in your papers, the significance of what those things are you're supplying. You need to really, so when we look at them, we look at them with fresh eyes, right? And we look at the map, and it says, "Buildings with frontages less than 21 feet with no side yards," and we see a ton, or, sorry, with no side yard, with side yards, and we see a whole bunch of blue. So therefore, something has to be provided that explains what you think it's actually showing, but don't anticipate what it shows. We look at the data. The data has to show us what you say it shows. It can't be showing us what you think it shows without looking at it, okay? I, I need to underscore that because what you say these maps show isn't what the maps show. The maps show what the, what the map preparer said they show. They show buildings with frontages less than 21 feet with side yards. So as far as I'm concerned, those are the same buildings that we're talking about, and they have side yards. But I just don't know how many of them have wider frontages because there's, I mean, wider lots because you didn't tell us.
Almost all.
So, we don't know that because you didn't tell us. So that's kind of the point, is you need to take your graphics, which are very nicely prepared by this consultant, and you need to tie your graphics very clearly to the argument that is, that, where they actually make that connection, and your goal is simple, right? Your goal is, I have a lot that's 21 feet wide, I want to develop a 21-foot wide building on it. How many lots in this area are 21 feet wide and under? How many have full frontage buildings? And, and of the ones that are less than 21 feet and under that are narrower or, or 21 feet wide and under, how many have whichever number of families? Not how many, yeah, what's the breakdown of one family versus two versus three, right?
And I, I totally agree with the, the family issue, but, um, and this is, this goes back to me not putting this in the cover letter, but this, this walkthrough of what these are is right, immediately right before the conclusion in the statement of facts, that walking through that, yes, there are a significant number of 21-foot wide or narrower buildings, which is an equivalent of about 37% of the, the area, which is, is significant. But of those, two-thirds of them, again, are, don't provide any side yard. So, and then, and then, uh, we, we keep narrowing-
But two-thirds doesn't get me anywhere. Two-thirds is a lot, look at the blue.
And it also doesn't tell you whether the ones without the side yards are the smallest of them.
Right.
You don't know, are the ones without the side yards the ones that are 16 feet wide or 17 feet wide? Or are they the ones that are all 21 feet wide? So that's why I was saying, look at it from the different perspective and focus in on the average building width. Don't talk about the side yards. Just focus on the average building width within 21-foot wide lots or less. So we can get an idea of what is viable and what measure of waiver to a side yard you really need.
Okay, and, and you need to be much, so I can, if we use this same consultant who does a lot of these maps, he also prepares, or his office prepares, um, the analysis. And it always goes like this. There, there are 300 lots within the study area. Of the 300 lots, 157 of the lots are narrower- Of the 300 lots, 157 of the lots are narrower than 21 feet. Here's a map. It actually, here's the, here's a map. Here's a chart, map chart, right? Then, of the 215 lots that are less than 21 foot wide, 57 of them have two-family homes. 87 of them have this many, this many, right? Of the 257 that are 20-foot wide and less, this many have yards that range from one foot, two foot, three foot, like that. And it'll be map, chart, map, chart. And what we, what he does is by the end of it, we're left with one lot standing. And then we say, oh, it's the only lot in the neighborhood that looks like this one, right? So those uniqueness arguments are very linearly done. And what's the problem here is that it's very haphazard. It's all over the place. And that's why we can't get to the simple conclusion, right? Because I think it's actually a pretty simple conclusion, but I'm still not convinced, just because I don't have the data, that you can't function with a narrower building because so many other people do. And we've approved so many other narrow houses that are two-family houses with parking and there's just a different approach to the architecture. You know, moving the staircase, having the, you know, this is an interesting building because you had a history of a back building. The most famous of those, also in the Village, but also all over Brooklyn, where the, the house, the front building gave you access to the back building. You walked down a narrow corridor and then you came into the building from the other side. Came into the back building from the narrow corridor. We actually had a variance where they kept the back building and then built in the front. But the problem is a fire department. It was a wider lot, I think, because we were able to get fire department access to the back building also. So, I mean, the back buildings are actually kind of cool, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to do a very standard house.
We, we understand that. Standard isn't what they, what we're about here. We're looking for uniqueness and to make the owner whole because arguably zoning has deprived the owner of the right to develop their property.
We're, we're trying to do, I mean, just for economics, like, we don't want to do anything crazy because that'll probably raise our costs, you know? So I totally understand. I think we can prepare that analysis. Of course, as I mentioned, we want to get through as quickly as we can.
So what I would suggest is, the consultant that I referred to, that you've hired for the maps, get a sample of when that office does the analysis all the way through. Because it's so systematic. It kind of leaves very little open, right? It's just really super systematic. And then we can ask much more direct questions because we know where we're going.
Yeah, I would just ask for my own benefit. I expect that after we run the analysis, there will be a number of houses, still minority of the neighborhood, that have lot frontage lower than, say, 20, right? They'll use up the whole house. It'll be a two-family and sometimes even a three-family situation. Now, you mentioned like, when it comes down to one house. I mean, I think our house will be similar to those except that we're trying to build it from this non-conforming back house or our only choice is to move it to the middle. Is that a way forward? Like, the fact that there are narrower houses that have no parking that were built older, I think that still makes our house unique because we're still trying to do it, you know, today.
I don't really understand.
I think my question is this. The fact that there are narrower houses that are multifamily wouldn't make our house not unique.
That would make your house unique, in my opinion.
This has to do with the minimal variance.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we're focusing in on.
Right, but I think combined with the fact that we're, we have to do parking and vast majority of houses are multifamily, I think that's a lot...
You have to do parking, but you don't have to do two parking spaces and there might be a way for you to do, like, for instance, there's no rule that says, you have a very deep backyard, for example, which up until now is filled up with a building, right? So there's no history of that yard not being occupied by stuff. And you've chosen to, I don't think zoning's requiring it. You're, you've chosen to build your building right to the street line. You don't necessarily have to. I mean, for instance, you could...
But we have a spot in the front.
You have a spot in the front, but you could pull the building back further and accomplish with, with tandem parking in the front, for example.
We're not allowed to do tandem. We're only allowed to park in the ribbon.
I'll, I'll do a check.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I don't think that's, yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyway, I don't want to keep this going on. We shouldn't, we need to move on. If you have further questions, please ask your project manager or our, our executive director, okay?
Counsel, generally, I think that you've, you've figured it out in your head. You know this case better than, than anyone. You've had it for a lot longer. Just filling in the steps to, instead of those, we're not, we can't do the same leaps that you can do.
Yep, absolutely, understood.
And I'd really recommend getting, taking a look at a full model of an analysis. It'll help you think linearly, which is what this is. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Speakers?
Oh, are there any speakers on this one? No? Okay.
Submission April 8th with a continued hearing April 28th.
Is there any way to get anything earlier?
I don't believe so.
If there is nothing earlier, then we will accept that. But if, there's absolutely nothing earlier? Is that what you're saying? And thank you very much.
Item number 18, 2019, 75 BZ, 704 Broadway in Manhattan. Raise your right hand.
No, I'm sorry.
Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member's questions?
I do, thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended your review session yesterday. We understand that there are, with regard to the use, the facility itself, that there may not be any further issues. I've spoken with the client and the expediter. They are working on the CNE from Landmarks.
Oh, so they've already submitted?
Oh, they've already submitted. It's been long submitted. I mean, basically, they're, well, they're, I just, I don't know why it's taking so long. The interior, is it no issue? I think they're changing the front door. They may be painting the color a new sort of black, but, you know, nothing of substantial note for the commission.
Can I suggest that when you are closer to getting the sign-offs from the other agencies, from DEP and so on, let us know and we could reach out to Landmarks that they're the only thing we're waiting for?
I will do that. I also spoke, and I see, if I see, yes, I see, yeah. Spoke to our environmental consultant. I know there are some DOT issues that are still outstanding. We think we can respond to those within approximately a month or so. Early April hearing would probably be, would be, unless Ms. Menke feels...
There's also hazmat, air quality and noise.
Quite well, but we think that, according to Amber Cotillion, who's our equity environmental, she said mostly, there are things outstanding, but they're working their way to conclusion. So if we can have, I think if we have an early April hearing, since timing is becoming an issue with the client and, you know, school years and such, we think we could be adequately...
What about the DOT change in them? They asked for changes in the analysis, reverse journey to work.
Right, they want some sort of modal split, I understand. We're gathering that material. We should be able to submit it very, very quickly to them. So again, if we, we're in the middle of February now. If we have the April hearing, early April, that should be fine.
But you didn't submit yet, so, and there's how much turnaround time?
She's, my, she said around 30 days.
So it's 30, well...
They're a little delayed, right?
Say again?
They're delayed, DOT.
DOT we know is very delayed, right? So wait a second. So do you have any idea when you're going to be, you said you have...
They've been gathering the materials. They'll be submitting the DOT probably by the end of this week. They're, we're pushing Landmarks. I'm not quite sure why it's taking what it's taking, but we...
And the air quality and noise?
That's, the air quality is, they've been working on the air quality issues all along. And I think we've added a note to our plans with regard to the noise that we're going to have window wall attenuation. If I, I think we may have mentioned that in the last, yes, let's see.
Yeah, so they, their last comments were about adding window wall attenuation of 33.
Right, so that we have. And, and they've been doing all sorts of hazmat testings, et cetera.
Well, they were air quality tests, provide air quality assessment related to New York, NYU Central Plant and industrial sources. Table 17-1 was removed. Please provide within subsequent EAS, so that's EAS.
Right, they'll, they'll put it back in. That's, yeah, I mean, that's, they've been doing all of the, they've been doing drillings and this is...
So, okay, so if we were to just make this, if you were to get all of this submitted by the end of the month?
End of, no, it would be earlier than today, it's only the 11th. It'll be submitted probably by next Monday at the latest.
Okay, so then we have only all of March to, for them to review, right?
Well, the next Monday would be the 20...
Let's be realistic.
17th.
Okay, thank you.
How about we do mid-April? Do we have room? Yeah, we don't have a mid-April hearing because it's some, it's one of the holidays.
So the seventh is, the seventh is no good? In other words, is that too...
There isn't a seventh, right? There's a seventh or 20th? I think the seventh is too soon because your submission is really soon. Or there isn't a submission.
They're really, the submission is the DEP stuff.
What?
I just want to note that the plan, the revised plans still have a note regarding Local Law 58 of 87, as well as referring to the floor space in the cellar's floor area.
I'll take a look at that. I thought we, I know there were a couple of notes that had come on and off with regard to the proposed plans. But I, we had taken off some of the notes last time and renumbered them, which, which is the inappropriate...
Note number three.
On page what?
P1, 2, 3, 4, uh, 2, 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so you want that?
As, as well as P0.
So you want that note three removed?
Uh, no, we have a new standard note regarding ADA compliance.
So take, so note four on page POO and notes three on the following. I'll go look at your website and see what the appropriate note is.
Yeah, so I think it's always so funny because everyone is harking back to the ancient days of 1987. But long ago, Local Law 58 was incorporated into a law that's in the admin code and other laws. So it actually has its own, a real number. So we're just updating it that fall.
I apologize, but...
Do you know, sorry, do you know if the phase two testing has been done yet?
Yes, it has been done.
Okay, since there's only two DOT comments, perhaps we could try send to April. Usually there's...
Really?
Like, it's very lengthy usually, but there's only two comments and they say...
Okay, April 7th then you think is potential? Okay.
And so there was, Mr. Chase, Mr. Fine, you said there was a second item on, of the floor, look at the floor area issue.
Cellar is not floor area.
Yeah, right, right. I had that.
Okay. Okay, so submission March 18th with a continued hearing April 7th.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Item number 19, 2019, 158 BZ, 8903, 57th Avenue, Queens. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member's questions?
Elise Polidera from Eric Palatnick, PC. I did not submit anything on this, but I have a letter from the construction supervisor who manages the site and photographs taken today that I'd like to pass out and discuss with you.
You didn't submit anything new. You submitted items.
I did submit these items because if you want me to submit them after we talk about them, I'm more than...
What I mean is, just for the record, you submitted in time for the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't submit anything new.
This morning, yeah, no.
Since, right, okay.
Sorry, because I often submit...
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So unfortunately, he could not attend today because he had, has to manage a bunch of sites. But I'd like to read his letter and then I'd like to talk about the pictures that I've handed out, so. Dear Chair Pearl Mutter and members of the board, I am the construction supervisor for White Castle. I would like to address a few concerns that came up yesterday. Unfortunately, I could not attend the hearing today. First, the site has operated for decades without complaints from neighbors. The site was approved by the community board and it is an asset to the area. The site is on Queens Boulevard between the Queens Center Mall and Queens Place, a major commercial hub of Queens. This is an extremely busy area. We've taken numerous measures to improve the site as requested by our board at a cost of over $11,000, including the following. We have reinstalled the gates on the trash enclosure, and that's in the photographs attached, by the way. We have washed the fence and taken all the signs off. We have restripped the parking lot. We've installed additional landscaping. We've ordered concrete trash bins, which are being installed today. And I just got those in, so they're separate photograph. We have installed light shields on lights adjacent to neighboring properties. We do not feel that a trash compactor is necessary or appropriate. Having containers allows us to move them in order to clean under them. A compactor is impossible to move, so washing underneath it is impossible. White Castle takes pride in serving the community for decades and takes pride in the maintenance and cleanliness of the site. So I...
So that's so interesting. And then you give us a photograph that has the dumpster outside.
Well, I think they're honestly taking out trash in that, like, you took it this mor, like, early this morning.
Yeah, but...
Like, you can see that it's clean inside, like...
So what's weird is, the trash compactor was a requirement of the prior...
It was on the previous plans. We saw it on the previously approved plans, but it wasn't mentioned in the resolution and it doesn't, I didn't see it mentioned in the resolution. I did see it on the previously approved plans, though. And maintenance of that, he doesn't use a trash compactor at any of his other White Castles. He manages a bunch of White Castles and he, as required by the city to provide things such as like a, a container that's just for cardboard. So managing these separate containers, he said, is a lot easier and a lot cleanliness to not have a huge compactor in the middle of his trash enclosure. He says it's costly and it's inefficient for their operations. It doesn't work for him.
So why'd they agree to a trash compactor at the last hearing?
They, we, at the last hearing, I listened to your comment, but the first, the first time he was...
No, 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 I don't mean here. I mean at the prior...
I remember...
Vision, it shows a trash compactor on the drawings.
I don't know why they did that in the previous approval, but now he's saying that this does not work for him and he came to the first hearing with us and listened to your comments, but after reviewing everything, he just, he didn't really think it was a good idea then, but he looked into it and it just doesn't, doesn't work for him. For cleanliness purposes, for monetary purposes. He can, he is more than willing to add trash pickup if that's something you guys want to put as a condition.
Yeah, we said that over and over.
Yeah, and he has agreed to that, but the trash compactor is not something he feels is good for maintaining his sites. And he maintains a lot of White Castles. And I do want to point out that the community board did not complain about this site. It was a very positive community board meeting. I went myself. We went and they, he hasn't gotten complaints from neighbors. And I think if you do look at the site, it's next to two huge commercial malls on Queens Boulevard. It's loud. It's, like, this is a really, I think, a nicely kept site. And the, I also provided a picture of this, this area, the fence that you said changed isn't, not his property, so he can't change this fence. The white is his fence. You said the PVC fence. He said he doesn't know what the board is referring to because this fence is not something he is allowed to remove.
You're talking about this one?
Yeah, is that what you were referring to?
The rock one?
Because he was saying that it's white all around. It's that white fence. And anywhere where it's not that white fence, it's not his property and he cannot remove it. And I confirmed with him this morning that this is the only piece he could find with the not-white fence that was not his property.
So I guess why I'm confused is the subject of overflowing trash and too many trash bins has been the subject of the hearing, right? Mostly, right? And so, and the response is, no, we're good. So how do we make, how do we improve this?
That's why I'm saying he's willing to add trash pickup and...
So why doesn't he make an operational plan that he has?
If you want us to...
...trash pickup. We talked about this already two hearings ago. With trash pickup, we talked about this already two hearings ago.
If you want us to do that, you can do that, but he thought, he, he came originally and had a conversation with you, and he added the doors, and he doesn't see trash as a typical problem on his site, but- I know you see them outside, but they're taking them in and out in this photograph.
No, no.
Yeah.
We, based on my notes here, people were observing that the trash was a significant problem.
Okay.
Right? It's based on site visits.
We didn't get any complaints from the community board.
I know, but-
Yeah. But, like I said, you can, you can create a condition that he has more trash pickup.
No, we don't want a condition, we want him to submit an operational plan.
Or we can give you an operational pla- I can call him right now even, and ask him if he can create an operational plan for trash and send it to me back.
Provide the schedule of current pickups and what you're proposing?
Yeah, and then I can propose more trash and tell him that's a request right now at the board. I'm staying all afternoon, so.
So, so there were all of these questions that weren't answered, that's why I'm-
Did they install any shielding for the lighting?
They did install the light shield, and I did not provide it at this submission, I provided it on the previous submission.
I was there after the previous submission, and this is, this is one of the light bulbs I liked.
Yes, there was a light shield installed on the light.
I can't see any shielding here.
I can get, I, I can get the photograph.
So I think with respect to this-
This is, this is from the site.
I, I have a picture of the two, and it has a light shield on it. I don't know when you took your picture, but I have a picture.
Well, but a shield doesn't necessarily ma- mean anything. You put a shield, and it doesn't do anything. It's the, it's not shielding in the right direction to prevent the spill onto the adjoining property. The shields have a function, right? You could buy a shield, but it's the wrong length, it's the wrong whatever, you install it wrong, and there's spill, there's bleed.
Okay.
Right? That's why we asked for actual measurements.
I understand, but it is next to two big malls on Queens Boulevard, and it's, there's been no complaints, and only in the rear is there, there's that big white picket fence, and then behind them is residential.
Right, so we're talking about the residential. That's what we're talking about.
I understand, and he's taken precautions without any complaints from neighbors.
Well, we don't- If I look at Google Maps, I see the, the-
You can see it.
Yeah.
There's their windows.
They've been there for like 30 years.
No, but, so, this is the thing, and people always say, oh, you know, people get used to living in situations that are not acceptable, and you would, I mean, if you were going to look at, this is what I use all the time. If you're going to look at an apartment in that building, and you go to visit it at night, like, you don't even have to be in the summertime, you go for, you meet the real estate agent at 5 o'clock on a Tuesday to, in the winter, right? You will see that light shi- arguably shining into your window and saying, nope, not for me, I don't want to have to bring my shades down all the time, right?
So he put on a light shield. What else would you like?
Right, so the light shield's supposed to be effective. According to that site visit, the light shield's not effective. So this is why we ask for measurements, which is the simplest. They just go around with a little light meter, and they measure around the site to make sure the light spill is zero at, on the residential side, or at the fence, and they could-
And they have to do it at the fence.
They could do it on the top of the fence, or at, right in front of the fence, what?
It's more factual, it's, it's simpler, but it's more factual. It gives you like the right reading. But analytical approaches, you can just throw in numbers and-
In any case, I think you would have to adjust the shield if it's not zero at the fence.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, y- you see that?
Can we be provided with that photograph so I can show the client, though? Because he did think, he did take all of these actions based on the board's comments, and he has been trying to update the site accordingly, but I think I need to show him that, because he feels that, he did put in a light shield. He has updated the site.
Yes, but, I, so that's the thing, when you hire, like, for lack of a better way of describing it, when you hire a bunch of guys to put in the light shields, it's not the same thing as hiring an expert who knows how to direct the light shield, right?
That's what I'm saying, may I have that, of, yeah? Can you send it to me so I can send him what you're talking about?
Is that okay?
And then, you can, I think that's okay.
Yeah, I, I'll upload it to the record.
To submit, okay.
Because otherwise, he, he really, you know, he is a construction supervisor, he maintains all of these sites. He really, like, he put in the trash you asked for, he restripped, he did all of these items, so he, you know, if you're, if we're coming to-
Oh, it was that person who came, who came and said he was a site manager?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've been in contact with him through each hearing, and-
I mean, none, none of the photos that you provided showed shielding to the light bulbs. I haven't seen any with-
I'll submit it again, but I'm 100% sure I did a light, it said light shielding, and I, I'll do it again.
Not a graph?
It was a picture of the light, yeah. I did additional photos, multiple photos. It had like, it was like square, and they were like there.
Yeah, I actually don't even see where the light sources are in these photographs.
I didn't give it to you in these, because these were, I was trying to tackle new issues that came up, like, the trash bins.
So when we talk about operational plan, I mean, one of the reasons we keep reacting to this is that, in terms of the trash, is every single time we get a photograph, it's always showing the dumpster outside of the trash enclosure, which is a pretty weird way of making your argument.
If you go to Google Map, if you go to Google Maps and you go throughout the years, throughout this decade, you'll find trash, the, the, the bins outside of the enclosure.
It seems like they're consistently stored there, more or less for convenience, right?
Okay.
And then the other part of it was the acoustical, the soundboard. I don't think there was any change in that drawing from the last time, because it's not bubbled.
So we added the landscaping, as you said, and then we didn't, we, this is an op, this site is not like a new site, so there's, we've not hired any acoustical people, because that's a very expensive extra cost to hire an acoustical expert and do a recommendation and all of that, so they, and, and the site has been there without complaints, so. It, the, the menu board itself, when you go up to the menu board, the highest it's at is 60 dB, and it gets lower and lower from there.
No, no, but the point is, when, so who prepared those drawings if you don't have an acoustical person?
We did them based off of, they're, you know how I gave you those white papers from the engineers? It's based off of the white papers of that sound measurement from the, whatever, the techni- I don't know how to describe this, but-
Yeah, yeah, the spec sheet.
Yeah, the spec sheet.
So, so the thing is, this, according to that drawing-
Yeah.
Um, the sound is way up there, you know, it's like 30 feet off the ground, it's being measured at 64 dB. We had this discussion with another case, where we said, well, we don't understand, why does a menu board have to project sound 30 feet in the air? It only needs to project sound to enough so I can hear it when I'm sitting in my car, right? So, that sounds like another thing where you would take it, you know, you have a very high fence here. And the argument is that the high fence is attenuating the sound by like 27 dB. Even though it's just a plastic fence and not one of those acoustical fences, I kind of believe, even, but there's no scientific data at all being provided.
Not just air, like, I'm saying it's not-
No, right, but, you know, sound permeates through things. That's why they have ratings, right? It permeates through this piece of paper, it would be as if there's nothing, right? So each, each barrier has a rating, and I'm assuming the PVC has a little bit of attenuation. Whether it's 27, I think they made that up frankly, because it's probably not data sourced. But the fact is that if the sound was only projecting up to five feet, then it's believable that the fence is blocking the sound. But if the sound is projecting 30 feet, then it's not believable that those people who open their windows in the summertime, or when it's too hot from the heat-
I need that battery.
Aren't hearing, you know, a mac and cheese or whatever it is you're buying here.
But how far away are the windows?
So, so that's the other question, is why can't the sound source on the menu board have the same kind of a shield, where it's deflecting the sound just to the level of the car, right?
I can ask them if they can install some sort of-
Yes. I think that sort of should be standard, then we wouldn't be worrying about this all the time, right? You have a fence, fence six feet high, the menu board just talks to the people in the window, done.
So, the thing, the items you're asking is, they want the menu board shield. We're going to look into the light shield situation, we'll get the photograph, and then he'll do something about it.
I think they were submitted on November 21st.
What was?
Photo of the light shield.
November 21st?
Yeah, because we've been through a few hearings.
You know, I'm looking at the light shield photograph, and I'm thinking that your issue is that your pole is so incredibly high that even with the shields, it's not bringing the light straight down. Because it is, looks like it's about 30 feet in the air. That might be your issue.
And that, I think we probably said that at that hearing, and then it just sort of, we've forgotten what our issue is, right? So, but it's true, when the poles are super high, how can a shield unless it's a really, we talked about this at the last hearing on another case. Unless you have like a six-foot-long shield, it's not going to do anything.
Which one is that?
What number? Which photo number? Oh, photo 6, yeah.
By the menu board.
Oh, this is done by the-
Right, it's a super tall, and it does have shields, but you just think about, how does a shield work, right? I mean, it's just sort of obvious. If the shield is this long, it cuts the, the light to that much, and then the light casts down at an angle. But if the shield's only this long, which is what we're seeing, it bypasses that and, and casts to a much wider angle. So that's more like a shield for looks, rather than a shield for, for actual utility, because the pole's so high. If you had a short pole, it would work. Right? And that's kind of what I mean. If you just hire the guys to install a shield, they'll go to Home Depot, buy a couple shields and put it up, as opposed to actually figure it out.
Okay, I will let him know. So the light, this menu board, and then a operation plan for trash.
Yes. But, and so the landsc- so now, so wait a second, the landscaping, in terms of what's on the drawing versus what's installed?
It was a few hearings ago, updated, the landscaping.
The drawings?
The drawings and the, to, to reflect what's, was planted there, and you can see in some of these photographs. The plants look new and alive.
Vibrant.
Okay, so what you're saying to us is that if we were to look at the drawings and we get photographs of the plantings, they match?
They would be the same, yes.
Okay, do we actually have photographs of that happening in our file?
I'll do it again if I didn't, because I do remember, we've been through a few hearings, I do remember doing light shield, landscaping, updating the landscaping, but we've been through a few iterations.
Yeah, I'm looking at, yeah, I'm just looking at the last one, and I just can't see whether I said, "Site looks better but hard to tell that landscaping matches the drawings" was my note from the last hearing.
I know that we definitely updated the plans to match the landscaping, because I remember a lot of emails back and forth saying, do these match?
Okay.
Oh, I just want to say, you know that question about the fence?
Yeah.
It was actually addressed in your November 21st photos. It was the absence of a panel of the PVC fencing alongside the drive-through aisle in the back.
Okay.
And it's been replaced.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's what it was, so it was an old, old question, okay.
It was a November photo, and now you can see it's completely built.
Okay, so that's what it was, yeah.
And part of the reason I got him to write this letter is I wanted you to see that all the items he has completed up until now.
Okay. We'll resubmit. So you're going to resubmit the photos, or at least tell us where they are? We'll submit the photos of landscaping.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I don't, none of, none of the photos I gave you today, like the trash bins, were literally installed like three hours ago, so I'll submit those.
You mean the concrete bins?
The concrete bins, yeah.
All right. So, and then, a sound shield on the menu board, okay. So, okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? So I think if you really want to wrap this up, so we can really know that everything's been answered, the easiest way every time is to go through a list of everything that was done, which is essentially what he did, right? But a list of everything that was done and everything we've mentioned?
Yeah.
And photographs, even if they're duplicates.
Okay, done. When do you want to, sorry, whenever you want to give me.
Submission, March 4th, for continued hearing, March 17th.
Is that enough time?
Maybe, uh, 12/24th, just, I'm just concerned about the light situation.
Yeah, okay.
Um, submission, uh, March 4th, for a continued hearing, March 24th.
Didn't you just say March 4th, submission?
I did.
Okay, so, no, but for the 17th, it was, I thought, 4th. So it's also March 4th for the 24th?
No, what? She wants a different-
She wants a different, need to submit later.
It's March, it doesn't get you another week to submit. If you need another week to-
Okay. So give her another one after, then.
So-
Oh, sorry, I just-
Submission date, March 11th, for a continued hearing, March 24th.
Oh, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do new cases, or?
Oh.
Can we take a break, because I have to go find my architect?
Yeah, go. In search of architect. You want to take a lunch break, it's 2:00. So 30-minute lunch break, 2:30.
Okay, returning at 2:30.
Mm-hmm. Jukebox, please.
We're gonna have a lunch break in just a minute.
This is, you ask for a break, we give you a break.
That'll give you enough time to find your architect.
And isn't everyone happier?
Okay. There you go.
Good.
Okay, we're back on the record. New calendar on this, new cases on the zoning calendar. Item number 1, 2018, 146 BZ, 1315 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. You gotta raise your right hand. Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, to respond honestly to the board member questions? Okay, sign and proceed.
What is this? Um, Elise Follader from Eric Palatnick, PC. I'm here with David Cohen, who's here on behalf of the architect to discuss all the various changes.
Go through all of that and read it out, and then we'll move to the next one.
Oh, sorry, we'll move to the next one, sorry. Thank you.
I guess one of the easiest comments is, he has no problem dimensioning the existing home on the proposed drawings. Uh, he already, looks like he has a legend which shows the area, but he'll dimension it. It looks like on the proposed, he shows which is existing and which is- You asked for, to show the existing, where the existing walls are-
Yes.
On the proposed drawings, so-
Right, and it's not dimensioned, yeah.
Yeah, so he'll put the dimensions on that. Um, and then, he understand, he looked at the section on the attic, and he understands that it's a little funny there and hard to read, so do you want to come up and explain how you're gonna, he's gonna redo that section?
State your name for the record, please?
My name is David Cohen.
Hi. So, before we do that, I just want to, so in terms of dimensioning the existing, you're, on your proposed, your existing is shown as clear walls that don't have any hatching, right?
Sure.
So it's just that the dimensions of that extent of wall matches of the wall to be retained, matches your, um-
Yeah, we'll match to the demo.
Demo drawings.
Yes, we'll, we'll coordinate.
Right, so, 4310, like, it should be 4310, because you're showing the whole thing kept, but-
Oh, and, and then I guess, speaking on that same issue, sorry to go to, I went to the attic right away. He's going to ensure that the legalization area is not kept as part of the floor area. It looks like there might be a small section of the wall that is, but he's going to revise that and make sure that 50% of the existing walls, yeah.
Okay.
As, as far as the attic comment, it was, the concern was the space above eight feet?
Yeah, as well as the sect, the, they, this was on-
So it, it's two parts to it. You're showing the attic as if there is no roof that attaches to it, right?
Yeah, so we could be more clear where the section is cut.
Yeah, that's-
This is like, it's like a double section, it's a section in the middle and the dormer. We'll do it one way and clear it up.
Right, so like, you know, at what level is the section cut? Is it cut at four feet, in which case?
Right.
And he'll put a key or something to it.
Yeah, okay.
But is there an issue with the space above eight feet? Or there isn't?
Well, the issue is that the FAR ask is too high, so it needs to be one, which is-
We were going to go into another-
Oh, in another place, so I-
You said that, that you have cases sometimes where they do, there's room above the attic, and you don't want to see that.
Right.
Situations where you have a bunch of extra room, and then they put something in.
Oh, right, that's true. That's where the structural headroom rule-
Yeah, it's based on the timing.
So, yeah, so the little cross bracing isn't the structural headroom, the cross, structural headroom is actually the beams, right? Because you can sort of, we've seen where they artificially create that, and that's not what DOP had in mind, right?
Yeah, so we can redesign, so the roof is flat.
Okay, it doesn't have to be a flat roof, it's just that the struc- It doesn't have to be a flat roof, it's just that the structural headroom, I mean, you don't have those cross beams that frequently, it's not the same thing as if you've got them every 18, 16 on center or whatever.
All right, okay. And then, as far as the FAR being where the one, I think 1.06, we'll bring it down to one, probably by making the second floor and attic shorter in the back.
Yeah, because you said that, we looked at the rear yard study, but we, I didn't take too close a look at the setbacks around, but maybe that will solve both problems by having it a little setback on the second and third floor, and then we can get a walk.
That's good, great.
And I do want to point out that this has a 24-foot rear yard, not a 20, so we're not asking the floor.
It's not as, yeah, okay.
And as far as the lot coverage, we'll indicate it for purposes.
And I'll fix it on the state.
Right, it's just for comparison purposes to the map, since I don't think that's done in, um...
We provided a map with percentages, because that's usually how.
Yeah, most people don't figure out how to do open space ratio maps.
It's funny, yeah, okay.
It's like, too hard to do the math somehow.
We could give you a separate lot coverage, open space versus coverage.
Yeah, that'd be great, okay, thanks.
Be clear.
And then...
And then I could fix two things in the same effect, but I'll fix everything in the same effects, especially if you have a new floor area.
Right. And then, I had a comment about that being allowed to be a bedroom that faces the side yard, I'm not sure it's allowed.
So I think that the, I'll double check in that zone if light and air can count along that edge.
Yeah.
I think that lowering, if we do lower the roof to solve the roof issue, I think lowering the roof takes us out of that light and air issue, but I'll double check. Some zones, if you take from, I think, 35 to 32, it eliminates that light and air requirement on a narrow yard. But I'll verify.
Okay.
Maybe we'll flip the bedroom to the other side.
Okay, so I think, so the, yeah, the issue is whether it's zoning or whether it's code, building code. I just noticed, note that sometimes when I make this comment, the name of the room shifts to like library, a non-sleeping room.
Okay.
You know, this is really a DOB, this is really more of an observation, but the point is that we're not waiving the required, legally required light and air requirement, right? Okay. And then, I think Commissioner Chivetta asked a question about the, how you justify the massing of the house relative to the surrounding houses, so that should be something that's addressed.
I guess we'll talk about that again. We have different studies, but I'll dig deeper.
Thank you.
Right, okay.
Yeah, there are a few homes, not directly next door, but just down the street that...
Yeah, they're...
Especially a home management with 20-foot rear yard.
Right, there are, just not the majority of them.
So, you know, usually we're...
Usually a few, but not the majority.
Usually we're looking at, with the streetscapes, we're looking at the height of the building relative to the other buildings, and then how deep into the rear yard it goes, right? So, and also, so it's the height of the building at the front, height of the building in the middle, where you're looking at the roofs, the roof lines all the way across, down the block, right? And then we're also looking at the depth into the rear yard relative to the others. Those are like the massing issues we use to like pack the thing back down, right? So, to the extent that you're making corrections on those, it'll start to pack it down.
You're okay with this staggered rear yard, being more proud on the first floor and to the back, and stepping back?
Oh, I think what I, was this the one that I said? That if you, no, I meant, that's the front, sorry, one second.
You said, I thought that you said that when you looked at other homes around there, it appeared that they set back.
They set back further, right. Oh, I see what you're saying, that you're bending around your garage. Oh, that's the first floor, I meant. Now I'm missing the proposed plans.
We're proposing about six-foot extensions in the rear yard of, across all floors.
This is very weird. Oh, here we go. The drawings are a little bit out of order, okay. No, you're doing, it's a, you have a 24-foot for first floor, right? And then you have that little chamfered corner, so that, I assume, so you can get to the garage?
Yeah, so that portion is all, oh yes, on the proposed, yes.
Yeah, she's talking about the proposed.
As opposed to what? What are you talking about?
Well, I'm looking at the existing, there was a portion that's illegal, that's also cut back on the angle.
So that's, I just want to say that whatever is illegal, ignore it, like pretend it's not there for the point of view of the existing drawings, because we can't view it as legalized.
Understood.
So whatever you're asking for in the rear that's beyond what's permitted as, right, that's what you're showing as new construction. I don't really care about the dog leg at the back.
Okay.
Okay, good. Are there any speakers on this?
It looks like you should also look at your DOB objection to confirm that the citations are to the correct sections, particularly with respect to 23142, since this is an R2 district.
So it's...
As well as the ZR citations on the zoning chart?
This is over.
Just review them in general. It makes reference to a 3347 rear yard requirement.
Okay, look at that, but then, I guess then we would need a new DOB objection.
Right.
Yeah, someone would need a new DOB objection.
Okay, right, so at the moment, you're looking at open space, floor area, side yard, rear yard.
You put 23142, and we're in an R2, so 23141, like you have it here, but on the DOB objection, it needs to be 23141.
Right. Yeah, to this extent, it says the wrong thing on the objection sheet, that's actually a jurisdictional problem for us. In other words, we don't have the authority to waive it, because you didn't ask.
Got it.
Okay.
After, I guess, R2 or 24.
Okay, so that you'll check carefully, and if you need to update the DOB objection, then you need to allow time to get that.
Hopefully it's right there, and it's just a type over here.
Right, okay. I don't have a copy. You have, you know that the objection, is it correct?
It says 142.
And that's correct?
It refers to lot coverage and open space. This is an R2, and the relevant requirement would be under 23141, how much our floor area ratio and open space ratio.
Ah.
There's no lot coverage percentage or open space percentage requirement.
So it's the wrong citation for this?
Yeah.
In the objection sheet?
In the objection.
Okay. So we need to give you time to get to DOB, I think that's part of the point, so, okay. Okay, all right. No speakers on this, so, six weeks to get to DOB?
I think we could do it quicker.
Really? Month? Four weeks? Okay. So is submission in four weeks?
Okay, and the DOB objection could be provided at the hearing, but submission March 4th for continued hearing March 24th.
Is that enough time?
It is.
It's three weeks to basically amend your drawings, right?
Yeah, I think it was narrowed down to a decent scope, I think it's doable.
Okay, good, good. Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
It's March 4th submission, March 24th hearing.
Item number two, 201972BZ55510th Avenue, Manhattan. Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Now, you gotta raise your right hand.
Yes. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Commission, they're over there.
That's one, that's one. No, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. Barack Robel, on behalf of an application under ZR Section 7336, seeking a PC special permit to operate an approximately 7,794 square foot private membership commercial fitness club on the ninth floor of a 53-story mixed-use building at 55510th Avenue in a C28 district in Manhattan. The ground level of the base of the building contains a residential lobby, retail and school lobby, above which the Success Academy operates within six floors of the base of the building. Above the school is a 20-foot-high mechanical level of the eighth floor, which you can see from the sections. The tower begins at the ninth floor where the private fitness club is located. The club includes two lane, thank you very much, we have some pictures here that should orient us. The club includes...
It's private only to the residents?
It is private only to the residents. It includes a two-lane lap pool. Where am I? Exercise and aerobics equipment, Pilates and yoga room, changing rooms and bathrooms. There's also an accessory outdoor recreation space on the terrace of the ninth floor. A total of 598 residential units occupy all the upper levels of the building above the fitness center. At the executive session yesterday, the board raised questions about why this space requires a PC permit. So I'll start out with the definition. A PC is defined as any establishment or facility, including commercial or non-commercial clubs, which is equipped and arranged to provide instruction, services, or activities which improve or affect a person's physical condition by physical exercise or massage. Physical exercise programs include aerobics, martial arts, or the use of exercise equipment. I'm sure you know that definition. The fitness center on the ninth floor with its equipment and instructional programs clearly meets the definition of a PCE. While the city has allowed spaces that meet the definition of a PCE to be exempt from the special permit, if used solely for the occupants of a building, and characterized by the owner as accessory, because this is a private commercial club, and it's non-accessory, it's not exempt from the special permit. Although it would have been...
Because it's a private access, say that again?
Private commercial. And non-accessory.
It's not, it's non-accessory, why is it non-accessory?
It's owned by a different corporation, right?
Well, it's been characterized as commercial. And although I want to explain why I think that we're, why one is permitted under the ZR to choose what use group a use may be in. So it would have been beneficial to characterize the space as accessory, clearly, to avoid the need for a special permit, but yet, at the time that the fitness center was proposed into the design of the building, the full 12 FAR of residential floor area was already designed and planned for the residential units. So accordingly, the owner characterized the space as commercial, because there was available floor area for a private membership commercial club.
I see.
There is nothing novel or unusual about choosing how a use may be treated under the ZR. There are many, many uses listed in multiple use groups. For example, antique stores and commercial art galleries are in use group six and 12. Banquet halls are in nine and 13. PCs are often in six or nine, and I would argue that accessory spaces in residences meet the definition of PC, but the city does not require a special permit for them.
Right. Now, I think the most obvious reason is that you characterized it on your, on your application, on your AL1, as use group six.
Yes.
As opposed to use group two, had you just characterized it as use group two, you might, you probably would have gotten as accessory.
Yeah, yeah. So, DOB, given that, I mean, DOB kind of has definitely clearly approved this approach. Prior to the start of construction, there was a ZRD1 submitted to DOB requesting determination that the private membership PC be accessed through the same residential lobby and elevator of the building as the residential units. The ZRD1 fully disclosed that the facility be privately owned and operated establishment, and will be restricted, private membership facility, they'll only allow members from the residential units of the property and will not be open to the public. In its determination, DOB indicated its affirmation that the fitness club is a PC. Had DOB determined otherwise or objected, the space would not have been designed as a fitness club, because there wasn't available floor area for it to be accessory. So, I think basically because we meet the findings of the special permit, which is, it won't impair, the use will not impair the essential character or future use of the development of the area, we'd be eligible for its grant. With that, I can turn to the other questions that were raised by the board yesterday. So, there were questions about the outdoor space and how success access the ninth level.
Barack, take the microphone with you.
Yeah. So, we're here at the ninth level, residents come up to the elevator bank. Those residents that have PC membership, not all do, some may pay, some don't have the membership, are permitted to enter with a key card into the actual facility, and all residents, whether they have a membership or not, can exit out into the amenity space without actually entering this door or these other doors that lead to the primary space. Technically, this corridor probably should have been shaded out as not part of the PC, in so much as it's a common accessory space to both the accessory use or the PC, we could amend that if necessary. That might have caused some confusion.
Yes. So there's one door, which is probably required for egress, there's one door from the swimming pool that goes into the common corridor, so is that an egress door, or, the swimming pool has two doors to get into it, see? One is from the inside of the PCE, and one is from the outside of the PCE. So that, that's one of the reasons that I was asking, it looked like anyone can go to the swimming pool without being a member.
This, this door, the way it swings, and I will get confirmation on this, I believe it would be an egress door from the swimming pool, as opposed to the entrance, so those inside of the needs to egress, to egress out, but this would be the primary entrance into the kind of common area of the fitness space, into the pool here. This corridor is a part of the PC, because of the bathrooms and the bodies.
Right. Okay. It's just a way to understand, you know, how you get to exclude that outdoor area from this, right?
This door, as I understand, is locked from that, from that.
Which, sorry, which door? Use your, wait, wait for your phone.
This door right here, I think is what you're questioning, is how to go, would proceed from the corridor right into the pool. A member of, an occupant of the building who's not a member of the PC cannot enter that door, it would be locked, I think you'd need a fob to exit.
Okay. Okay, and then, the way to get in, onto the level of just the outdoor, point to where the doors are that gets to the outdoors.
So here's an elevator bank, and you can go right out to the dog run, or right out to the amenity space without ever entering the PCE.
And what about where you can enter from, go outside via the PCE?
There is, when you're inside the PC, there is one additional means of egress out to the amenity space.
So I guess that's the one that arguably is the issue, like how do we know that that's not really associated with the PCE?
There's no fitness equipment out there, there's no instruction taking place out there, it's just used for lounge, lounge spaces similar to this area here. It's an extension, it gives residents the ability to have another view off the side of the building. It's not meant to be an extension or used by the PC. It does not prevent someone who's in the PC to exit from this door if necessary, but this is not, you cannot enter back through this door.
Oh, why not?
Unless you're a PC member, there would be a key fob to enter back in.
There's a fob to get in that way?
So...
Okay. How do we know there's a fob?
I have been told there's a fob to get into, yes. We have.
Okay, maybe that's, maybe what we should do, just to clarify, so, and you know, the clarification for this is so that it's not used by another PCE later to not have, to be taking advantage of the outdoor space when they really shouldn't, okay? Because this is so different, it's part of the building, right?
We recognize PC is not allowed on the rooftop in this district.
Yeah, so, and we had a situation like this recently in the same area, so, okay. Are there speakers on this? Any other comments from anybody? Okay. So, I don't think we had any other open issues, right? Anything? Counsel?
Get some questions on noise attenuation that I could address, but...
Yeah. Right, so if you, yeah, if you would, I'm just curious about the swimming pool...
Right.
...attenuation.
It's a little bit clearer in the sections that we provided you as well. The swimming pool does drop down about five feet into this crawl space, but there's another, this is a total of a 20-foot mechanical space, so there's still 15 feet of area between this and the school below. The letter from the school principal also indicates they have no issue whatsoever with the PC. Above, here is a mechanical space that separates the fitness center and club from the residential units above. It's true that the swimming pool kind of, the volume of space dedicated... The volume of space dedicated to the swimming pool does not include this mechanical space. But what's there instead is a dropped drywall ceiling. This is a lighting alcove. And in this entire space is ductwork, piping, electrical, and stuff like that.
I don't think they're dropping many weights in the swimming pool.
No, it's not the dropping of the weights. The swimming pools are sources of terrible echo. And so you could be lying in bed. If that would... See, I didn't understand that that's a plenum with mechanical, because that's not what the drawing is showing, right? But if you're lying in bed and that's the... And that were actually the floor right below you of the swimming pool, you would hear kids shouting in the swimming pool.
Through the echo.
That may be true in a swimming pool that allows children to congregate.
Okay. I'm just using kids shouting in the swimming pool.
Absolutely.
Don't shout in swimming pools, too.
There are two units above, which we care very much that noises not impact them. There have been no complaints. And this is a lap pool. Two people are loud at a time. That's it.
Okay.
So we don't expect kids to be making any noises there.
When did this open?
December 2016.
What about access and egress on the first floor?
Say it once more louder.
There was a question about access and egress on the first floor.
There was. One of the plans I gave to the commission, there is a first-floor plan that demonstrates all the access. There's also a letter of no objection from the fire department with respect.
Wait a minute, here?
Yeah. There is a first-floor plan.
First-floor plan. It's a busy plan. Tell me where? This is property. Retail, retail. Where's the front door? How do you get... Oh. So this is the thing. There is no specific entrance to this PC. You just go in the general building lobby, right?
Yes. The PC is accessed through the residential lobby, residential elevator core. That was the basis of the ZRD1.
Which is over on the left. Okay. So... Okay. On the left, where it says pedestrian circulation space next to retail number one, is the entrance to the residential lobby. And then you go to the elevator, you go home, you grab your stuff, you get back in the elevator, and you go down. Right?
Well, you go in the elevator, maybe you go to your unit, you grab your stuff.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then you go back down. So, okay. So the only thing that's relevant then, because the access is not part of the PC, right? Normally, we include the access as part of the PC, is where the fire stairs are. So you have fire stair two and this other one stair A. The drawings are kind of hard to read.
Yeah, these are pretty technical drawings. These are pretty detailed.
Yeah.
I'm very confident the building is fully complying with all fire codes.
No, that's not about... It's not about that. It's that we usually require a plan that shows the egress route from the PC out to the street. That's a standard part of our review, right? That's for fire department and... And it's included as part of the... What makes the PC a habitable space or a usable space, right? So we don't have this in our submission. I'm wondering whether... What time is it? Three?
Let me switch the dial.
Let me just get to the drawings. 2019-72 or 172? I'm just looking to see whether it would be possible for you to quickly do a first-floor plan.
Did you submit that to the board?
This isn't submitted. It's just a very detailed drawing.
No, we just brought these... We just got these today to bring to the...
Yeah. These are too detailed. They have like... They show, you know, all the bicycle storage lockers and everything like that.
You'd want a simplified diagram.
Yeah, like you have already for your...
Two means of egress.
You want to... Yeah. These drawings are very simple. So let me just say that... Sorry? Fire department has something? There's only one means.
John Daly, Fire Department. I'm looking at Plan A106. They show a scissors stair.
Yes.
So they have there two means of egress.
No, but usually we show the scissors stair there at labs and how you get out of the building.
Oh, right, right.
But you know what's weird? I don't see a scissors stair. I can't find that stair. It's on the whatever side. The bottom side of the elevator lobby. I don't see a stair. Where is it? So the stair that's shown on the ninth-floor plan is just to the bottom, so the south of elevator four. When you look at elevator four on the first-floor drawings, there is no stair. And that stair that's exiting, however it exits, I guess to the surface corridor? I don't know. Estable two on drawing A102, which you don't have in your set. I don't see how this scissors stair exits out of the building.
We can get clarification from the architect if it's not clear. There may be a corridor that changes the location of the stairs, but not directly below and above each other.
Right. There's a part plan of a transfer stair between first and second. So we had...
Oh, there is?
Yes.
You have something else.
Yeah. Plan 102.05.
Yeah, that's the first floor...
Bottom left is a detail.
I'm sure in an upper floor, they must have split the scissors stairs that you would come down one stair, enter a corridor, and then down another stairs out to the street. Then the... Another stair, of course, into a corridor, down to the first-floor lobby, and exit through the concierge, through the residential lobby.
I don't know. So that staircase that is at column 64, I guess? The drawings are so little, it's really hard to see. Yeah. It's in here somewhere, but I can't find it.
You want to see it. We can get you a dotted line that gets the passage to safety.
Yeah. I mean, that's really what we always want to see, that it's just not kind of an existential space, right? Okay. And normally, if we had more time, you might be able to do that for second call, but I don't know if there's time.
Today, you mean?
Yeah.
You draw it on, kind of.
Right. Not draw it on, but you'd call up the architect, and the architect would... Would you?
Architect is not present with us.
They don't need to be present.
We could call him, and if we can get an explanation, if you don't mind, we would be happy to finish.
It's more than an explanation. They do a quick little sketch.
Let's even get back to it.
That shows what the egress is, using the same kind of level of drawing that you've got on the PC drawings as opposed to this.
And they would messenger it down today?
They would email it to submit.
Email would be okay? We can find out.
Sign and send it.
It might be difficult to get that produced this quickly this afternoon.
Yeah.
I would love to try.
Give it a try. Okay, we can try second call.
Okay.
Okay. Let me just make sure there's nothing else. Did we leave anything else out? No. I think that was it. Okay.
Item number three, 2019-183BZ, 200 West 41st Street, Manhattan. Sorry, 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 sorry. Yeah, yeah. Swearing cheek. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions? Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnick PC. I made a submission this morning, and I'm going to hand it out. Okay. So firstly, I would like to state that, I guess although it appears that this PC is open, it's not open. There's just the signs there, because it cannot operate without showers. So they're not opening until they have showers. And they need to get a PC in order to get showers. And then... So now I'm going to go through the plans, through the plan comments. So on drawing BSA 002... Tell me when you're ready to go. I'm sorry.
This one?
Not open.
What are we doing? 002?
Two. The plans have been revised to provide a first-floor plan to show the lobby and ADA entrance. There are five elevators, and three of them go to the third floor.
Okay.
On drawing BSA 004, the plans have been...
Sorry, just a question. So stair one egresses to the street. Where does stair two egress to?
I don't know.
And do we care? I mean, is it required for us? Finished plan of... Yeah, stair two is required for us. Where does it egress to?
Stair two.
They both are exiting to the lobby, which unless it's grandfathered or something in this building, isn't allowed.
200 West 41st. An existing building. Stair two, stair two. I'm not sure where stair two goes. Do you know it's a really old building?
So that's the thing, you know? It might be a grandfathered condition. Maybe fire department would comment on it. Maybe it's an existing, you know, the staircase has been there forever, and then you're...
Yeah, I mean, he wrote a letter of no objection, but I don't know what that's based off.
Right. But that's... This is a different question. This is does... He didn't have these plans for the first floor. So the issue is that both fire stairs appear to be exiting through the same lobby. And maybe this is just an old building, and that's just the way it is.
All right, I only have the PC.
And you didn't have these drawings before they were just submitted, the first-floor
John Daly, Fire Department. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Fire department doesn't have any objection, because the two stairs are remote from each other.
Oh. Even though they exit at the ground at the same place?
Yeah, into a common lobby. We have no objection to that.
Okay. Okay. That's interesting. So building code and fire department are not in the same place.
I'm sorry.
No, but I think that this is a pre-61 building. Does that sound right?
Correct, yes.
Certificate of occupancy was issued in 1936.
Yeah, okay.
The side of the building looks really old, so...
Yeah. Okay. So that's what it is. It's a pre-61 building, and you put up with all kinds of stuff. Okay, thank you.
Very fine. Thanks for enlightening the mood. Okay, sorry. BSA 004. The plans have been revised to show two exit stairs. Stair one leads to the lobby, and stair two leads to the cellar to the street. Oh, there. That answers kind of.
Oh.
Stair two. I just should have kept going. Stair two leads through the cellar to the street. Sorry, I didn't remember what I wrote at 9:00 AM. I was half asleep.
Oh, it's because you... I guess you don't have the cellar.
Yeah, but the architect explained all... Like, wrote me an email that explained all of these things. I did not make them up. On drawing BSA 006, the plans have been revised to provide an acoustic plan with details on BSA 007, and they were based on the recommendations of the acoustical report that we provided from Acoustalog. And you noticed that one of the items said that trainers will make sure they don't drop weights, but that was in addition to numerous other recommendations. There was a full page of recommendations?
So they said that this was done in response to Acoustalog's recommendations, right? That's what the architect said.
Yes.
But what are they? Like, that's what I mean. It's like...
I can... I mean, it's a whole page of recommendations, but I can't...
No, we saw the Acoustalog recommendations, but...
But like, if you look at BSA 006, you can see it's keyed to where they are. Like, key one, provide two extension springs for each bag, and the spring should be augmented with an aircraft cable.
Ah, okay. So we didn't have this before?
No, that's what's new. That's what I'm saying. BSA 006 is a new acoustical plan, and then the details of the spring platform detail and the non-rated partition are on BSA 007.
That's the one we had before, right?
I'm not sure what you had before.
Yeah, we did.
I'm sorry, but I know she updated both of these. And you didn't have them before.
Okay.
And she said, according to acoustical, the acoustical report, the fourth floor, the floor above the PC, will not be impacted except the music sound. The test has been done and indicated in the report. The sound is inaudible, page three. Therefore, ceiling insulation is not necessary since the building is a concrete structure and the concrete slab is enough for soundproofing. The second floor is where the acoustics will be largely impacted. Additional attenuation methods will be provided as per the recommendations for the report, and that's what's on BSA 006. And I would like to remind the board that this is a commercial building.
Yeah, but...
Yeah. And they did this whole Acoustalog because they know that this is something you've been bringing.
Right. But a commercial building where I'm hearing what they call the loud rumbling of the treadmills try to work with...
Yeah. But that's why they also then implemented these items and tested it, and then are going to implement when they open, these BSA 006 items.
So the place where this floating platform is, that's shown in BSA 007, it says spring platform detail. How do I know where that is?
Spring platform...
Detail.
Detail. Well, spring...
So it's on O.
Because it says spring pla... It says floating detail. I'm looking. Spring detail.
Something's called a floating platform.
Floating detail. Floating platform, I can't really tell. But it does say, note, the floating platforms cannot originally touch the walls or columns. So I think that it's probably on the floating platform.
That's what I mean by key to drawings. There's a spring platform detail, looks nice. How do I know where that is? It could be number one... No, it couldn't be number one. It could be number three, provide a floating platform with carpeted cross-link foam. But it does... That doesn't look like the picture. No carpeted cross-link foam in the picture. No carpeted cross-link foam in the picture. Engineering hardwood floor.
Oh, it says-
No engineering hardwood floor.
It says two and three. And it says the notes, platform construction details on BSA 007. In the, in the sound attenuation methods, no, or getting?
Platform con- So, but the information doesn't match. Platform construction details, so then number two, so in other words, this tall platform is going to be underneath the bikes and rowing machines? And also against, in that little 10 by 10 lifting platform?
Yeah, so it's going to be two, it's going to be where, according to two, and one, yeah, so it's going to be underneath it.
Not the best, but okay. For, for future note, just because when you're looking at someone else's drawings, there's, there are like standard ways to key drawings, where, where for example, that little detail on page 007, this is for you for a few, right?
So they should put one or two?
It should say like, yeah, detail one, detail two, and then, on 007, and then you go to the drawing, it's the plan, and it'll say detail one, 007. Then we know it's there. We don't have to guess, because the language in your little chart here doesn't match at all the language in the detail. So one's a floating platform, one's a spring platform, like, they don't match, so you don't know that they're the same thing. Right? I, you know, I just want you to be aware of it, so the next time when you see these, you can say to the architect, no, actually not clear, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so they're hanging the bags now. Extension springs for each bag with an aircraft cable. That sounds nice. What in the world is an aircraft cable? But never mind.
I think she, she told me she took these directly from the-
Okay. Okay, so this work needs to be actually done?
Even though it's, how is it, it's not open?
Oh, it's not, yeah, okay, it's not open? I thought this was legalization.
That's why I thought it was-
Oh, you said, no, not legalization, because they don't have showers. Yeah, but it's not open if they're just waiting to turn the showers on?
I don't think that a lot of stuff is in.
Okay, okay, so they really need to take these measures?
Yeah.
Before they open, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this one really is a proposed piece. I know we don't usually get those, because people can't wait.
Right. All right. I think that's it. Oh, we don't have DOI, or we do, what happened?
We do.
We do?
Yeah, it was put in the folder yesterday.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this? You're all right? Okay.
Just a minor note, there's two BSA 02s.
Yeah.
Oh, what?
So the second BSA 02, I imagine, is 03.
Oh, one is existing and one is proposed.
Oh, okay. Existing, it, no, they both say existing.
That's a full set, though, at least?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you emailed that today, right? That I know you emailed.
Oh, yeah, they're both 02, and one's the first floor and one's the third floor. Can we fix that really fast? Second call it?
Um, I think whatever.
All she has to do is fix the number. She can do, if three's already taken, no, three's not taken.
Three is available.
Three's available.
I don't think she did that. She said she gets that.
Yeah, that's what always happens. That's what happens when you rush. Okay. Try second call. You just need to add the number three. Don't forget to sign and seal.
Okay.
Today's date.
Can I, since I already submitted this morning, can I literally just forward to add a couple of letter submission notice? Sorry, because then I have to take extra time.
Are we going to be picking about?
This part of it, I don't have an opinion.
All right, I need the submission, and I need a hard copy submitted the next day with this date.
I'm sorry, I can try to do it, just going to think another one.
All right. Okay. Everybody keeps forgetting to submit the hard copy to the office. Ah.
Not second call.
Yep.
Okay.
Second call. That's a second call. I'm going to do a second call for her.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Goldstein.
I don't feel like, I just really don't believe this thing.
Item number four, 2019, 254 BZ, 415 Red Hook Lane, Brooklyn.
Oh, what does that say? Oh, that's, that's from the neighbors.
Yeah, it's written in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes. I got this right. Thanks. Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. He had submitted yesterday's review session. As a threshold matter, the affidavit of service which we submitted said that we tried to post it ourselves in the lobby. We were not allowed. We handed the doorman five notices. We went yesterday, took pictures of the notice, which is actually in the residential lobby. That was submitted. The first page is the notice in the frame. Second page, we took it out of the frame just to show you what the notice says. So it's the notice that says-
So this, they said they, it wasn't allowed, but-
No, they said we were not allowed to do it. The doorman called management, and we left him five notices, and they posted it themselves. So we just confirmed yesterday. So I think that answers that question. It's been there since we put it up, and it was there as of yesterday. The second question yesterday was with regard to the heavy bags that seemingly were attached to the ceiling of the building. So apologies if it wasn't clear, we've updated the proposed plans to add an additional ad sheet A004, an additional note that says, see detail A1, uh, sorry, 1-A-007.
Wait, 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 slow down. A004?
Right, A004.
Okay.
While we're on this page, the bottom half says discharge from stair to Livingston Street. The top of the page says discharge from stair to Red Hook Lane. Those are our two egresses that are noted on the plans.
Okay, good.
Directly above the discharge to Livingston Street, there's a, there's a new detail that says, see detail 1A007 for punching bag connection. So if you look at the second set of plans, which are our sound attenuation plans, we've done two things. Number one, in sheet A007 gives you the actual detail of the punching bag, and sheet A005, we added the punching bag detail to the sound attenuation details. Sound attenuation shows that it's, with most of our gyms, especially this one, it's a box within a box, and it shows how the punching bag is attached to the bottom of the floating box, not to the building.
Good answer. Box in box, okay.
I, I believe that was the only question.
That was it?
Do you have any other questions?
Impressive. Love the box in boxes. I don't know if we've ever had any complaints on a gym that had a box in a box. Everyone should do it, really. You don't want to have complaints. Okay. Um, we have everything else. PCE, got it. Are there any speakers on this one? Okay. Any comments and anything else from the board? No? All right, so I'd like to make a motion.
I think we should take a really slow motion to give my colleagues some time.
Oh, so these were submitted?
Everything was submitted yesterday.
Signed and sealed, somebody recognized, submitted?
Cover letters, dated. Dated yesterday.
Do we, who's is it?
Hard copies are in.
Julie, you saw this?
Hard copy of this.
Everything's in here.
Okay.
I got the email to submit.
You got the email to submit, okay.
Yeah, the email we have.
And the hard copy you said was submitted?
Hard copies are there as of this morning. We had them clocked in.
Thank you. Love you. So I, just making a note to counsel, I guess, the, there's two separate sets of drawings here that are, that are numbered in a way that you can do inserts, so it actually has like one, two, three, four, and then it skips to nine. And then there's a separate set here that's five, six, five, six, seven, and eight. So it's all the numbers, but it's in two separate packages.
It comes as one package, and I separate it to have a sound attenuation exhibit and a proposed plan exhibit, just for ease of contrast.
But when you submitted it, you did it as one solid?
No, I kept my numbering the same, but it's the same. That is what was submitted.
Okay, so just to note that you should put it in the right order when you, okay, good. So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Commissioner Altley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chabetta?
Aye.
And I motion to grant on condition that all of the attenuation details that are shown are implemented or have been implemented.
They're in place.
Yeah, okay.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Commissioner Altley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Chabetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Item number five, 2019, 268 BZ, 1938 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okie dokie, everybody raise their right hand. Second seat, thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Good.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is David Rosenberg of Sheldon Lodelle PC. On behalf of the applicant, I'm joined today by Alexander Finkelstein, a representative of applicant, Robert Palermo, the architect of record, Julia Rata of his office, as well as Aviva Laurenti of Sam Schwartz Engineering, our traffic consultant, and we hope to address many of the board's comments. Yesterday at the review session, we understand, Chair, that you raised specific concerns about the nature of the application, the building, I, you know, as an applicant's representative, and I think the applicant as well understands those concerns. But we also point to that, unlike most special permits in Article VII, Chapter III of the zoning resolution, 7344 is one of the few that actually address the intent. Generally, special permits rely on finding, unless only, but, and specifically here, the finding about intent is about the applicant's intent to use the space as office, and this, and I think some ways bolstered by the chair's misgivings in the application, I think that the applicant made clear their intent that, were they granted the special permit, to use the space as offices. And as we discussed, we meet all of the other findings of this special permit that we can discuss further. With respect to the stackers that were brought up about the height in speaking with the architect and with the manufacturer, and we have the, I have documents to support it, I just don't have the sworn certification statement yet to submit to the record, but we will subsequently that these were a custom build, slightly modified of the stackers for the technical specifics, and these are designed to be able to fit four cars within the 24 feet, approximately six or nine inches off the plans, whatever it is, but we will submit the documents that show how that works, and the architect is here who can discuss that a little bit more, and we can at least, we have visuals to be able to demonstrate that. This morning, we received the letter of objection from the fire department with respect to some of the concerns here, that they are asking that we submit the application for technical review. I've discussed this before with the fire department earlier this afternoon to discuss some of the points, and I think that we understand what the fire department is requesting, and we can discuss this a little bit more. Specifically, the bulletin that was submitted, that was submitted to back up the fire department's request that this be submitted for technical review, was, A, put in effect after this building was approved by the Department of Buildings, and also is written specifically to apply for cantilevers that exist over adjacent buildings or adjacent tax lots. Here is neither. But we understand the fire department's concern and think that this can be resolved in some way or another. With respect to the Department of, with DEP and their request for Phase One, we don't think that it's necessary at this point, just because this site has gone through extensive remediation and extensive review by the State Department of Environmental Conservation. But if DEP is not going to budge on that, then we will prepare Phase One in short order for their review. With respect to the traffic study, we also don't think that review by the Department of Transportation here is necessary if it will result in a delay of the application. The traffic consultant is here to talk about the methodology that is generally consistent with what SECA requires and actually uses other study, or other baseline studies that take far more conservative estimates about parking for community facility, and parking demand for community facility uses than what some of the more recent approved environmental impact statements would show. And even in that event, the peak parking demand here is significantly lower. The peak parking demand in the study is significantly lower than the parking that's actually provided on-site.
Well, that's based on the assumptions of the splits in the data and so on, so-
Yes, which-
That's, that's the question.
Yeah.
Is DOT okay with your assumptions? They often ask us to have some change to reverse journey to work or something like that, right?
And Sam Schwartz Engineering can get up and speak to that a little bit more, but we have taken a fairly conservative estimate here. With respect also to Commissioner Altley-Brown's concern about the walkway there, the architect is here and can speak directly to what that walkway is, the arrangement. I think that the instinct of the board yesterday, that in these plans, the idea is that people go in through the lobby and meet their car at the end, is the proposed layout. The entrances that go to that pathway are really there for the valet staff. However, we also, with respect to screening, the fire department has also raised concerns that any kind of screening mechanism between that walkway and the stackers is a potential obstruction in their ability to be okay with the stacker layout, which would need to be addressed. And so any kind of screening that the board would want there would need to be addressed in tandem with what the fire department needs to be able for access.
So you're saying that when you come in, where do you drop the car off then?
Right at the drive, right at the driveway, without pulling, so-
You don't go into the property line?
Yeah. The dri- individual drivers would not enter to, onto the property.
So what does that mean? So you stop on the sidewalk, is that what you mean?
They would stop somewhere there, I think that they can, and speak the logistics.
Don't think that's allowed, right?
Please state your name.
Robert Palermo, I'm the principal architect. The concept here is that they would drive their cars into the driveway on our own property. The valet would then direct them into the building or, or whatever, and he would park their cars in the stackers.
Through what? Through which door?
There are several doors. We have three or four doors. There are two doors directly into the, there's one door in the lobby and one door in the rear elevator lobby. So they have two alternate ways of getting in. They could also, depending on how they discharge their vehicle, they could walk back out onto the sidewalk and enter into the lobby directly. We have a valet station in the lobby, and that's mostly for pickup.
So, but you don't have any kind of reservoir space, so if there's one person coming, then everyone waits in the street, right?
Well, not necessarily. It's not a high-traffic parking area, so what we would do, basically, the valet would ask the, the drivers to pull up more into the driveway rather than right at the lot line. So you could queue up two cars or three. Depending on where they're going, the valets are going to position the cars.
That means you're going into the building then, correct?
No, you're going into the property. You're going more into the property.
I mean, not the building, but the open parking area.
Yeah, no dri- no driver would be permitted to park his car in a stacker. At that point, he's already keyed over the, the keys to the valet.
So was it possible that you could somehow sketch in that information on the driveway, on the driveway that's here, so we could see, like, theoretical queuing spots?
A queue-up lane? Yes, absolutely. We could do that.
With an egress path or the, for the pedestrian while the driver, once he gets out of his car? Because the other part of it is, what if somebody wants to leave while you have cars parked in the, in this drive-up? This is only a one-at-a-time situation, because you don't have enough width between the front of the car or the back of the car, depending on how you do this. I guess it's the back of the car. You don't have enough space between the back of the car and the property and the fence to have another car coming out.
We, we do have the space. We have, I think it's 18 or 19 feet, so we could queue up two lines if we had to.
No, you don't have, it says 19 feet to the, I don't know what that thing is, the rail or something? But your, the boxes that are on the drawings look like they're the 18-foot depth of the car.
Mm-hmm.
So you, it looks more like you have, I don't know, 16 feet between the back of the car and-
The driveway is 16 feet. The back of the car basically is measured in various permutations.
Right, but you're allowing always an eight and a half by 18 foot, right?
Yes.
And then that's how you determine what the drive area is. Your drive area is only wide enough for one car at a time, it looks. So one width of car. So though you could have, say, two or three cars standing there blocking the stackers, so then I kind of don't understand how you do this.
Again, it's not a high-volume parking area. This is not transient parking or public parking. It's for the building. So we don't anticipate anything more than several minutes of a wait time for the valets to jockey the car.
Even at 9:00 AM or whenever?
Well, the valet would then be accustomed to what the traffic flow is in the building.
Which means what?
Well, basically, they, they would probably open the lobby earlier for early arrivals, and normally the occupants get acclimated to what the best times are to leave the building and arrive.
Sorry, I don't understand that. If I have to be, if all of us have to be at the office at 9:00, how do you acclimate? Or whatever you said.
Yeah, and so we have the traffic consultant here who can also speak to this, just in terms of the accumulation analysis, and that's including the parking study, and understanding that the board wants the Department of Transportation to review these assumptions as well. that the board wants the Department of Transportation to review these assumptions as well. In any one hour, the total movement here really doesn't, is, within the hour, doesn't get very high, to the point that it couldn't be managed. And so I'm looking here, I have the page count on here, but this is Table 3 of the parking analysis. Shows the, shows the in and out based on the hourlies and also the accumulation.
Hi, I'm Aviva Laurenti with Sam Schwartz Engineering. So in Table 3 of the traffic study, we do show the hourly ins and outs into the parking facility. And so in most in the morning, you'll have 13 vehicles coming in in an hour, and in the evening, you'll have at most 14 leaving in an hour. And the office space is only one element of this site, so I don't anticipate that during the morning, Pete, there'll be a huge rush of people coming for the office use.
But you have, between the hours of 9:00 and 10:00, you have 17 accumulated cars, where in is, in is...
In is 10.
Five, six, is 11, 13 cars in.
If you look at the third-to-last column, you'll see the total in for all the uses. So from 8:00 to 9:00, there's 13.
Okay, so that's 13 in, in an hour.
Correct.
So, and some of them actually want to go out. So that, I guess that's my question. If 13 people stand, kind of waiting somehow or other to get in, I need to get to the office. I get in trouble if I don't get there by 9:00, right? So, what do I do?
Sure, but the office is actually only five of those vehicles?
Well, the community facility is also an office, right?
Community facility is more of a community center, but, you know, we don't anticipate that, you know, when you get to work, it's not like a government agency where everyone has to be there exactly 8:00 o'clock and punch the clock. There'd be some distribution of traffic.
Let's just say it's an office building where, yes, everyone has to get there and punch the clock.
People generally have to be there at the same time in the morning, and...
Right, so...
We can't say that they're going to stagger their entry because traffic and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just going off of your own data. Your data says that within an hour, 13 people arrive for whatever purpose, right? Just using your chart, right? And so they arrive, I have 13 people kind of jockeying to get in, and according to your data, even two people want out for some reason that it's hard to understand, because they got there at 7:00 and they want, they did what they had to do and they want out, right? So I don't understand how, in this layout where there's only one way they get out, and how 13 people get racked up into these stackers within some reasonable throughput time. And you don't need to know the answer right now, but you need to give us the answer, because it's not really believable at the moment, right?
Sure, I mean, the standard analyses are not assuming that everyone arrives exactly at the same time in the morning, so there is going to be some distribution of traffic, and like the architect said, there is some flexibility to store extra vehicles within the property.
Okay, so, again, we're using your data, and if the standard analysis says that the 13 people don't arrive, what's 13 people in an hour? It's like every three minutes or something, right? If they don't arrive in every three minutes, which is not a lot of minutes, how are they arriving? Again, it's from your data that we're asking the question.
Sure, I mean, that's part of the design of the site, so that's for the architect to speak to.
Somebody has to know.
We're going to go back and speak with parking operators and determine exactly how they envision this working with the data.
Right.
Now we have a place.
Yes, okay. Are these already purchased, these lifts?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Are they on-site? No. No, because the building's still under construction. So they're already fabricated or just requisitioned?
They're fabricated.
If you speak, you have to come up.
You have to speak, you have to come up to the podium, sorry.
Hi, I'm Alex Mickelson. Lifts are fabricated, ready to be installed.
Ah, okay. So you can get us, instead of giving us those cut sheets that are not relevant to actually what's being installed, can you can get us actual shop drawings for these lifts? And how it can handle four in such a short height?
We did receive these drawings from the manufacturer. I'll show these to you. These will also be submitted digitally with the certification from the manufacturer.
So they show, it says 24 foot absolute minimum. And what did we have?
John?
24 foot six. Very educational. We have people come in who say in 24-foot-six heights, they can't do quadruple stackers. Then we have shop drawing that says they can do quadruple stackers. I feel love science. All right, what else did we have? All right, I think that was it. Any other comments, questions from the board? I mean, you know, one of the things that I just remember from another application we had, where they had so many cars that they had to park really fast in a, in a parking garage that was very, very active, they showed us this terrific throughput model that actually showed how the cars were received in the garage, how long it took to actually get them into place. In that case, it was very sophisticated. It was on a turntable, how fast the turntable turned and put the car in the spot. It was incredible. It was like a two-minute throughput or something like that, or it was less, right? And so, that's kind of what we're used to hearing when we ask these questions, like, how in the world does this really work if you're increasing the number of people in the building? And I know you're relying on your data that says only, whatever it is, 18 people will have cars, but like, what if you're wrong? You're increasing the population significantly, right?
If you can also address the sedan SUV...
Speak up, speak up, Larry.
So the, if you can address the likelihood of sedans or SUVs, it looks like SUVs are only be, can only be placed on the bottom stacker of the stackers, not any of the higher levels?
Yeah, and so, in order to get, to get the four deep on the stackers, that the SUVs can only be at the bottom. You know, our projected parking demand is significantly lower than what the spaces are, which gives us the room for flexibility in the event of a higher proportion of SUVs.
How's that? How's that work? So you have eight positions. What do you do if you have 10, 14 SUVs? According to this spec, you know, get to put an SUV on another level.
Well, you can't, it won't fit.
And so that's something we'll work with the, with an operator to determine how they would address that situation. Unfortunately, and we've looked for any kind of data that talks about percentage of cars on the road in Brooklyn, especially the data definitely certainly doesn't exist in census tract form, and at best, it's anecdotal about what percentage of SUVs. So we will address, in also addressing the maneuverability of the parking area and showing it, work with the parking operators to see what they would do in a situation like that.
Are the platform heights adjustable?
No.
Where it doesn't have to be, you know, a certain, like, five and, five feet, three-quarters of an inch apart from the other platform? Can it be made like six feet, and then the next one up is four feet, and...
I just want to see if this is something that we have, is included in the specifications for the others, but this is certainly something that we can address.
But if they adjust it, that means that they're going to lose some spaces, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're saying their accumulation is 18, so...
Right.
Is it possible that if you have, I don't know, 18, what, 18 free spots or 16 free spots, you can actually adjust those platforms differently, so you could accommodate an SUV in the first and the second?
Right.
Maybe three SUVs instead of four cars.
SUVs, basically, two levels of SUVs.
Yes, so it notes over here on Page 7 of the technical specifications, that the distance between two rows of lifts can be configured from 60 inches to 72 inches, so I guess you're from five to six feet.
What? There should say that? We don't have that.
For clearances, on Page 7 of the technical specifications from the manufacturer.
But we don't, we don't have that, right?
No, the board does have this. Was submitted...
Page 7, you said?
Yeah. December 30th. These are, these are for the generic lifts.
Oh, but this is custom, so we don't know whether the generic freezes it in place or, right? We don't know.
And so we will confirm, yes.
Because you give to make it shorter, right? Something has to give. Maybe it's the mechanism that gives. Okay. All right. Is there actually a parking consultant on this job?
Yes, Sam Schwartz Engineering of Aviva Laurenti is here.
But they're designing the parking because when...
They did not design the...
That's my question. I know they're, they're, they're like an engineering study firm, right? In this particular case, right? But they're not the parking consultant who is saying, this is how you make a good parking garage, this is how you make it an efficient parking garage. I know that Sam Schwartz does that sometimes.
The parking here, though, I also note, has been reviewed by the Department of Buildings and approved for, for all of their requirements for the attended parking facility.
Right, but that's not our question. We're trying to understand operations. Yeah, if you speak, you must come up, but the, the, that doesn't address the parking operations, and when we have a parking consultant on the job, one who's actually designing it, then they can say, well, when we design it, the following things happen, the technology allows for us to do X, Y, Z, all that stuff. And so, if there's somebody like that working on this project, that person should be here to answer it.
If they already fabricated the stackers...
Yeah, it's fabricated.
They should have somebody who's able to come before us and like...
That's true, yeah. So maybe you can get a rep from the fabricator.
We will do our best.
Okay.
All right. I reached out to the community board to try and get a copy of the report digitally. He was going to look for it, the district manager. He said, basically, the board felt there was a real lack of parking in the area and was uncomfortable with the parking reduction combined with the use group change. He thought the facts on the ground were different from the parking statement. But he hasn't sent me the...
And I can speak a little bit to this, having been the one to present at the community board. So this is an area where anyone who goes there, we were clear, we, you know, made no bones about this at the community board, that it's an area that is suffering from a lack of parking. There are any number of uses there. This block particularly has been, has historically been home to a number of automotive uses that, as we know here, tend to park cars on the streets and put cars wherever they want. And there are a lot of people who think that there's no parking. To quote some of the members of the Land Use Committee, you can have the best consultants in the world, no one's going to convince me that there is enough parking on the stretch of Coney Island Avenue. And we, I don't think we dispute the availability of on-street parking. But the essence of the 7344 application is not so much to alleviate the on-street parking conditions, it's to ensure that the project itself is not exacerbating those. And so, our proposed parking more than meets the demand of our building and is not going to change any of the, is not going to exacerbate the parking condition there. The community board felt, some of the comments ranged from, you know, why shouldn't, why shouldn't we just keep the community facility? Why, what's the benefit for us if we have offices? To, if your client gets offices, what do we get? In exchange, which are all valid concerns on the community board's part, but are not findings of the special permit.
Yeah, but your demand is based on theoretical evaluation. It's not based on actual measurements. And every, any analytical or theoretical evaluation has a margin of risk.
Yeah, absolutely, but...
And if you deviate from the demand that you evaluated, you're going to consume the available on-street parking, so we have a point to...
And so, all of SEACER, every SEACER application that goes through, we're always using models and based on something else to evaluate. But here, you know, there are some of these applications where you come in and someone will, and, you know, I'll come in with a client, we're proposing 20 parking spaces, and we show that our peak hour is 19. Here, we're providing 33 spaces on-site. Our peak demand is projected now to be 18. We understand that, you know, there are some questions about the methodology, and we're going to go back and we're going to deal with that. But based on the methodology that we have here, that we can get up and defend a little bit in more depth, even if we're 90% off, and we still have 15 spaces to play with, or we have the additional room for more parking. So, yes, granted, you always have to leave room for the margins, but we're not playing at the margins here. We're not coming in and saying that we're just under what our demand is, and so we've met our findings. We are down, of a total of 33 required spaces, that we're, the 33 spaces that we're proposing here, we have 15 in addition to what we're projecting to be peak demand. And so even if it's off, then we still have the room. If it's, if all of the methodology is completely wrong, then, yeah, there's a SEACER problem there, but I think we all have enough faith in SEACER to not be that far off from what reality is.
What I wanted to ask is, the sign, the advertising sign on the outside of the building suggests, more than suggests, states that the intent is to rent 30-something thousand square feet to offices. Where does that fit into our story?
30,000 square feet is impossible, is not a permitted use of offices at all. Under any circumstance here, this is a C-82 district which allows two FAR commercial areas. That's it.
But you also have a 4.8 FAR of community facility.
For community facility uses.
Right, which would include ambulatory care.
So, any, so the community centers are a specific use that is listed in Appendix A, and those are uses that, they're listed, I forget the terms, an older term for some kind of houses that really deal with community-facing uses, where someone comes in from the community, sees someone for services, leaves. Nonprofit offices or, you know, philanthropic, right, philanthropic, nonprofit or philanthropic institutions, offices would require a different, would trigger a different parking requirement than what community centers will trigger here, particularly if the concern is ambulatory and medical diagnostic space, that is a very, that is a dramatically higher parking requirement.
No, but it also qualifies for a special permit, so my...
It would require us to come here.
My ultimate question, are we going to be seeing you back for an amendment to this application? Because once you get in, you know, let's say, the 18-space model for modal splits and so on reveals that there's 15 spaces left, and so you come back for another X number of thousands of square feet of ambulatory care?
Right now, that's not planned, and I'm not sure that the parking requirements would support it. At a certain point, there's the baseline of the parking requirement for the retail. C-82 zones do require parking for retail. There will be some measure of community facility space that requires parking here. You know, the full community facility buildings, community center requires 26 spaces as of right. There's not an incredible amount of room here that, even if we sat and penciled out how much of the community facility space could we later change to use group for ambulatory diagnostic medical centers, and then reduce that by 50% and see if we can still fit in within the 32, within 32 or 33 spaces. I, my guess is that it's not that much. We haven't done the math, because it's not something that's done. I think also, the market conditions on Coney Island Avenue right now don't really support it. The stretch, there's a lot of C-8 in this area. There are a lot of other districts that have community facility bonuses, and there is a glut. I think what you hear from, from, I think the applicant can speak to this, I think other applications in this area show it, I think that other developers who look at various discretionary actions, whether they be BSI actions or actions down at city planning, talk about a glut of the, of the medical space in particular and community facility space in general, where there is a distinct lack of office space. Say, a large chunk of Coney Island Avenue across the street, there's a large community facility building. It's an RF-7A with a C-2 overlay, which allows for the community facility use in more or less the same density. Here, there just really isn't the market for additional community facility space. But, you know, if those plans change, and we come back for another special permit for, to change this use again, we're going to be right back, we're going to have to make our findings, and I think also to Commissioner Shett's point about the margins on the analysis, at that point, you're actually going to have data about what's happening at the site in addition to projecting based off of SEACER. And so we know that not just what does the methodology tell us about what the rates are, we'd actually have real data to say, this is what's happening here, this is what's not. Is the space actually available?
So, maybe the...
The short answer to the question is that it's not anticipated at the moment for us to come back.
I'm just confused, because there's these gigantic signs on the outside of the building that says for rent, 6,000 to 35,000 square feet of office space.
The applicant can speak more, but in many cases, a lot of that has to do with financing, and being able to give what gauge interest?
Wait, 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 wait. You're putting a sign on the outside of the building? What's that got to do with financing?
You can...
Do something.
It's in order to allow a lender to value what the building can actually get as commercial office, when you're in an area that doesn't have a lot of commercial office.
Yeah, that'd be misrepresenting to your lender. Your lender should be told what the zoning allows, and the zoning does not allow you to have 35,000 square feet of office space. And the idea that you go and you... And the idea that you go and you have the real estate broker, "Go get a sign made that misrepresents what's allowed to be in there," also is, let's say, leading a potential purchaser down the garden path or a potential renter down the garden path. So I think you should probably stop trying to make up answers and find out what the real answer is. Because I think, yeah.
Okay, we'll address it.
Okay.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Use it.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this one?
Just about the ECB violations and fines?
Oh, yeah. ECB violations have to be paid before we make any decisions.
That's understood.
Okay. Sorry, Fire Department?
Good afternoon. John Ely, Fire Department. Earlier this morning, I did submit a letter of objection. The Fire Department has a major concern with the location and the layout of the parking system. The... Our various units in the technical management had provided me with a copy of the Buildings Department bulletin regarding fire modeling. While it does reference cantilevered portions of buildings to adjacent lot or adjacent building, this is a good example for anyone to follow doing fire modeling. These parking stackers, we do consider them to be high pile storage.
High piles?
High pile storage. Top height is approximately 27 feet from the sketch I was showing, so...
It's 24 and 1/2 now.
24, okay, 24 and 1/2, so... And Fire Department is very concerned that, you know, because these are... We consider them high pile storage, that the hazard, in the event of a car do catching fire, that it's going to spread to the underside of the cantilevered portion of the building and travel upward. I do not know what the exterior construction of the building is. I'll have to do some further research. I do... Where our... One of our major concerns right now is having a repeat of Glensfell Tower that happened in London, where the fire actually went through the cavity in the building. So we're going to do some... I'll do some further research on that. Another thing I would like to bring up now, we can say... I found on the DOB website additional information. Now, I heard mention that these parking stackers are going to be custom-made. Now, an affidavit... A letter was filed by Harding Steel, the manufacturer of the parking system, that they were going to follow an approved MEA, Now, if they're altering the system contrary to this MEA, no, we'd like to have further stop drawings and details of how it's being altered. Another concern that we have now, the platform for the cars. If sprinklers were provided on the underside of the cantilever, well, that's good. It's partly good. But the platforms themselves are solid. So if a sprinkler head did go off, there was no... And the car fire was on the second or third or the street level of the stacker, water would never reach that area. Also, another problem that we have, car being 24 feet off grade, we have no access to it. We cannot... Since it's in a... In the driveway, we could not get a ladder truck down there and bring a ladder up.
Because it's too narrow.
Too narrow, yes. And so that's another concern. If, worst-case scenario, if the fire... Car fire was at the last stacker away from the street, we could not extend our ladder to reach that area because the weight would shift and the truck would fall sideways. And we could not ladder the... Those lifts with the portable ladders because really, we need a working area to attack it. My ex-project manager, who reviews parking stackers and automated parking garages, he informed me that they would want catwalks either at the rear of the stacker that's over that proposed walkway or in the front, which I don't think would be feasible. Another issue I do... We do have, in the walkway, they provide... They're going to provide screening to separate pedestrians from the stackers. That poses a big problem for the Fire Department in that we cannot access the rear of these stackers. And we are... As you may be aware, we are developing rules and regulations regarding sprinkler protection. Two heads over each car for the front and rear. We haven't developed anything for these electric cars because it has to be a phone system. So we're very concerned about these, all these various issues I brought up. And granted, that the application was approved after the DOB issued a bulletin, I think we need to do further research and also talk to the applicant and come up with a better idea so that... To relieve Fire Department concerns. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
Robert Baramo, Corporate Design. We have the greatest respect for the Fire Department. As architects, our livelihood is based on designing for life and safety of the public. We would never, ever intentionally design something we thought was hazardous. We have provided two-hour fire protection in the exterior walls and in the soffit of the overhang. That's number one. Number two, we've met, and this job has been reviewed diligently by the Building Department, we introduced a line of dry sprinklers in the exterior wall facing the stackers. Instead of being above the stackers, they're throwing water in a radius spray to cover all four cars. Now, the Fire Department may not be aware of this. Also, I hate to say, I think the Fire Department right now is overreaching because this memorandum does not apply to us. We are totally within our lot lines. Our cantilever is on our property. We are not cantilevering over any other building or any other property line. It's all internal. Now, we've designed many garages enclosed parking where we sprinkle the garage. But the feedback we've been getting from the Fire Department is reaching the point of double jeopardy because they've been mentioning, "Maybe we should have one line of sprinklers for every car." Now, this is not in the building code nor the sprinkler code of the City of New York. We were in full compliance. We designed the building and got it approved before the memo was ever enacted. That's number one. Number two, the memo does not apply to this building. There is no screening between the pedestrian path and the stackers. It's wide open because we provided that accessibility for the flow of the sprinkler when they were activated. So as far as we're concerned, the Fire Department has no jurisdiction on this matter because we've already reviewed this with the Building Department and provided instinctively fire protection.
And if you can convince the Fire Department that this is safe and the Fire Department does that, I'd be satisfied with it. But unless the Fire Department agrees with you, I personally don't feel comfortable approving...
Here's the thing, just as another example. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of open parking lots in the City of New York, Manhattan, Brooklyn. There are conditions where the parking lots are open unenclosed with stackers. And you'll always notice the stackers are in the back of the parking lot. They're up against an adjacent building. Now, according to this memo, it's ineffective. Because if that's the case, and I was applying today for an open parking lot and on against a brick building, how could I sprinkle that parking lot? I'm not allowed to go onto the adjacent building and introduce sprinklers flowing onto the car lift. So I don't know if this memo has to be rethought or not, but I know it doesn't apply to this building.
I think what the issue is that, at the BSA, we rely very heavily on the Fire Department to help us understand whether a project is okay. And I'd say that once... Once you're before the board, kind of what you experience at the Buildings Department doesn't necessarily apply because, you know, DOT wouldn't be looking at whether your parking figures are correct. Nobody would be looking, right? But we bring in... You wouldn't be asked to do a Phase 2. You wouldn't be asked to do a lot of things. But as soon as you come to the BSA, it's a discretionary action, we start to have other agencies look at things. And we require the ECB violations be paid, for example. Who else does that, right? And so it opens a project up to scrutiny that it wouldn't have otherwise. And so I just always say, "If you don't want to be open to the scrutiny, don't come to the BSA, right? You can still do your as-of-right project and continue to have community facility in the building instead of changing it to offices." But as soon as you open it up, then we have Fire Department come in and tell us that it's had some bad experiences in firefighting. And what are we supposed to say? "No, you haven't? It's not a... It's a good idea?" So we have to rely on experts at the other agencies. And that's just kind of what happens here.
Yeah, I think that we understand that the Board's general deference to the Fire Department on these matters as well as the Board's authority under 7303 and 7304 to impose the additional safeguards if the Board thinks that it's necessary to do so. But I think what the architect was getting at is that once we start... Once we're departing from the actual code that applies and we have to ensure that the conditions are reasonable, and we're going to work with the Fire Department to ensure that the Fire Department is comfortable with the design. And if we have to modify, we'll modify to make sure that the Fire Department is comfortable in this way so that the Board is comfortable that this is safe.
Right, okay.
I have two questions. We keep saying cantilever. Is this a cantilever type?
Yes, there's a partial cantilever over the parking.
Cantilever? Is it supported by columns is really...
I thought it has columns outside, right?
So for architect, is it a cantilever or is it supported by columns? I mean, a cantilever is more of a concept, right?
It's supported by columns.
Yeah, it's supported by...
The columns are internal, and then there's a small cantilever extension.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, the up-top portion, the four-feet portion above that is like a floor above the stackers is cantilevered.
It's a small cantilever, yes.
Yes, but the first... The first setback part is not cantilevered. The 19 or the 16-feet-wide portion is not cantilevered. If it is not, and we... I see that we're struggling about six inches to... And we're discussing CEDAN versus SUVs. Do you really need that thick girdle there to...
According to our structural engineers, yes. We... This is, you know, a permutation from our structural engineer's input.
Do you want to know?
I would love to... I've worked with some of the most well-versed structural engineers during my career who can design this building with a slide rule. We have to respect what our structural engineers have.
Oh, yeah.
I'd love to take a foot off the thickness of that steel.
Yeah, I'm looking at that beam right behind it, and it's like 50%. What is the difference between...
Yeah, but so, in defense of the architect, I'm not signing any drawings if I'm not doing what the engineer said. Just forget it, right?
If you talk to him...
That's kind of into us and Fire Department.
If you talk to him and explain it that you need six inches or a foot and you really need them bad, I'd be... If an owner... If I'm designing a concrete building and I just throw a beam that two feet deep and the building owner comes and, "No, no, no, I can't do that. I just need one and a half feet, one foot. I know how to do it."
Yeah, but my point is, if the architect doesn't feel comfortable with a shallower member, leave it alone because it's his... It's his seal, right? And so...
I'd also note that the building itself is... It's already constructed at this point. So reopening this, I think, is not something that's feasible.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. The framing is already in place, so, right? We saw photographs.
Probably that's why.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, you still have to convince us a little bit, right?
That's fine. We understand.
All right.
In terms of timing, I think it actually... To put together the information that we need because we can actually do that fairly quickly.
You need to do it to Fire Department. That may take more time.
They may need to... But that's an agency review... That's agency review time, more than it is us going back and forth with them. To be able to submit them the actual... The detailed plans showing the fire protections to show the sprinkler and to show the condition line, the stackers, we can put that together fairly quickly.
Right.
And then we'll have a...
I don't know. You're right, just saying, there's a back and forth, obviously. It's not just submitting them once, then Fire Department may come back with comments, and then you have to respond to the comments, right? Because at the moment, they're not satisfied with what they see, right?
How do you feel about this parking study at this time?
I still want DOT to verify that the data sources are the right ones to be using and that they're persuaded. Okay. Because that's like what it's all based on. The whole thing is based on the study, right?
That's true.
So, without DOT, I'm uncomfortable about just accepting this study. Okay, so-
So, what's realistic with DOT review?
It's an initial review. Start with 30 days, that's the standard.
But is, is it real? 30 days is standard, but not real. So, let's, let's do- So, let's do April first submission. Yeah.
Submission April 1st, with a continuing hearing April 21st. And please continue to work with the, our, other agencies.
Right, yeah, you work constantly with the other agencies. It's just for us to have the submission.
Okay.
Not agency related. Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for coming, everyone. We have second call items?
Second call, second call. Item number 2, 2019, 72 B.C., 555, 10th Avenue, Manhattan. I didn't get anything, no?
Have we approved and conditioned that, or, that you submit the revised plans?
Elise already have.
Oh, what do we have?
Elise already have.
Let's do Elise.
I called Barack first.
He's still sending them.
Yeah, let, yeah, yeah. All right, so we're going to item number 3, second call, 2019, 183 B.C., 200 West 41st Street.
Elise Fullader again. BSA 003 was changed to, to BSA 003. And they, we asked for less confusion. I put in, for administrative purposes, I said, please switch these out from the morning plans.
Oh.
Because we have a hard copy submitted. So, hopefully that-
Somebody see that, sent to submit?
Yeah, sent to submit, I saw it.
Verified, good, all right. So then for motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that the attenuation date detail shown on the drawings are actually implemented.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
A hard copy?
Understood. Understood. Thank you. Lovely evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try it again.
Oh, I didn't get it yet. No? Anybody else get it yet?
Submit at bsa.gov.
Now, give it a sec.
bsa.nyc.gov. Submit at bsa.nyc.gov. Yeah.
Not yet.
And you sent it to T. Mathias?
I did, I just did it to submit.
Oh, that's why she can't see the submit.
Manager me, what are you, what are you doing?
I'm showing him the email, Jack.
Could've given me your phone, we could've looked at it already. I don't know.
You want to look at my phone? It's, it's just a bit.
Okay, so what is it? Open it up, it's not okay. Okay.
This is the new plan with the egress highlighted, signed and sealed.
All right. You're submitting a, you just submit a hard copy without the bubbles?
I just submitted this electronically. The bubbles are, are there. We can remove them.
Are you fine with taking the bubbles?
Need a bubble and a no bubble.
I haven't gotten anything.
Go bring it to the chair.
It's with bubbles?
Yeah, it's got bubbles on it. I need a-
Call out bubbles to show the locations that are identified?
No, but it's just two little, two bubbles, right? You don't have all the, oh, you have bubbles. Do I care? Do we care that much?
We can take it, but I need a hard copy.
Take it, and we'll, and you'll provide a hard copy without the bubbles.
Yes. With today's date, please.
Okay, so, let me see what I'm looking at here. Today's date is signed and sealed. I have no idea whether it's today's date because it doesn't say.
And a digital version, too.
And, so there's a detail. Really hard to see what this says. Okay, I see a staircase that goes to 41st Street. I see a, I don't know what. And the two fire stairs upstairs serve a bubble. I just can't tell what's, what's this?
Yeah, I think this is transfer corridor. Let's show you how.
Can anybody open theirs on their screen?
No, you didn't give it to me.
No one has it? So, that's in your sent as opposed to, nobody has it received?
You just forwarded it to-
Forwarded to T. Mathias? T. Mathias at bsa.nyc.gov?
I don't see it.
And then she could forward it to the Board.
It didn't bounce back at you, did it?
Didn't bounce back. Has it, T. Mathias at bsa.nyc.gov?
Okay.
Because I think the version that you're showing is something dropped out. That's why you can't see what that little detailed drawing is.
Yeah.
It's also, when I pull it, it doesn't really-
It doesn't rebuild because I think it's a, yeah.
Don't have it yet.
Almost there. I don't have it.
Give it a second.
Nothing.
Nothing.
This is weird. Where should I get it?
I only got one, one R, and I'm on LTE.
So, I'm on LTE also.
It's the area. Technology rules us. What can I do? I don't know what to say.
Every time I go downtown, actually, I have to-
You have to see. You think you can turn it off and turn it back on?
I can't, all right, let's not worry about it. I see there's a lot of drawings. It's just a bunch of drawings with clouds around.
Do you have the SharePoint website open?
He, he does, but he can't get to it.
Just go to the submit folder. The submit icon on the top.
Submit icon.
You should see it in there.
Kurt did that already, no?
I was looking at the outbox, or the inbox, but didn't see it. Yeah.
Submit, I don't know how to do that. Oh, submit folder, that one? The green box?
No permission.
Yeah, we don't have permission, that's the thing. None of us have permission.
I do, when I see you.
Oh, you do.
Oh, wait, I got it, wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, everybody.
Cool.
All right.
Hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. Download, download, download. I know I don't have permission. And it's spinning and spinning and spinning. It's downloading.
Oh, something happened? You got something?
We're getting it.
Downloading. Isn't it terrible when the phones are better than the laptops?
Listen, T-Mobile's allowed to buy out Sprint so maybe they get better service.
We're on record? Thank you.
Yes, you are. Slow.
What's happening?
It's slow, it's downloading, but it's so slow. Third of the pie.
It's really close.
No, nothing.
Okay.